I think we have a couple of council members in the back. Kristoff, you can help me find them so we can bring them out to get a quorum and roll call. Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you for roll call.
Roll call, Council President Moreno.
Present.
Council Vice President Morel.
He's here.
Councilmember Jeruso. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember King. Councilmember Green.
President.
Councilmember Thomas. We have six, six members. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. The invocation will be led by Pastor Botan. Good to see you this morning, sir.
May we all stand for a moment of prayer? Gracious God, our Father, how we honor you, how we adore you, we love and we thank you for this day that you've given us, the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. We pray now that your power would be in this place, that your wisdom and your strength would be in this place. We pray for our council, God, that you would continue to uplift them and uphold them, God. Give them everything that they need as they come together to work, to make this city better. We thank you for our residents who are here, to God, and just bless us as we come to do your work. We ask this today, in your name we pray, amen.
Our pledge will be led by Councilmember Morel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Father, to the Son, to the Holy Spirit, to the deliverance of justice for all.
Special orders of business. First order of business, presentation, Kevin Gullidge, musician and former jazz camp student. Asia Mohan, former jazz camp student. William Bloom, MBA Director of Sports and Travel USA and Canada in the Louisiana Office of Tourism. Donald Harrison, artistic director. Jonathan Bloom, camp coordinator instructor. And Jackie Harris, founder and executive director. To honor Ms. Jackie Harris, founder of Louis Satchmo Armstrong Jazz Camp for young musicians in the greater New Orleans area in the year of 1994. We applaud her determination and efforts as she demonstrated during 30 years as a consummate professional. Ms. Harris invited merely luxurious and inspiring jazz camp instructors, directors during her tenure. To recognize a few, Edward K. Jordan, Alvin Baptiste, Jonathan Bloom, Percy Heat, William Polka, Steve True, Reggie Workman, Norma Diamond, Jermaine Basil, Donald Harrison Jr., and the list goes on. Several graduates who has returned to serve with R. Roderick Pullen, Tanya Boyd Cannon, Brian Quasert, Eldon Andrew Bedan, and Dwight Fitch. Alumni of the Louis Armstrong, the Louis Satchmo Armstrong Summer Jazz Camp. Now award-winning composers and players draw millions of fans around the world such as John Baptiste, Courtney Bryan, Christian Scott, Atuna Jew, John Bradford, Calvin Johnson, and Troy Trombone Shorty Andrews. Jackie Harris and the Louis Satchmo Armstrong Summer Jazz Camp are going strong in 2024. Enrollment is anticipated to exceed 150 students at the camp base at Loyola University. Ms. Jackie Harris is pioneering more events through the Louis Armstrong Education Center and the Jazz at the Lincoln Center in New York. We look forward to Ms. Jackie Harris and her team of the Louis Satchmo Armstrong Jazz Camp to continue to generate successful players in the upcoming years for humankind to enjoy and treasure.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Harris, come on, have a seat. Whoever you have with you, they're welcome to come sit down as well. You nervous? Don't be.
Getting embarrassed.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam Clerk, for that introduction. And we're here to honor, recognize Ms. Jackie Harris and the Louis Armstrong Summer Camp, a summer camp that has taught hundreds of kids music and dance for, for a very long time. So, um, we'll let you give you the floor, and then we'll have comments from the day as we'll start my left, Councilmember Jeruso, or down, Councilmember Thomas. So, at this time, the floor is yours.
Well, I'll let the, the students and the teachers speak because it's whatever the camp has become, it's because of them.
Well, that's very gracious of you, Ms. Harris. But you are our fearless leader with a, with a great vision and an open mind. And that, in my estimation, uh, when I came aboard as director, you opened the doorway to the future for the kids. Because, uh, I was thinking about adding the history of our music to the program. And, and you agreed 100%. And, uh, the things that we're doing now, uh, I think from looking at the tenor of the music industry, we're now cutting edge and leading the charge because of your open-mindedness and your diligence to making sure that the kids get everything that they can have. The idea of learning every style of music instead of just one style of music is the thing that, uh, makes our camp unique. And, and I just want to thank you so much for having the vision and the open-mindedness to pursue those goals. When you look at all of the, uh, articles about music nowadays, everybody's talking about multi-genre. But we started that two years ago. So now we're, uh, I like to say, we don't need Heinz 57 because Heinz 57 is ketchup. We don't need the ketchup. We're already there because of Ms. Jackie Harris.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
By far, I'd like to say the Satchmo Summer Jazz Intensive has been since, for the last 30 years, a place to truly find your sound. And it doesn't matter where you come in, but it's a place that guarantees that when you get put out, you're going to be somebody. You're gonna, you're gonna know what you're doing. It's a, it's a place that's, that's real. It's a place that's not, not a coddling situation, but a caring situation, not a, not a grooming situation, but a growth situation. And Ms. Jackie, I mean, you've, you've done, you and Mr. Bloom and, and Doc Harris. You know, y'all have all, and, and rest in peace, Mr. Kidjo, and all of you have done such a great job of maturing all of us into musicians that can say we're proud to be from this city and proud to be people who were schooled in this city in music. So, uh, yeah, by far, thank you very much. You deserve it. It means, this means the world. And the camp really, really has done a number on all of us, and I can speak for a lot of my peers at the same time.
I'm sorry, I should have introduced him. Kevin Gullidge Jr. is a traveling international blues musician. And he, um, was one of the finalists on, uh, which one, The Voice?
American Idol.
On American Idol. Jonathan, um, Bloom, he's the camp coordinator, but we're gonna let Mr. Bloom, Mr. William Bloom speak because he, uh, works in bathrooms. What's your title, William?
Good morning, how are you all? So, I, I prepared some words. If, if I go over, please just let me know, but you can play music. So, my title is the Director of Sports, the Director of Sports and Tour Travel for the US and Canadian markets with the Louisiana Office of Tourism. So, I, I didn't pursue a, a career in music. Uh, however, I'm here to speak about, uh, the jazz camp and music education and what it has done for me for my career and the values in which I've learned, uh, from the jazz camp. I, I, I've, I've gone to the jazz camp by way of my father, who was a jazz instructor. I was there for eight years from 1996 through 2004. Over the years at the jazz camp, as a kid, I was able to learn from jazz giants such as Kia Jordan, Alvin Baptiste, Clyde Kerr, Alvin Fielder, Donald Burr, Wimmarcellus, Big Chief Donald Harrison, John Fattis, Barry Harris, Chico Hamilton, and countless others. I'm proud to say that my peers at the camp were, were, uh, professionals and world-renowned musicians such as John Baptiste, Troy Trombone Shorty Andrews, Calvin Johnson, Chief, Zion Atunde, Adewah, Chris Royal, Big Sammy Williams, and countless others. I'm very much a student of business. And, uh, as a student of business, I think about my time and reflect at the jazz camp and I think about the attributes and foundations that they built within the camp that I'm able to apply to business. Um, as a youth, I can correlate the, uh, the foundations in learning an instrument, instrument, rather, uh, and foundations in business. You can master discipline as well as the use of systems, which is a recipe for operations and organizations to prosper. As well as, uh, through jazz, very much improvisation and building confidence and character. One of our instructors, late great Alvin Baptiste, had a quote, and, and I loved him, as kids, he would speak to us as adults. He had a quote in, in which he would say, "Hypnism is a profound colloquialism expressing an abstract truth." We would look at him with a blank stare because we probably wouldn't know what the word colloquialism meant. But in simpler terms, he would simply say contrast. And through that, I'm, I'm able to think about the way in which I approach my business, the way in which I represent Louisiana and this city, and think about the competitive advantages, or think about the unique, uh, attributes of this city in which I'm able to highlight as I travel different domestic places and even internationally, representing the city as an ideal travel destination. And, and last but not least, music also requires collaboration. We have to listen to one another, and that's very much an essential tool in building rapport, relationships, and even partnerships. Last but not least, I, I do want to say that the camp and music education is, is great and necessary form of recreation. Sports is just not a way where kids can recreate. This is a very vital, uh, foundation in which it provides a quality of life for children to where even if they do not pursue, uh, a station in music, they're able to apply it in different other industries as well. And even with music, we're able, within my current industry of tourism, able to highlight that unique culture to draw more economic impacts within the city as well as the state, as well as draw, uh, quality of life within our community as well. So if you look at, um, the, the, New Orleans is going into its record number of Super Bowls. The Super Bowl Host Committee uses music throughout its marketing campaigns. The logo is very much a bass drum. If you look at, uh, the pillars in which the Louisiana Office of Tourism highlights to highlight our unique culture, music, we are currently within our year of music. We're starting with the year of music. So it's very much essential. And I thank Ms. Jackie Harris for this camp in a way in which we can sustain, um, our culture throughout the state as well as, as well as the, the city. And thank you so much.
Thank you, William. I'd like to look, first acknowledge Ms. Harris. She is one of our community heroes. She's a surrogate parent for this community. And I'd like to say to the council, we are not the total answer, but we're part of the solution of some of the social ills that, and challenges that we face in the community. It's also an opportunity for her to bring people with information, our elder statesmen like Donald Harrison and Kia Jordan through the years, who brought a wealth of information and knowledge and experiences to the table. Alvin Baptiste, Jermaine Basil, uh, and many others. As a teacher, they were mentors for me. I did 38 years in the trenches, and I'm glad to say that I made it to this point where I consider myself an elder and a mentor to a lot of our youth. Uh, so thank you, Jackie, for creating that opportunity, that idea, to put it on the table as part of the solution. It helps to preserve the culture, the legacy, our progeny, the future. So, thank you, City Council, because this entity has been the support for the camp from the very beginning. And I'd like to see that continue because this is the way we pass the torch. This is the way we preserve the culture and the future of New Orleans. Thank you.
I have one more, one more comment, and that comment is, uh, Ms. Jackie Harris is a person who knows how to make it happen and who has stayed the course for decades. And, uh, that's an incredible, we all talk about things, but she makes it happen and she stays the course. So that's incredible.
I want to thank, um, Councilmember King and members of the council, uh, for supporting the camp. But also, first off, having the courage to run for public office. And, you know, and really to ensure that there are opportunities for, uh, young people and for adults. Uh, there are a number of high school students in the audience, so, uh, you guys go to LouisArmstrongJazzCamp.com. And if you are interested and you've been studying your instrument for two years, you should send us an email. Most of the major artists that you know about, they are all out of town, on the road, making very good money. The people who are here, and we specifically looked for non-musicians as well because, uh, parents, we want parents to know that kids who are involved in arts education succeed. And they are giving their children an opportunity to express themselves and to succeed in life. And, uh, everybody who comes to jazz camp won't be musicians, but they certainly will be good citizens and good individuals. And I thank you so much for this. And I didn't want it to be about me. I wanted it to be about the camp because I am a bit embarrassed.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Harris. No need to.
All right.
Ms. Harris, uh, we'll start with, uh, Councilmember Jeruso, and we're gonna work our way down.
Good morning, um, Jackie. I, I, I think like we all are the leading presidents of the Jackie Harris Fan Club. I mean, I, I knew you were gonna end, I knew you were gonna end by saying, "This isn't about me. It's about the kids." And I think that just shows what great humility you have in doing all of this. You know, the, the expression is, "You're not new to the work. You're true to the work." And you, you've been true for more than a minute. Thirty, thirty years is, is, yes, is a long time. And I, and I think that's really the most important thing to me, too, is that I've seen lots of people want to get involved in something, and then they invest a little bit. You, you've invested now in a generation of kids and helping them achieve their dreams, their goals. And, and, and there's all sorts of outlets that people have. We're seeing people with sports, with, with, with technology, but music is something that lifts your spirit, that gives you an artistic goal, and that can change, can change people's lives, as we've heard here today. And I, I just can't say enough about you because you're the epitome, I think, of what we want all New Orleanians to be, which is somebody who cares about the city, who's dedicated their heart and their soul to the city, who is extraordinarily principled and is open-minded at the same time. And we appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Harris, from, from one Harris to another, I want to say congratulations, uh, for this. Councilmember King, thank you for, uh, honoring her and the camp. I actually was talking about you yesterday and the camp with Troy Sawyer of Girls Play Trumpet II.
Yeah.
And he was saying how he came up in the camp with Trombone Shorty and Big Sam from Big Sam's Funky Nation and all of the other greats, and how he learned from amazing instructors and musicians, not only music, but the business of music, which is so critical to ensure that our artists who are coming out of New Orleans get paid what they are due. So I really appreciate that about this jazz camp. I can tell you, I was chief of staff at Loyola before losing my mind and running for office. And, uh, I will, I will tell you that Loyola appreciated your commitment to the camp. And it really was something that President, then-President Tanya Tetlow talked about because she herself is a musician. So we, as a fake alumni of Loyola, just really appreciate your presence there and your commitment to your students, to the people who graduated from the camp and all that you do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ms. Harris, I, I agree with, with, uh, the rest of the crew you brought with you today. You are certainly a woman who makes things happen, and you deserve to be celebrated. The jazz camp, as so many have mentioned, um, it's, it's more than just music. It's about, at the end of the day, teaching life skills, which is so important. And as, as you mentioned, sir, all of the different things that, that you learned, uh, going through the camp that have now prepared you to be the man who you are now and in the career that you are. I think that's really remarkable, and it says so much to what you're doing in the camp. And I, I think what would be really special is to be able to, to feature some of the students, um, in a really large way. And, and actually, one of your former students, Tanya Boyd Cannon, has been thinking about potentially doing something at Essence, where we could really highlight the youth of New Orleans, particularly the musicians, the young musicians here in New Orleans, and finding a, a way and space to do that. So I'm working with her to try to figure out that path. But of course, like jazz camp, um, your jazz camp would be, um, something fantastic that we could feature and showcase really to the rest, rest of the world who shows up right here in New Orleans for Essence Festival. So thank you again, Ms. Harris, for all that you do.
Thank you.
Love you.
Thanks.
It's so, it's so interesting. Usually when we have these presentations, I don't have like a tremendous amount to say. But when it comes to you, Jackie, I just, you've known me literally my entire life.
Right.
I mean, when my mom was a teacher at 15 with Miss Mays, that's how far back we go. And I always say, there's always two things said about Jackie Harris when I'm around. One is, you age backwards. Because everybody's always like, Jackie looks the exact same as she did 10, 15, 20 years ago. But also, it's just, you care so much about our kids and our culture. And it is so important because there are not enough people who are trying to instill our unique culture in kids and also remind them that what makes New Orleans unique, the things that tie us to our past, that unbreakable chain through generations, it has to be protected, it has to be discussed, it has to be enforced. Because in a lot of ways, when you look at other communities around the country, when there isn't someone like you who's like carefully tending that garden to make sure it continues to flourish, it dies. Because if you look at other cities, black cities with tremendous music and art cultures, there are generational gaps where people fell off, where there wasn't that person connecting the new generation with the previous generation, with generations three, but three behind to have that chain. And your summer camp is that chain. I mean, it is, you, you have young musicians who meet people who are lions of the industry, who but for you, that connection would never be made. And it's so interesting because there's so much has changed in this city. I mean, I remember before we had the takeover of public schools, when I was at 15, our music teacher was Walter Payton, Nicholas Payton's dad.
That's right.
And I remember, I mean, as a young person, I remember being very upset when he told me how bad I was at playing saxophone. And I remember him coming every day, half asleep because he had played the night before, and he would guide us, laying on the front chairs with his jacket over his eyes, just listening. And he would point us out with his head covered who was not doing their job. And, but those kind of experiences with musicians working that side gig in schools, having that unbreakable chain, you look at what's happened in our city, that hasn't happened anymore. Because the system has changed so much, there are all these different hurdles to having that kind of community input, community presence. Without your camp, kids would never have that experience organically because it doesn't exist. So you are a pillar of the community. As you can see, all the council members are up there, all different backgrounds. We all love you universally and respect everything you've done. And I know I speak for everyone in the city of New Orleans. Whatever new ideas you come up with, we're there. Because you have been a leader, you have led us, you have led the children, you've led musicians, you have led us all to continue to curate, protect, and grow talent. And we need you to keep doing that as well as raise up new people behind you to aid in that endeavor. So we love you so much. You are so amazing. And thank you, Councilman King. I'm surprised, he beat all of us to it. Because any one of us would have done this, but he's always that guy. Freddie, we see you. Thank you, Jackie. Come on, let's give him a round of.
Mac 15. Mac 15.
Mac 15.
That was my principal.
I did five years.
Okay.
Mine was my principal.
Oh, okay, all right. Great to see you, Jackie. Today is part of the month where we celebrate the fact that 30 years ago, we joined city government as part of the Moreal administration. 30 years ago. But that was when I got to meet Jackie, kind of for the first time. But, um, it's been 30 years of being able to watch her commitment to our, um, youth and our commitment to the music scene that has been one of the great reasons that I enjoy living in the city of New Orleans. When I was the head of Small and Emerging Business Development, we had an opportunity to do some work. Um, I became the head of Economic Development under Mayor Moreal. And Jackie Harris and Kim Carbo were down the hall doing a whole lot of work. The Music and Entertainment Commission and the Film and Video Commission, that Music and Entertainment Commission's work was so focused because of Jackie on making sure our local musicians had a chance to share their talents and also to grow. As a member of the, um, Marching Hundred from St. Augustine High School, I have some music background. Some of the musicians who participated in the Marching Hundred have come through the Louis Armstrong Jazz Camp. I am just so pleased to say, as I like to say often, that we have a lot going on for our youth in our city. And one of the reasons is that we have people like Jackie Harris who are committed. As the former head of the Music and Entertainment Commission, Jackie could have been a consultant, in fact, spent some time in New York. But she, she formed this organization, the Louis Armstrong Jazz Camp, uh, because of her commitment to New Orleans that no matter where she was going to be, whether it be New Orleans or some other place, she would always have this connection to our city and our city's youth. And I look forward every year to going to the culminating concert. Um, I look forward to talking to some of the youth who participated, who participate. And I look forward to referring people, as I've done, to the jazz camp because they're so pleased when they finish. So in behalf of the city council, and I'm going to speak for the people who were there in the Moreal administration when you started off, who have seen all the work that you've done promoting great musicians, James Andrews and the like, we just want to say, Jackie, your commitment to our city and your sincerity and your motivation are greatly appreciated. And I'm so pleased and honored to be here on this day when we can recognize you for the work that you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Man, we talking about Jackie Harris. Right, you don't, as, as much as you can talk about Jackie Harris, you can feel Jackie Harris. deaf and blind people know Jackie Harris is in a room with, because she represents New Orleans. She emanates our culture, right? That soulful, sultry sister. And Councilmember McGreen, I, I used to think Jackie was more than one person. Because how do you serve on the Louis Armstrong Foundation in New York? Ain't that right, Jackie?
Yes.
Right? Do Satchmo here in New Orleans. And then when I'm talking to my cousin Lil, uh, Vuti, right? And, and Thomas, and with, how you extend this thing all the way over to Germany and Switzerland, right? And then back on Frenchman. The music is fine, but when I was sitting down thinking, Jackie, knowing you a little bit, right? Being a little, a boy of the culture. Man, do we have any idea about you and the people at this table and the hundreds of millions of dollars y'all have donated to this economy? Do we understand that if you didn't champion and start the nighttime concert series? Oh, we ain't say nothing about that, huh?
Yeah.
Where, where, where would we be? Other festivals have adopted that, right? You can have a festival during the day, you can have an event, but you can create a whole nother series of concerts for other artists and emerging artists. Guess who did that, y'all? Jackie Harris. But when I think about the essence of this New Orleans for real, they can't take it from us, they can't dilute it, they can't make it something it's not. And that's what you stand for, no matter how hard they try. Because when this young man here was talking. Because when this young man here was talking, and he was talking about, I'm proud to be New Orleans, for real, for real, black man, New Orleans, night ward, all that, for real. I don't run from it. Ain't nothing against nobody else, but this us, Donald. This us, proud to be us. When this young man was talking earlier, he talked about the state and their symbols, right? And so I was thinking, man, that was so profound. So we're in these challenges for the press who's here, they would never cover it like this. We're in these challenges with the state and how they're trying to use us, in many cases, as something negative, right? Or trying to play the demographic game, right, or the political game about how they want to deal with the state because of leadership and because of what they like and don't like, but our assets. And so while you were talking, I thought about how the state uses our symbols, right, to advertise the state. Well, alligator don't play the saxophone, Donald Harrison do. Walter Makasen don't play the trombone, trombone shorty do. So that's a hypocrisy there. And when you highlighted that man, that was so profound, because instead of the state and state leaders understanding and get on board and highlighting our assets, and the press using their resources to say, hey, hold on, you know, they ain't the stepchild, that's the real child, that's the goose that lays the golden egg, Jackie Harris, you've always done that. And I'm proud, right? I'm proud that you carry us everywhere you go, everywhere you've been, and everywhere you're going to be. It's Jackie Harris, y'all.
Thank you.
Ms. Harris, I've had the pleasure, first of all, thank you for letting you do, not just with this camp, but in Tremay for years, so thank you for that. I've had the pleasure of attending the camp during the class, during the teaching sessions, and was very impressed by the teachers, by the students, by the fact that there are kids from all over the country that travel to be a part of this camp. That says a lot about what this camp means. And going to the closing ceremony for a few times, it's very remarkable. That's the only word I can think about right now, only adjective I can think of to describe seeing all those kids come together for that concert and different genres of music, different instruments, and their dancing. And it's something that you should pay money to attend, because it's very nice. It's something to see. And to see that it's kids from New Orleans that's doing it, from other parts of the country, but mainly from this city, that should be highlighted more. Because too often, the other negative stuff is highlighted. But when we have hundreds of kids coming together for that camp, for that closing ceremony, it is, it's amazing, and it's a beautiful event, and it's thanks to you. And just to show y'all how humble Ms. Harris is, she asked at her name at the proclamation, and the proclamation reads, Louis Satchmo Armstrong Summer Camp. So you're a very humble woman, but today you should do your victory lap, because this is all because of you. So we thank you for everything that you've done. We'll come down as a council and take a picture with you.
Thank you. And thank all.
Thank you.
Second Order of Business Presentation, Anthony Weaver, son of the late Chief Earl Weaver, honoring the life and legacy of Chief Earl Weaver, who dedicated 49 years of faithful service to the Orleans Parish Sheriff's Office.
Going to ask Mr. Anthony Weaver to come forward, his son. But I'm pleased today to recognize someone who was involved with a particular department of government for 49 years, 49 years. Listen to that, young people, 49 years. So certainly, he found something very positive that helped him to build a career, helped him to raise his family. I'm here today to honor and to recognize Earl Weaver Jr. through his family members who are here. I introduce to you the family of Earl Weaver Jr. Officer Weaver served on the Orleans Parish Sheriff's Office for 49 years, beginning in December 1973, then under Sheriff Louis Hyde. Officer Weaver's law enforcement career included several roles, serving at the old parish prison, leading the criminal sheriff's athletic department, overseeing the juvenile division as warden, commanding the reserve division, and ultimately serving as chief of security and chief of courts and community services. Earl Weaver Jr. left us on April 23rd of this year at the age of 75. He is survived by his children, Earl Weaver III, Ellen Weaver, Alexander Weaver, Ronald Weaver, 21 grandchildren, and five great grandchildren. He was preceded in death by his loving wife, Diane Weaver. As I mentioned today, I have members of the Weaver family who are here today, and we as a city council want to say thank you for sharing Earl Weaver Jr. with us for all of those years. We appreciate his service, the fact that he was committed and remained in that department through challenges for 49 years is something that we greatly appreciate and was worthy of recognition during this, our Special Order of Business. Mr. Anthony Weaver, would you introduce to us who's at the table and tell us a few words?
My name is Alexander Weaver.
Oh, I'm sorry, and it is. I was going to say, Alexander Weaver, son, sorry.
This is my brother Earl Weaver III, my sister Ella Weaver, and my brother Ronald Weaver.
Good, good to see you. Tell us for a second about Mr. Earl Weaver Jr.
First, I want to thank y'all for having us and honoring my father, Earl Weaver. What he did in his order right here is, he loved church, he was a heavy deacon of his church, and that he loved his family, and he loved his job in that order.
Good. Thank you very much, as I mentioned, for sharing with us and for being here today with the family. I know that this is a tough time for the family, but we as a city want to say how much we appreciate the fact that he was committed to his job, did a fine job. And we all know that there were very trying circumstance, trying conditions under which he worked at sometimes, but he stayed with it, and we appreciate that very much, very much. I'm going to ask our council members if they'd like to share our thoughts, starting with Councilman Thomas, and we'll work to our left, but thank you for Earl Weaver Jr., his life and his commitment to our department.
Thank y'all for honoring him with us.
Thank you, Councilman Green, for this recognition. The first thing I want to do is apologize to the family for being out of town for the There's no way I wanted to not be there for the homegoing of one of the great men who served our city. My father, my mother, my uncles, those who are no longer with us, our family honored your father. I don't know if I remember who all the sheriffs was, but I know I remember your daddy. I don't know if I remember everyone who wore that badge or who served, but what I know, I remember your dad. I remember sitting in the stands in Biloxi when you was fighting with my uncle, my dad, my brother, sitting next to your father. I remember being at Mahalia Jackson, right, with our crew. Law enforcement, yeah, but he was a boxing aficionado. And everyone knows in my family, my brother Naughty, used to train with Quick and Percy at Faber Gym. He was undefeated gold glove, and your dad was one of the people who encouraged him. But when I think about the names, man, Quick, Juan Matthew, Elry, Sweet Pea, Super D, Jared Pellegrina, Percy, I don't think people know how deep he was in this city. It wasn't just about the sheriff's department and wearing that badge. He was a modder of men. He was a modder of young men. So my father's not with us anymore, neither's my brother, or my uncles, who would come to those fights, who knew your dad. But what I do know, they're all in heaven, they got a ring set up there, and if angels got problems...
Right.
They gonna work it out. They gonna work it out with the sweet science. But for you all, what I'm proud of knowing is that your daddy was, my father used to say, and it's nothing against anybody else, people got to be so politically correct today, my daddy was a man. His son represents men, his daughter represents the best of our women. And so although he may not be here, everything and everybody he touched is here. I ain't never going to see a matinee without him. Period. Thank y'all, we love y'all. On behalf of my family, we love y'all, we miss him, but he always going to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Thomas. Council Vice President Morell.
Thank you, Councilman Green. I appreciate you bringing this today for us. I will begin by saying, I don't think the city has done enough, and we still have more to do in celebrating Chief Weaver. Everyone knew Chief Weaver. I mean, I was a public defender in 2004, 2005, after Katrina. And after Katrina, when we were doing magistrate court, I mean, you're talking about, we were in House of Attention with no air conditioning, all the lawyers in suits, all the judges in robes, judges get to wear nothing under the robe, lawyers had to wear the suits. But Chief Weaver was able to keep it together. Because when you talk about seeing people at difficult time at their worst, I mean, you got people who in the middle of the trauma Katrina, who are incarcerated, who they have to get processed, brought up there. And what always amazed me was that he would see people at their worst, but make them act their best. And when you dealt with the sheriff's office oftentimes, and this is not a knock on sheriffs in general, but you have people that when they're faced with not enough money, not enough resources, they kind of do shortcuts or have excuses why they can't get something done. Chief Weaver was no excuses. He expected everybody to do their job, everybody to treat everybody right, to get everybody in the courtroom on time, get them out, and he had no tolerance, whether you were the person in a jumpsuit acting out, or whether you were the sheriff acting out, everybody did what they were supposed to do. That might be because all those guys in the jumpsuits or in the uniforms knew, that your dad knew the sweet signs, he was ready to go to town if he needed to, but everybody respected the chief, and everybody acknowledged and bowed to his will, because he was a force of nature in every courtroom he was in. So thank you, Mr. Green, for bringing this today. I know I'll work with Mr. Green and Mr. Thomas to see what else can be done to give further acknowledgements to your father, because he was really a pillar in this community, and we need to celebrate more people like your dad who have impacted just so many lives. I mean, I used to have clients who would be like, they were treating me so bad, until Chief Weaver came in and said, no, you can't treat somebody like that. And those are those moments where you could really change someone's life. Because like I said, when you are dealing with people and they are in their worst, yeah, when you have people interacting with the system in the worst possible moment, having somebody in there to mandate they be treated with humanity, that could be the turning point as to whether or not they turn their lives around, or whether or not they don't. So thank you so much for sharing your father with us. He was such a huge impact on so many lives, and we will continue to celebrate his life.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Morell. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. I want to extend my condolences to you. Anytime that you are the family of someone who serves this city, who serves this community, that means that they have to give up a little bit of time with you. But in turn, what you get is an entire community, an entire family of people who they've served with and for. So when Councilmember Morell, Councilmember Thomas, and Councilmember Green talk about further acknowledgement, it's this community wanting to acknowledge the time and the service and dedication that your father gave to this community. So let us know what we can do to continue to honor his memory, and again, I extend my deepest condolences to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Be it proclaimed by the city of New Orleans that today the New Orleans City Council recognizes Earl Weaver Jr. We salute you for a life well-lived. You will be missed by all, including your family, your four children and 17 grandchildren. Your 49 years with the Orleans Parish Sheriff's Office are to be commended, and we thank you, Earl Weaver Jr., for your service to our community. Thank you, family members, for being here today. We're going to come forward and take a photo with this proclamation with you. But thank you all for being here today in Alexander. Thank you for your communication with my office.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Third order of business, presentation, Steve Nelson, Sewage and Water Board of New Orleans' General Superintendent, recognizing the Sewage and Water Board of New Orleans' work crews for their tireless efforts and contributions in keeping our city safe and assisting with operations.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Nelson to come forward, and if there's anybody else to join you at the table. We'll start in just one minute. Mr. James? And Mr. James, are they here?
Yes. Uh, there's Steve.
On a recent drive through my district, I passed by Galvez, where it meets St. Louis, where it meets Toulouse Street, and saw what looked to be an incredible project going on involving some very significant construction, and it was. Very deep into the, into our city streets with a very important purpose. But I got out and spoke to a couple of individuals, Sargon James and Canard James, and had an opportunity to talk to them about their career working in an area that doesn't get the recognition that it gets. As we drive throughout the city, many times we see work going on on streets, and sometimes don't recognize that that work involves underground construction, such as you see on the screen here, significant equipment usage, and other things that make those jobs very complex. I've driven by on Sunday morning and seen work crews working outside of churches because of water main breaks and the like. Those work crews, whose members have to work across the entire city of New Orleans and have to respond to emergencies at times, many times don't get recognized. So I took this opportunity under a quick special order of business to be able to recognize members of the council and those who are watching, the work crews of the Sewage and Water Board, so that you will know the work that they do and the impact that they have in our community. Mr. Nelson, could you describe a little bit of the work that is done and who's with you at the table?
Yeah, it's such an honor to be here this morning among the group of men and women with the Sewage and Water Board that perform, just like you described, work every day on a daily basis. Our networks group closes around twenty-five thousand work orders in a given year, and given the age and the condition of the soils in the city of New Orleans, our water mains do have a failure rate of four to five and a half times the national average, and this group addresses those repairs in an average of twenty to twenty-five days, those water leaks. So they are working continuously. They work very, very hard. I'm very proud of the group we have here. I've got Mr. Canard James to my left. He and his brother Sargon run the pumping operations for our stormwater and sewer-related pumps. I've got Ashraf Abdalbaki, our chief of networks, and networks is our physical construction crews. They've got somewhere between thirty and forty crews on a daily basis, working across the city of New Orleans, and there are eight different zones, which represent over two-hundred-and-fifty years of service to the city of New Orleans and the Sewage and Water Board. Many, many of those men have worked here for more than thirty years. We looked up the number of employees at the Sewage and Water Board, thirty-five plus years. It's over forty employees that have worked here over three decades. So I'm very, very proud to be a part of this group and the effort that they're carrying on and the legacy that they have, and I really, really appreciate you and the council recognizing that today. And I'd like to offer Mr. Smith, if he's got a couple of words to speak on, on networks' behalf.
Good morning to everyone. Yes, my name is Ernest Smith. I'm a zone manager in the networks department. We are a zone that supports the entire networks. We work throughout the city of New Orleans. We're doing a lot of infrastructure repair, sewer and water, and we're just trying to move forward and do a great job for the citizens and make you all proud.
Thank you for the work that you're doing. You're not trying to do it, you're doing it. How many repairs might be made each year on pipes that are broken in the city of New Orleans?
Yeah, so there's over two thousand repairs on large water mains, over six thousand repairs made on services, on water services as well, and I want to point out the progress that's being made too. Paving has been a major focus for us over the last year and a half. So since last July, we've gone from a backlog of three thousand work orders to, as of today, it's down to nine hundred and twenty.
Can I ask those who are present to respect the fact that we have presentations being made? Please, you can speak lower than we're speaking. Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you. And we're down below a thousand work orders from over three, so right around three thousand at this time last year, and have gone from an average of a hundred days from when a service cut is made to when it is paved, we're working it right around fifty, and the goal is this year to be down to real time. So no more than between one and two or three hundred open paving work orders at any given time, and a lag time of two to four weeks. So we're seeing that happen. We believe it's gonna happen, and it's because of the effort of the men in this room, and also those that are out in the field working really hard today.
Can I ask Mr. James to tell us for a minute about his experience with the Sewage and Water Board and why you've been there for so long? How many years have you been employed by the Sewage and Water Board?
I've been employed for forty-three years.
Forty-three years.
For drainage pump station operations, and presently Superintendent of Drainage Pump Stations. So we appreciate you recognizing us, and, you know, I'm a proud member of the Sewage and Water Board, and this is let the public know a little about what we do, and we appreciate you honoring us and recognizing us. So, thank you.
Yeah, it's recognizing you and honoring you. It's a tough job. We're a city that's fifty percent below sea level. We have streets settling all the time. I see pipes that break, you know, because they just happen to break, you know, very honestly, at the end of the day, no one went there and did anything, they're settling that made that happen. A lot of people don't recognize that on a Sunday morning on Johnny Jackson Boulevard, I saw a work crew at a site on Aljamire where the water was just spewing, and people found the way to call you all, and you responded on the same day. I've had emergency calls where people have run into fire hydrants, and somehow or the other, that involves you all, having to do that work. I'd also like to mention that there sure are a lot of people who run into fire hydrants in New Orleans. I want us to recognize that those fire hydrants don't move, and actually that you should see them. But okay, at the end of the day, there is a crew requirement that comes out there and addresses it on an emergency basis. The construction that you all see, if you want to take a look at the screen, shows you that these are not simple jobs, that they involve equipment, they involve expertise. This is at Galvez and Toulouse alone, and that's also on Fillmore Avenue. So just wanted to take an opportunity to recognize you all. I actually have proclamations for members of the Sewage and Water Board, work crews who have worked over thirty-five years, and guess what? That's forty proclamations. That shows you that there's some stability going on. You can't see that in just a task force that meets over thirty years. You have to know that that's happening and be told and have representation, and that's what we have today. So I'm gonna ask members of the council if they would like to add, and then we'll take a photo, and I'm gonna present those proclamations to you, Mr. Nelson, to get to your work crews.
First of all, thank you, Councilmember Green, for recognizing the men and women at the Sewage and Water Board. Proud of you guys' service, man, what you guys have done for decades. There's no way we even have a city if it wasn't for the men and women at the board. As someone who was here after Katrina, if the men and women don't stay, if they don't hold their posts, if they don't stay at that algaeist plant that provided potable, their only source of potable water for this entire region for a long time, and for my little baby cuz sitting on the end over there, real cuz, how many members of our family have used the Sewage and Water Board as a foundation for their careers while they're going to school? And then our other little cuz, Rudy, calling me after Katrina, saying, "Hey, man, we got men and women over here," right? I don't know how he got through because the phones wasn't working, but he got through. When we got there, they were there. Thank y'all for your service, man. It's a blessing. And Steve, thank you for being the kind of General Superintendent, man, that, and in my conversations, cuz, with this young man here, he has consistently said that without the people who are the foundation, the upper management is nothing. And thank you for that, the way you think, but then again, as an ex-athlete, that's what team sports teaches you. Tom Brady may get all the awards, but the rest of the team got a block for him. Thank y'all for y'all's service, man. Love y'all, appreciate y'all. Councilmember Green?
Thank you, sir.
This is awesome. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Harris.
Well, Steve, thank you. I want to thank your team. We have done amazing work together in the few years that I've been on City Council. We've done walkthroughs. I didn't know we could have pictures, Councilmember Green, because we have some of Mr. Nelson and his team walking through neighborhoods, identifying problems, and getting them fixed immediately. And so I really appreciate your leadership of a group of phenomenal people who work with you to make sure that our streets, our water, everything is functional. I don't know where the drainage bill is, but hopefully it's getting consolidated to y'all, because I think it'll be today. All right, so I'm looking forward to that vote, because I think that, you know, we do need to consolidate drainage to one entity, and I think yours is the entity that can actually take care of our catch basin and our drainage. So I just want to thank you. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. I know we call you probably every single day. Sorry about that, but we do see progress, and I always celebrate the incremental progress that I see, and I know it's because of you all that it's happening, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Jerusso.
Good morning. So I was stepping outside, my staff informed me that SB 305 passed out of the House Committee. So there's some more amendments, and then it will go to the House floor where I think it will pass, and I agree with Councilmember Harris and whoever else has said it, that the separation has been for too long, and the fact that it's coming in-house to Sewage and Water Board is where it needs to be. The other thing I just want to say thank you for is obviously all the work that gets done, but also the professionalism that you've brought to the work, Steve, and your team, in saying, "This is going to take twenty-three days, eighty-six days, one hundred and ten days. On average, this is how long it does something." And I really feel like for residents, they go, "Okay, all right, I'll wait." And then I've seen things take longer than your average. And what do you all say? "I'm sorry, we're gonna jump on this, and let's see how quickly we can get that done." And I think, we try and say this all the time, "I'm not looking for perfection." We can't expect that from anybody, but we do expect responsiveness and thoughtful responsiveness, and I think you all have sort of changed that dynamic in a major way, and I've asked Department of Public Works to start implementing the way that you all are doing it, so that when residents call about their potholes, or their lights, or another issue, striping, they can get kind of the same information that you all are providing as well. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Jerusso. Council Vice President Morell.
Mr. Nelson, gentlemen, I'm gonna say something that's gonna be, sound really great, but it's probably gonna make Steve, like, hair turn white. I appreciate y'all being here today, because you are by far the most responsive departments when my staff calls, and I mean that definitively. I can't speak of other departments at Sewage and Water Board and billing, but when it comes to, when I call y'all about the fire hydrant that's leaking, when I call you about the restaurant that's sewer backed up, when I call Steve and he talks to your crews, you guys, I appreciate the fact that oftentimes in government, when you call someone and say "I have a problem," especially in this city, we have reputation of saying, "Well, here's why I can't fix your problem." When I call you guys, it's, "We will figure out a way to fix the problem." And that is dramatically different than many other departments in the city and in Sewage and Water Board. So I really appreciate the work y'all do. I think our level of communication has been heightened over the last couple of months, and every time I've called Steve or I've called anyone over there and said, "A resident needs this thing fixed, it's impacting their quality of life," either A, it's fixed, or B, you give me a timeline of when you can get to it. And residents are actually very reasonable and responsive when you give them a timeline. If it's a problem that's gonna take three months to fix, and you tell them three months, and within three months you do it, they're okay. And you guys, more so than anyone else, you either fix it, or you give me the timeline. And I appreciate our relationship. I appreciate working with y'all. I appreciate y'all being out in the hot sun, doing what y'all do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Vice President Morell. Council President Moreno.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Green. Good to see you all this morning. Look, you guys are really like the unsung heroes of Sewage and Water Board, and I've actually said this to, you know, management at Sewage and Water Board, including Mr. Corbin, the executive director, that really, if you want to repair the overall image of Sewage and Water Board, Sewage and Water Board needs to tell y'all stories, and the work that you all do every single day, and the fact that when there are, you know, significant emergencies, when all of a sudden you wake up and you're like, "Wait, why is my street flooded and it didn't even rain?" Like, what just got busted? And it's like you guys are the ones who show up in the middle of the night, you show up on a Sunday, you show up on a Mother's Day, and you guys get the job done. So I'm just so appreciative of the work that you do. I wish that we could highlight more of the work that you do, and that's on Sewage and Water Board to do that. And once again, thank you. Thank you so much, because it's like, I know the hours that you work are rough, obviously the conditions that you work in are also rough, but you get the job done, and we appreciate it, and the city appreciates it as well. Thank you.
Be it proclaimed by the City of New Orleans that the New Orleans City Council recognizes the work crews of the New Orleans, the Sewage and Water Board of New Orleans, and appreciation of your work done in support of the city through the Sewage and Water Board. Your production is needed and is greatly appreciated, and in a city where fifty percent of our landmass is below sea level, where we have the tight storms that we have nowadays, and also because of the fact that our infrastructure is so old in certain places and has crumbled for a variety of reasons, it is important to recognize the workers who are every day, as was mentioned, out in the sun, responding to emergencies. Sometimes the rain has to be gotten done, and the work has to be gotten done in the middle of the rain, and sometimes you just don't know when the guy is gonna crash into the fire hydrant. I'm still not over that yet. I didn't know that until I joined the city of New Orleans. How many people crashed into those and also light poles? But the bottom line is that we'd like you to take a photo with us. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Please pass this message on to those who are maybe not able to watch today, that the City Council is appreciative, and you've heard the comments, recognizes and recognizes the work. So we have proclamations for workers in each of your zones, the eight zones, and I have individual proclamations for those who have been with the Sewage and Water Board for thirty-five years or more. What a story. Thank you for being here today. Come join us in the front for a quick photo. Though we called some people to the front, and that was good. We have the zone managers here, and the reason for us to be here today is to let everybody know how complex this job is, that it's done by zones, we have managers of each of the zones, and we have over two hundred workers. Another thing is, we need more workers, too. Another thing is, we need more workers, too. Don't hold for a minute. I'm gonna sign now.
All right, before we go to the next agenda item, I want to take a moment of, of personal privilege, and I'll, I'll allow other members to take personal privilege as well, because I know they're gonna want to comment on this, on this. We've had a really tremendous Chief of Staff over the past several years, and that's Mr. Paul Harang. He really has just been tremendous in, in guiding this council through, you know, very difficult times, including Hurricane Ida, when this council chamber became kind of a, 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 an overnight, you know, hotel for city employees, where it was really the only place that had any type of cool air in it. And, you know, he's just been someone who is always there for council members and has just done a great job. But Paul is moving on to a, a, a new place and a new career, and we are extremely sad to lose him, but we wish him the very, very best. And we do have a proclamation from the City Council recognizing his dedicated service to the City of New Orleans. Prior to that, he worked at, in, in our governmental affairs for Mayor Mitch Landry. So the proclamation reads, "Be it proclaimed that the City of New Orleans recognizes Mr. Paul Harang for his countless personal and professional contributions to the City of New Orleans and its residents, and conveys its deepest gratitude for his service over the past 14 years." And of course, it is signed by all seven members of the City Council. Paul, we love you, we wish you the very best. There you are. (APPLAUSE). Paul, why don't you go to the middle? And then, since this isn't an official order of business, I'm gonna grant every council member personal privilege as well. Mr. Harang, would you like to say anything? Or do you want other council members to speak first?
I mean, one of the most dangerous places you can be is between me and a microphone, so we're happy to get started.
Okay.
I mean, I may have made notes.
(LAUGHING).
Uh, thank you, council member, all of you. I've, I've had the opportunity, sometimes I could call it a privileged tour, with four different city councils, over 25 members. This council is unique among all of the councils that, that I've worked with, for a few reasons. One is the, the, you guys value staff, both central staff, your own staff, and staff of the departments, like, as evidenced by what, what you just did, recognizing the hard work that so many people at the Sewage and Waterboard do every day, when it would be easy for you, for you to just sort of join, you know, what a lot of people say about the Sewage and Waterboard. So we appreciate that as staffers, as someone who's been here and has seen sort of the opposite of that from, from elected officials. Also, being an elected official in Louisiana is hard. Being one in New Orleans is hard. A lot of people sort of present them as characters that, you know, for whatever reasons, have different motivations, but you guys are public servants. And we, as the, the employees, need you guys to, to be leaders, and it's, it's just nice to know that all seven of you, the entire council, you're here to serve people. It, it helps us do our jobs. So very quickly, I'm, I know there's a lot of folks here, and there's actual business to, to, to be done. I just, I just wanted to, to say that. Councilmember Thomas, you dropped down after we finished redistricting and came and thanked the staff, which it was just a moment out of your day for you, but it made a huge impact on us. Councilmember Green, you're one of the friendliest people I've ever met. Your, your history, you know, as a city employee, I think brings, brings a lot of value. I can never remember where you went to school, but, but you've been, you've been great.
Say no.
Right. Councilmember King, I think had to step out, but he was, he was one of my peers on staff. And it's just like, I'm, the, the feeling, I'm so proud of him. And I appreciate that he is there as a fellow elder millennial, providing our perspective and serving the people of District C. They're, they're lucky to have him. Councilmember Harris, I, I think we met one, on a Saturday, moving furniture into your office, and I've, I've cherished that friendship since we established it. I like to, I, I consider you a, a personal friend, and I appreciate that there's someone like you on the City Council. Councilmember Jeruso, there's a, reliably, there's one meeting a year where you make me sob in my council chamber, and I don't appreciate it. And every now and then, there's random ones that I can't count on and prepare for. But it's, it's been great working with you over the years, both knowing you before I was, I was here, and now, and now that I'm here. Councilmember Morell, I, I knew sort of casually and by reputation before he got here, and what, I, I don't want to say was a surprise, but something I really appreciate. Again, I mentioned staff support. When you've been the president and the vice president, you, if we come to you, you almost always trust us and give us what we need to do our jobs. The operational side of the department is tough, as we have, we're run by seven elected officials, and you seem to recognize that. And, and we appreciate that, you know, as far as going to bat for us at the Civil Service Commission to fight for your committee staff. We appreciate that. It's nice to be able to be my sort of hidden insane Star Wars fan in front of a, you know, a fellow grown adult, which is nice. So I, I appreciate that. And Councilmember Moreno, you know, I, I remember you from explaining the news to me so many years ago at night. Just sort of, when you talk in the meetings, I feel like I'm sort of transported back sometimes to when you're just, you were telling us the news of the day. And I will always remember me and you staring at the second-floor expansion joint during Hurricane Ida, as the building was squeaking and squealing, and then the work we did after that, as, you know, we were sort of running a bit of a hostel in the council chamber, and all, all that work. You guys have done things that no council has done before. You approach your job, you are unafraid. You're, if there's something that needs to be done, you are unafraid to do it, even if there's, it's not been done before, and there's no guidebook. That's tough on you, and it's tough on us, but the fact that if there's work to be done, you do it, whatever differences of opinion you guys might have, you come together on, on what's important, at least as far as what I've seen. And I appreciate that both as someone who lives here and someone who, who works for you. So thank you for this opportunity. It's been the highlight of my career. You guys are great. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, hang on one second. Personal privilege for Councilmember Jeruso.
Yeah. Thank you. I was here as part of the hostel, and remember it quite well, and like, literally, the only place I could get my phone charged was in council chambers, and, you know, I also blame you, Paul, because I wanted to leave City Hall as quickly as possible to go survey District A, and you would not let me until it was safe. And you've always wanted to look out for our interests at all points. And, you know, sometimes, either because of sheer personality or because of politics, some of us will maybe want to do something, and you've always been a, a soothing, guiding voice. And for those of you who don't know, trying to manage seven different personalities, I'll say it that way, is not an easy task, and you've done it with such ease and aplomb. And I think it says a lot about who you are. We will miss you. New Orleans' loss is Denver's gain, and we know that you're gonna do a fantastic job on whatever comes next. And, and this is truly a bittersweet moment for us, because we're happy for your personal and your family's success, but it's, it's hard for us to lose you.
Personal privilege for Councilmember Harris.
Well, I echo those sentiments. I was, from former Chief of Staff to almost former Chief of Staff, juggling multiple personalities, multiple people shouting at you, whining to you, bearing their souls to you, is not an easy task, and you've handled it with grace, with discretion. And I, you know, I, I consider you a, a dear friend, who really helped me and guided me through my first year on the City Council. I will never forget you giving me the keys to my office on a Saturday before we got sworn in on a Monday, and the office was basically a furniture warehouse with old food in it. And you, and Richard Perk, and I cleaned out that office lickety-split, and I really, really do appreciate you getting me settled in physically into that office, and making sure that I had everything that I need, making sure that my staff has everything that they need, and, you know, I, I can't say enough about you. You are always welcome back in New Orleans, you're always welcome back at City Council, but I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Personal privilege for Vice President Morell.
Paul. As I'm sure you understand, this is bittersweet. I have not had as much time with you as some of my colleagues, but I appreciate the time we've had, as I've always respected you, even when you worked for he who should not be named. You know who that is. And I really appreciate the expertise you brought to the council in your time as Chief of Staff. I also want to say that it, it's, it's been my pleasure to get to know you as a musician, as a parent. We're both Willow parents, that's what it's called now, Willow, Willow, yeah, Willow parents.
So I'm not a Willow parent, but, uh-
You played, the band played the-
My band played a Willow-
Sorry. I assumed you were a Willow parent, you were just a musician playing a gig. Anyway.
It was, we, it was for free. It was a donation, okay? It was an in-kind donation.
Either way, for those of you who don't know, because you're burying the lead, Paul is a very talented musician. And it's an aspect of him that, if you meet him in passing, if you meet him and you speak to him, it is hard unless you see him perform to see that facet of himself. And it was such a tremendous experience seeing you play onstage and seeing that part of you. As for both of us being nerds, we are both nerds who wear glasses and spend a lot of time talking about, uh, Midichlorians, and what's good on Disney Plus, and often what is bad. And I can tell you, there are a variety of shows, had it not been for you, I never would have watched Andor. Which, if you're a Star Wars person, you get that, but Paul gets what I'm saying. Like, I didn't give it a chance, and it was nice having someone to kind of push me out of my comfort level to say, no, you really need to look at this, it really is pertinent and really is great. And it was a great experience, it was a great moment when you were making your very detailed case as to why it was a great show to watch. So you've been a tremendous Chief of Staff, you've been a tremendous person, and it's been a pleasure and an honor to get to know you. And as the council president said, Denver's gain is our loss. I'm sure we'll still see you here for the big events, but New Orleans will miss you.
Personal privilege for Councilmember Green.
Yes, Paul, thank you for the work that you've done over the years. I've only known you for two and a quarter years, if you will, but during that time, you've worked very well, you know, with me. I appreciate that. And also my staff. We appreciate the work that you've done, the professionalism that you bring to your job. And you said that we have a difficult job. Yes, you have a very difficult job, and you've handled it very well over those past 14 years. So we will certainly miss you, invite you to come back often. We don't want to read about you on social media talking about the Broncos. You still need to talk about the Saints, all right? Still talk about the Saints. But I do appreciate the fact that you were always of good disposition. You always took in stride whatever the challenges might be that we might bring to you. You always strongly supported my attendance at St. Augustine High School. Yes, I appreciate that. No, but the bottom line is that you are a real example of professionalism, and what that professionalism can do to help keep, keep an organization such as ours together. And I know that everyone who is behind me and everyone who is sitting here says that we've had good experiences working with you, because you were able to, with that same smile that you have now, give us the information that we needed. And in some instances, if you couldn't provide that information, you would tell us, and then give us a suggestion as to where to go, as opposed to speculating or postulating. So thank you very much for the work that you've done. We'll miss you, we look forward to you coming back to, come back to the council chambers when you come back into New Orleans, so that we can say hello again. And if I'm ever in Denver, I know that I have a friend, I'll look you up. Thank you.
Personal privilege for Councilmember Thomas.
Paul, good luck to you and your family on your future. You know, you're headed to a, a region that, 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 that I love, played ball and went to school in that part of country, and it's one of the most beautiful places in the world, so I know you'll enjoy that. You mentioned earlier that, how hard these jobs are, but they are harder when we don't have people like you and your staff. It's a lot more just join, join it, when you don't have people with integrity, intellectual capacity, those folk who understand service and public policy. And as I was trying to sit down and think about this time that I've worked with you, I thought about, there've been some giants who've worked in council support staff, people like Emma Williams, and Susie McGee, and Paula, and John, Audrey, and Evelyn. And as I think back on their service and your service, you ain't miss a beat. We had someone who represented their ability to understand history, someone who matched them ethically, and someone who understood how to manage seven different personalities. And people ask me a lot about, what's the difference between when I served and serve now? That, that, all that, a lot of that stuff would be in the book. But as, as far as this piece, in terms of our relationship with you and your staff people, ain't miss a beat. I think you guys are some of the best people that I've ever worked with, when you talk about policy. Not only trying to keep us out of trouble, but trying to protect the interests of the people. And know that, you join some notable people in history, but the service stayed the best it ever was. Thank you, man.
Thank you, Paul. At the top of page 48, motion number, motion number 24-
At the top of page 48, motion number, motion number 24 to 26 by Councilmembers Moreno, Morell, Jeruso, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas, amending and restating to establish that Rule 59 of the Council Rules and Regulations be hereby shall read as follows. Clerk of Council absent or vacancy. Rule 59, during periods when the Clerk of Council is absent or when the position of Clerk of Council is vacant, the Assistant Clerk of Council may exercise the powers of the Clerk of Council and perform any and all assigned by law to the Clerk of Council. The powers and privileges granted by this rule shall not be deemed to constitute either a permanent or interim appointment of the Assistant Clerk of Council as the Clerk of Council during any period of absence or vacancies. Councilmembers, we need to suspend the rules to vote on this matter.
Oh, I move. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. Five yays, no nays, the rules are suspended. And now on the motion. This is just really clarifying that the Assistant Clerk of Council may exercise the powers of the Clerk of Council during periods of absence or vacancy. If anyone has any questions, Adam Swansick is here to answer any questions. I see no questions, so I'll move to adopt as amended. Seconded by Councilmember Morell. Did you have something, Adam? No. Waiting on the machines. One more. Five yays, no nays, and the motion is adopted as amended. All right, we can do consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Communication from Erin Spears, Chief of Staff and Council Utilities Regulatory Office, this may be received. Communication from Anthony T. Davis, Director, Department of Code Enforcement, City of New Orleans, this may be received. Communication from Lynette Crowley, Deputy Judicial Administrator, Municipal and Traffic Court of the City of, of the City of New Orleans, State of Louisiana, this may be received. Communication from Amy B. Trupanga, Director of Personnel, Department of Civil Service, City of New Orleans, this may be received. Communication from Jennifer Wagner, MD Doctor of the Health Department, City of New Orleans, this may be received. Communication from Cynthia Davis, Department of Safety and Permits, City of New Orleans, 1805 through 1807, Marion Street, 2412792, Demo, Council District D, this may be received. Suggesting hearing date 6/6/24. Communication from Andy Wyatt, Managing Policy Director and Counsel of Great Alternatives, strongly supporting the City of New Orleans City Council ongoing efforts to support and improve residence access to the benefits of local solar. Communication from James Kent Trayway Jr., this may be received, suggesting hearing dated 6/6/24. Communication from Richard Cortez Jones Walker, LLP, 1519, Robert C. Blake Senior Drive, this may be received, suggesting hearing date 6/6/24. Communication from Seerick Hathaway, Director, Department of Public Works, City of New Orleans, this may be received and referred to the Economic Development Committee. Communication from Jeffrey Swartz, Director of Office of Economic Development, City of New Orleans, this may be received and referred to Economic Development Special Project. Communication from Micah Ink, Chief of Staff and Executive ADA, Orleans Parish District Attorney's Office, Jason Rogers Williams, Orleans Parish District Attorney, this may be received. Communication from Brandon Delorge, MDA Budget Administrator, City of New Orleans Budget Office, this may be received. Report of Susan Waterboard of New Orleans, this may be received. Report of Chriselle McGowan, Deputy Monitor, Deputy Police Monitor, Office of Independent Police Monitoring, this may be received. Report of Executive Director of City Planning, IZD number 423, this may be received. Report of Deputy Director of the New Orleans Historic District Landmarks Commission, Central Business District Historic District Landmarks Commission, 1519, Robert C. Blake Senior Drive, this may be received. Ordinance count to 34,0655 by Councilmember Harris, Zone Indicate 2424 Municipal Address 939 Gerard Street. Motion line over, M24146 by Councilmember Harris, by request. Questionnaire was received, Governmental Affairs recommends approval. Motion M24217 by Councilmember Harris, by request. Questionnaire was received, Governmental Affairs recommended approval. Motion M24220 by Councilmember Thomas, by request. Questionnaire was received, Governmental Affairs recommends approval. Motion M24221 by Councilmember Jeruso, by request. The questionnaire was received, Governmental Affairs recommended approval. Motion M24222 by Councilmember Jeruso, by request. The questionnaire was received, Governmental Affairs recommended approval. This is all matters on the consent agenda.
All right, one second. Here's what's going on. We obviously have a lot of cards here for comment on the consent agenda. The cards that I have, unfortunately, were separated by different item numbers. The consent agenda as a whole is considered one item. So, what I need to do is I need to make sure that those who are here first get to speak first. So, if you just give me a moment, I need to make sure that, and they're all timestamped, so I'm going to be able to like figure out like, you know, who gets to go first. Andrew, if you can help me with that. As you can see, they're all kind of separated. And then, just real quick, I do see a lot of new faces here in the Council chamber, so let me just go over the rules of the Council as far as public comment. First, I'll remind you all, for those who've been here before and for those who haven't, of Rule 45. And Rule 45 says that public comments need to be germane to an agenda item that is addressed. So, if it's on the agenda, you can talk about it, and you get two minutes. Per Rule 47, you get two minutes to speak on an agenda item. Remember, the consent agenda is considered one item. And then, per Rule 47.4, there is a 30-minute time limit for each item. So, once again, consent agenda considered one item, so there will be 30 minutes of public comment on the consent agenda. So, if you just give me one second, I want to make sure that I get this in order so that those who came in first do get to speak first on the consent agenda. All right, one second. Okay, it looks like the person who came in at 11:01 is Sultana Isham. You get to go first for two minutes. And if we can start when she starts speaking, he starts, she starts speaking, and then also start the 30-minute clock as well.
Can I start now?
Whenever you start speaking, the clock will start.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sultana Isham. I'm commenting on Agenda Item 15 to the IPM's report specifically mentions Gaza and categorically misrepresents what happened at the student encampments to not only be pro-New Orleans Police Department, but pro-Louisiana State Police. This report is deeply concerning and shows a lack of independence of the police monitor. Protesters are left with no redress to challenge discriminatory policing and unlawful use of force. This report should be rejected and set back for an ethics review. I'm deeply disappointed in the lack of leadership in the City's Council. After seven months of local ceasefire actions and a peaceful student-led encampment, it cannot be any more clear that a ceasefire is city business and you must act. Your silence is your complicity in genocide, and in that, you do not represent our city. The police of New Orleans are deeply connected to the pain of those suffering both locally, such as Tafik and Samaher, and internationally. Allowing the use of excessive force on sleeping college students is embarrassing to our city and the national and international news media. Make a statement in support of the students and condemn Tulane and Loyola presidents for punishing those who felt morally compelled to take action against an ongoing genocide. Lastly, the people request the addition of a ceasefire resolution to the city, to the next City Council meeting agenda. Thank you.
All right, as I continue down the timestamps, I do have some from an earlier time, so I'm going to take those. This is from 10:37, Erin Gifford. Erin Gifford? Erin Gifford, all right, not here. I'll put that to the side. Next, at also 10:37, Amelie Dagel. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Amelie Dagel, and I'm here on behalf of the...
Put your mic a little closer to your mouth so we can hear you. Perfect, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. I can take my mask off, too. I'm Amelie Dagel, I'm here on behalf of the National Lawyers Guild. For those who don't know, the National Lawyers Guild is a progressive bar association. It was formed when the American Bar Association refused to desegregate. And we, the main thing we do, among many other things, is we train legal observers to impartially observe law enforcement at protests and when people are expressing their First Amendment rights. So, I'm going to read as much as I can in two minutes of a statement that our membership voted on, so I'm speaking on behalf of the organization, and it directly contradicts the report of the Independent Police Monitor. The Louisiana chapter of the National Lawyers Guild stands in firm solidarity with members of the Tulane and Loyola student-led Gaza protest encampment. We admire the students and community members who exercised their First Amendment rights to protest the genocide of Palestinians by the State of Israel. Louisiana National Lawyers Guild legal observers were on the scene throughout the entirety of the 33-hour peaceful encampment, which ended when over 100 armed Louisiana State Police troopers in riot gear at the behest of the Tulane University Administration violently raided it and made arrests. State troopers pointed sniper rifles and threatened the use of chemical agents towards unarmed students and community members on the St. Charles Avenue neutral ground. Tulane University Administration should be ashamed of itself for endangering its students and community members in this way. Louisiana National Lawyers Guild additionally condemns the Tulane University Administration for trying to repress free speech by issuing disciplinary actions in the middle of final exams against students and faculty members with pro-Palestine views. Tulane University Administration's actions amount to serious First Amendment violations. Louisiana National Lawyers Guild also condemns Orleans Parish District Attorney Jason Williams for Orleans Parish District Attorney's actions towards members...
That's your time, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, coming in with a card at 10:40, Allison McCrery Esquire. Is she here? All right, I'm going to put her card to the side. Leah Tharet. Is Leah here? She's coming up. And that card came in at 10:41.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Leah Tharet. I'm here to oppose Agenda Item 15. The IPM's report specifically mentions Gaza and categorically misrepresents what happened at the student encampment. These are peaceful protests. I found it discouraging to see some of the police brutality that was used. Half of my family is Palestinian, they're with me today. I was able to go to Palestine last summer, and I experienced personally the brutality of the police present there, how the IDF suppresses citizens, and I see those similar tactics being used on our university campuses. This is a, these are prestigious universities that should be held accountable. Also, our police tactics that are being used are similar to what is being used in Palestine. So, I would like to see this City Council address some of our local citizens that have been killed and illegally detained overseas. These are citizens from Gretna, Louisiana, and Metairie, and the greater New Orleans community. So, 152 cities have signed a ceasefire resolution, New Orleans must do the same. Publicly support peaceful protesting, especially amongst our student movement. Condemn Tulane and Loyola administrations for punishing students and attacking them with state police. Issue a statement to the U.S. State Department and government of Israel condemning the death of Tafik Abdel-Jabbar, who's 17-years-old, killed with no reason. And also for Samaher Esmail, who has also been detained without due reason. And add a ceasefire resolution to the next City Council meeting agenda. Thank you.
Next up is... Hakeem Marad. Mr. Marad, Hakeem Marad.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. I am blessed to be in a country that provides this public forum for us to be able to speak to you. It's not always the same, not every country that we, that we support or give money to or give our tax dollars do give us this kind of forum, and so I wanted to start with that. The people that we have here today are taking many sacrifices, they are not paid actors, they are individuals who care about the city, they care about the values that we represent in this city. And I know that you guys care about the values that are represented by this city, and so we have come to you multiple times now. We've emailed, we've called, the classic jargon, we've played by every rule that you've provided us, every rule. And we've done so in a fair matter, in a just matter, and we've given you opportunity as well. Some of you have spoken to us, some of you have not. Ms. Oliver Thomas, you have not reached out to us, even though we've reached out to you and your staff. We've spoken to some staffers, you know, Mr. Freddie King's not even available here, and Mr. Green is not here as well. We've not spoken to either of them either. We would love to get with you together, craft something that represents the City of New Orleans, a ceasefire resolution that represents our city and our love for peace and prosperity for all, equality for all. We have championed those values, and I think we could do that again. And there is nothing stopping us from doing this. Everyone wants to see this end, everyone. Everyone wants to see the genocide end. You know it's a genocide, I know it's a genocide, the pictures, the videos, everyone knows it's a genocide. There's nothing to talk about here, except that we can ask, and it's not demanding, and it's not overly stretching, it's not within our, against our values or against your authority. You have the authority, you have the authority to make that statement, so please put it on the agenda, and we can then come and support one item for 30 minutes, as instructed, and not have to go through this rigmarole. And I'm not doing this for show, by the way, this is not, we have lost thousands of dollars collectively to be here in this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Essolucca.
Hi, my name is Michael Essolucca, I'm a New Orleans resident, I live on Gentilly Boulevard. I'm here to oppose multiple items on the consent agenda, the IPM report, which misrepresents what happened at the student encampment and is effectively pro-New Orleans Police Department and pro-state police, pro-state police repression of peaceful protesters who are simply engaging in their First Amendment rights. I'm also concerned about the increase of staffing and hiring and more funds going to the police department, more funds that are going to destroy our homeless encampments, more funds that are going to repress peaceful protesters instead of being used to house people in the city, instead of being used to address the root causes of crime. I also just want to say, while I have the mic, that there is a distinction that is falsely being drawn between the issues that affect people in New Orleans, especially black people in New Orleans, and the people that affect, the issues that affect people in Palestine. First of all, a huge number of our city are Palestinians, so don't say that that is not a local issue. The same police tactics that are being used to kill people and surveil and repress people in Palestine are also being used here in New Orleans. Our city had a contract with Palantir, an Israeli surveillance company. Members of your own staff have gone to Israel. We have money that is going from our city budget and from Tulane and Loyola and other city institutions to Israel. Our city is directly complicit in funding this genocide. And so, I just want to stand here and ask you, do the right thing. Address the root causes of injustice in our community and take a stand against genocide. Stand with our city's values and stop drawing a false distinction between the issues that affect Black people and New Orleanians here and the issues that affect Palestinians. We are one community, and these are our issues together that we need to stand for. So, thank you.
Stop the clock. Ma'am, stop the clock. Thank you. Okay. Willie Wyssuschen.
Thanks.
Good.
My name is Willie, and I'm here to talk about Agenda Item 15, which I oppose. We all are spending another Thursday here in this room. We all come out and skip time and life and work to do a beautiful thing. Look at all these faces for liberation, for Palestine, and for our, our city. As public servants, isn't it your duty to do difficult things as well? To show up for your constituents and community members? Every time I'm here, I learn how badly New Orleans constituents and public officials need tax dollars, parks and rec, housing, public works, but instead, y'all choose to send it over to Israel. It is so surreal that there are over 40,000 dead, murdered Palestinians, mostly women and children, and yet still y'all choose to spend our money on police terror here and abroad. I visited the student encampment at Tulane and Loyola, and it was a profoundly beautiful and peaceful space. Allowing the use of force for unsleeping college students is embarrassing to our city. Imperialism has been the religion of the political class here in America as long as any of us has been alive, and a quiet, obedient, polite society is its backbone. We will not be quiet, and we will continue to make noise as long as y'all refuse to listen to us. So I ask you, add a ceasefire resolution to the next city council meeting agenda. Thank you.
Stop the clock. Next up is Felix Allen.
I'm Felix Allen from District C. I just wanted to speak on the recent Office of the Independent Police Monitor report, which minimizes the fact that the NOPD, LSP, and TUPD sent in an army of militarized police to threaten and brutalize students protesting genocide. You know, the report similarly misrepresented a town hall with Police Chief Ann Kirkpatrick when, that was emceed by Jasmine Groves, when the community came to put Kirkpatrick on blast for not being accountable to the community. You know, it's shameful that the IPM and the mayor and Tulane administration and the NOPD chief and our so-called progressive DA have all capitulated to kind of, you know, our racist Louisiana governor. DA Williams went as far as to express his disappointment that these students who were arrested were not held in jail for longer. I think there are some of them in the audience. I'm friends with a lot of them, and if y'all knew them and how sweet they are, you'd understand how absurd this is. There are photos out there of, you know, there's a little, she said it's not a tank. That looks like a tank to me. I don't know if there's a difference between an armored car and a tank, but it looks like a tank to me. But the people of New Orleans have been fighting for months to put an end to Israel's genocide against our Palestinian siblings, and we need y'all to follow our lead. We need you to stand with us against the political repression we face, and we need, we need you to stand against Landry's attempts to use the LSP to brutalize the people of New Orleans. We need y'all to stand with us against Israel's genocide, just as you would stand against apartheid South Africa and Nazi Germany. Over 150 U.S. cities have already approved ceasefire resolutions, and we need to join them. This is controversial. This is a local issue because millions of our tax dollars go to a state that has murdered tens of thousands of people in the past seven months.
That's your time, Mr. Allen.
Our brother Tafik has been murdered as a result of this genocide, and our auntie Samaher was imprisoned and is set to face trial in military court. We need to make our grandchildren and our ancestors proud and stand alongside the Palestinian people against this genocide. Put the ceasefire resolution on the agenda.
That's your time. Thank you. All right. Up next is Shreys Vesudivan, and followed by Ariel Moya.
Thank you. First, President Moreno, I've said this to you last time. My name is Shreys. There is no W in my name. I've spoken here three times. This is my fourth time, and I would like to be addressed correctly.
I apologize.
I think the level, the level of, of, you know, disregard that you're showing me is the same level of disregard that you're showing these entire people who have been mobilizing to this city council, meeting with y'all, requesting that you pass a ceasefire resolution. And all you guys do is like, what's here on this consent agenda? The IPM report, which mischaracterizes the brutality that the student encampment faced, and also numerous agenda items that are here to increase staffing, increase budgets for the police, all at, at the same time, y'all are letting the Louisiana state legislature further criminalize people who are protesters, people who are exercising their First Amendment rights. You guys are letting the state, you are letting the city slide into fascism, and you are putting all of us at risk by not taking a stance. We want a ceasefire resolution on the agenda for the next meeting. We want y'all to acknowledge the death of Tafik, the killing, the murder of Tafik by the Israeli government. We want you, and condemn that. We want y'all to intervene, make a statement about Samaher's, Samaher's charges against, by an Israeli military court with a 95% conviction rate. She is a grandmother who has businesses in the city, who is a U.S. citizen, arrested in Israel for, for social media posts critical of a government that she made in the United States 10 years ago. And she needs to come back home. She has cancer. She cannot access her medicine. When she was in jail, she could not access her medicine. This is a dire situation. This is a local issue. You guys need to take leadership, and all of these people are here today asking you to do so. They've been here for months asking me to do so, and they will be here for months and years, however long it takes, until you guys do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Alex Peacock. And then Stephanie Crane.
Good morning, Council. My name is Alex Peacock. I'm a, a, a active voter in District C. I'm very disappointed to see that my own city council member here is not even seated when I took the time out of my schedule to go and wait in line and vote for him. I'm here as well to, as has been voiced, I apologize, I'm a nervous speaker and things, but as a man of faith, I feel compelled to be here. It's, it's a travesty what is happening, and I think you're all aware of it. And it's disappointing to see that special interests seem to be more important to you than, than the basic humanity of, of Palestinians abroad, but your own constituents here, the many people behind me that are, are voicing their concern for this travesty of justice that's occurring, both abroad and here at home. I think it's really not that difficult to put an agenda item on to simply discuss these issues, and it's really disappointing that I can't even make eye contact with the very people that I'm, I'm requesting this, this, this simple, this simple action so that we can even begin to have a conversation about the horrific injustice that so many people are facing. I'm gonna end my comments so that more of my colleagues can speak, but I hope that your basic humanity compels you to, can finally compel you to add an agenda item so that we can begin to discuss the humanity, the inhumanity that's going on before our eyes.
Stephanie Crane, followed by Kelly Peach Nash.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Crane.
Hello.
I am commenting on Agenda Item 4, Page 5, on the police staffing report. I'm concerned about the increasing staffing and hiring of the New Orleans Police Department and their collaboration with the LSP to intimidate students and protesters peacefully protesting. I was there on the first day of the Tulane and Loyola encampment. I was with the peaceful pro-Palestine protesters, and in response, I saw the police on four mounted horses, ride their horses into the crowd. It is a miracle that nobody was killed or seriously injured that day. I did not see the police protecting pro-Palestinian protesters from counter protesters, or even another New Orleans citizen that attempted to drive their car into the pro-Palestinian protesters. I saw them handing out zip ties. I saw them arresting people, not for any laws that they'd broken or for trespassing at all, but simply for being within arms' reach of police officers. I do not believe that hiring more police are going to be the solution for our community. If we do not address police misconduct or excessive force against regular New Orleanian citizens, we cannot guarantee the safety of the people of our city. Lastly, I request, with many of the people here today, the addition of a ceasefire resolution to the next city council meeting agenda. It is seven months, almost eight, of peaceful actions promoting a ceasefire in the city. Countless people have showed up today and to many, many other meetings, asking you to put a ceasefire on the agenda. You may not see this as a local issue, but for many citizens here, it is. It is in alignment with our own values and within our own humanity. Please, and thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kelly Peach Nash, followed by Brittany Monti. Kelly Peach Nash. All right, I'll put that card to the side. Brittany Monti? Okay, come on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm up here to oppose Agenda 15. Students should not be scared to go to school. I feel scared standing up here in front of all of you, knowing that I could be a potential target now. I shouldn't feel that way in my own city. I'm a taxpayer, I'm a homeowner, I'm a voice. We need education. We need people to feel like they can be educated. We need to know how our money is being spent and why. This is embarrassing. 152 cities. We can't be one of those? Our city is so diverse, so full of color, so full of beauty, so full of love, and we're not showing that to the world right now. Embarrassing. That's the only way I can think of. We deserve better. All of us deserve better. I believe in us. I moved here five years ago because I really care about what New Orleans is doing out here. We come from a different kind of place. Our heart beats differently than other places do in the world. Let's not scratch that. Please, a ceasefire. I mean, we deserve it. Everyone deserves it. We all know this is wrong, and we all know that we can't ignore this any longer. There's just no more space for that. We deserve to be educated, and I think that what happened with the encampment is just grossly embarrassing. I hope that you guys will actually look at some of those videos and photos that you have in yet and ask yourself, are you proud? Are you guys proud of what happened there? I'm not. And right now, it's embarrassing to be a citizen of this city and knowing you guys keep turning your eye away to what's happening. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Holder, followed by Elizabeth Kress. It hasn't started. You're good. It'll start when you start speaking.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Jose Holder. I'm here to speak on Consent Item 15, the IPM report, which disregards what really happened there. Those of us who were there know that. And I ask you to listen to the students, hold a hearing, and allow the students' voices to be heard. I'm here today to speak to you as a proud member of the New Orleans Jewish community who stands proudly for a free Palestine, for the right of return for all Palestinians, and for an end to the 76-year occupation and genocide in Palestine, the ongoing NOKBA. I'm also here to speak as an author of children's books, and it is wearing this hat that I would like to bring to the council the words of James Baldwin. The children are always ours, every single one of them, all over the globe. And I would like to add that we have a special and sacred responsibility to the ones who have been left behind, the ones who the powerful discard, whose lives don't garner the same attention from the powers that be because of their skin color, or because of their culture, or because their killers align with the interests and the needs of empire or of the United States. And so the children of Gaza are ours, too, the over 15,000 of them who Israel has murdered, and the many who are still trying to survive, because all the children are ours. But rather than honoring them, we are participating in their slaughter with our tax dollars. This is a local issue because every single one of us is a part of it, because it is members of our community, our Palestinian brothers and sisters and siblings, whose families are being slaughtered with our tax dollars. Tafik Abdul-Jabbar was ours. He was part of our community. He was a child of this city. Even those of us who did not know him, he was still our son. This council has let his death go unremarked on, as if he didn't matter, but his life mattered deeply. He is loved, his memory is cherished, and his death matters, too. It deserves commemoration, and Tafik deserves justice. The young people peacefully protesting in those encampments also deserve justice, and they are also our children. Pass a ceasefire resolution, put it on the agenda, and drop all the charges against the protesters.
Thank you. All right. Elizabeth Kress. Elizabeth Kress, followed by Kristin Hamilton. Good morning.
Hello. I'd like to speak to you today about Agenda Item 4, Page 5, which is the police staffing report. I think it has been well-established what our police force and the state police force is being used to do, and I see no reason that we should be funding the addition of more police officers, more funds to the police, if this is what they are going to be doing in our city. There are other issues that we could be using these funds on that are, would impact citizens of our city in a direct, helpful manner, rather than suppressing their freedom of speech. These are our tax dollars going into this. They are going into Israel. There is no excuse for this. The people of New Orleans deserve to have their voice heard. A ceasefire resolution is crucial to letting them express their beliefs of what this city should stand for and what it should use its money on. It needs to be added. We are clearly showing that there is a desire for this to be discussed, and it is a simple thing to add it to the next agenda. It needs to be covered. We need to discuss this. Many cities across the country have already declared a desire for ceasefire. Our city should be able to express that, if that is what the people want, and the people deserve to be able to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Elizabeth Holder. You skipped me.
Oh, I, I think he thought that was his card. You're Elizabeth Holder, though?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. The gentleman who was up here before, his last name was Holder?
Oh, another Elizabeth Holder?
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. So, why don't you do this? I'm gonna go find your card, and I'm gonna put it over here, but, Ms. Holder, go ahead, and then I'm gonna take Kristin Hamilton after that, okay?
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I just want to start by saying that I am speaking about the Agenda Item Number 4, the police staffing report. An increased staffing and hiring of New Orleans Police Department. They're working to intimidate students and peaceful protesters while brutal, by brutalizing local New Orleanians, exercising our First Amendment right. Helena Moreno, I have grown up watching you on TV. My grandma, we all watched you, like, for years growing up, and we have watched you report on everything that's been happening, but your silence for the past eight months has been heartbreaking and disappointing. Your silence is your complicity. Louisiana has given Israel $29 million instead of keeping our money where we desperately need it in schools, healthcare, and affordable housing. You know it's wrong. Please, 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 enough, enough. Put a ceasefire resolution on the next agenda. Do it, and see how much support that comes out. Stop the peaceful, stop the violence on peaceful protesters, and justice for Tafik. He was murdered. And free Samir Ismail. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Hamilton.
I'm a graduate student at Tulane University, currently on an unjust interim suspension. I was present that morning when a- when approximately 200 Louisiana State Police Officers violently disassembled the beautiful encampment that was built by students of Tulane and Loyola Universities. The officers were wearing riot gear, intentionally using psychological warfare, and wielding weapons of both less-than-lethal and lethal capacity. At the range in which any of the weapons were from me pointed at my head, it is reasonable to believe that they could have caused serious injury or even death, as evidenced in a medical study by the British Medical Journal. Not only was I specifically there to try and observe and document the violence that we knew would occur at the hands of LSP, but I was standing on the neutral ground where the St. Charles Streetcar runs, as I and a small group of no more than 25 were standing at a reasonable distance from police activity to document. Without any direction or warning, LSP began to form a line that began on Tulane's property and stretched across all of St. Charles to the sidewalk in front of Ottoman Park. It was shocking to be surrounded on all sides by police. It was incredibly unclear where they wanted us to go, for many of the police had blocked them from their vehicles. There were police on Tulane's campus in front of us blocking us. Anyone who needed to exit headed east, in Ottoman Park, and in vehicles behind us to the west. I personally was targeted by one officer, possibly because I was recording, which is well within my rights, and was struck in both my legs with projectiles, one of which left such a significant bruise and swelling that it was painful to walk or move my leg for over a week and a half. I was also shoved to the ground multiple times. The force in which I was shoved caused bruising, swelling, and scrapes along the right side of my body. I had to go to the hospital, and am still experiencing pain from this injury. Since my injury, including just last night, I have had difficulty sleeping because I cannot lay down without being in pain. I later learned that I had a concussion as I was shoved so hard that I forgot hitting my head and had to go back to the doctor. I was significantly disoriented from this, and truly believe the only reason I was able to get back up on one specific occasion was because of
That's your time, ma'am.
... from the ground. Mind you, the metal rails from the streetcar line could have easily busted my head open if I had fallen on them. I spoke to the independent police monitors after I was brutalized, and they wrote down my story and information and took photos of my injuries, which began to look worse over time, but they have not reached out to me. We are asking for a public hearing on this matter, and for you to reject the IPM report, as there are inconsistencies within it. And none of this, though, compares to what the people in Gaza are currently experiencing. We are begging you to add a ceasefire resolution to the agenda.
Thank you. Anna Miller? Anna Miller? Is there an Anna Miller? No Anna Miller? Wait, are you Anna Miller? Okay, come on down.
Good morning. My name is Anna. I'm a New Orleans resident, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the millions of people in Rafah who are being starved. We're sending $25 million New Orleans taxpayer dollars to a genocidal state of Israel per year, while one in two black children in this city do not have enough food to eat and are underneath the poverty line, and I think that's absolutely a shame. I'm calling on you to oppose the IPM report, which falsifies the events on Tulane and Loyola's campus, and hold a hearing for these students who have been brutalized by Louisiana State Police. Our racist governor has sent them in, and you are enabling future violence to happen if you do not hold a hearing on this matter. Someone mentioned the sea level rise and concern for the environment here in Louisiana, while the same companies that are profiting from the genocide in Palestine are profiting from the destruction of our coast. There are cop cities being built all around this country to suppress future resistance to this militarized climate nightmare. Now, if you want this to happen, there's nothing I can say to you that falls within the decorum of this building. But if you do not want this to happen, you need to work with us to pass a resolution and show that New Orleans is a place of democracy, New Orleans is a place that respects its citizens, and New Orleans is a place that does not abide by genocide. It's very simple. If you do not want a climate catastrophe genocide, we need to stand against the tide of what's happening, and stand in solidarity with our students, with our Palestinian community members. Tofik Abdul-Jabbar and Samir Ismail, they're our community members, and we will not go away until you work with us to resolve this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President, that's 30 minutes. That's 30 minutes, thank you. All right, well, that concludes public comment on the consent agenda. All cards will be added to the record along with online comments due to the fact that the comment period is completed. Motion's been moved by Councilmember Green. I've seconded. All in favor?
This is the move to...
Hearing, no opposition. The consent agenda is adopted unanimously, 7-0. And with that, members, we do need to go into executive session. I'll make a motion to go into executive session, seconded by Council Vice President Morrell. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Madam Clerk, I think I've got five members. One's in the audience, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Jeruso, I'm here, Councilmember Thomas, and Council Vice President Morrell. So we've got five people, we've got a quorum, so I'm gonna make a motion to reconvene. Press my button, there we go. Seconded by Council President, Council Vice President Morrell. We've got, where, Councilmember Harris?
She just walked away.
She's a yes.
Two here.
And then, where'd Joe go?
Joe's at Freddy right there. Freddy, say yes.
Say yes.
Freddy's here.
And Freddy's a yes. There we go. Press yay. All right, six yays. We are back in action, Madam Clerk.
Okay.
Regular agenda, legislative grouping. Demolition request of Red State Property Solutions LLC. Transmitting the application documents for demolition permit requiring city council review and approval for the following property. 30,000 Daniel Street, 2409145 Demo, Council District B. We have a motion, 24231 by Councilmember Harris. Motion approving the demolition permit for the property located at 3,000 Daniel Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is HDLC here?
Okay.
Oh, Councilmember Harris, this is an applicant, this isn't governed by HDLC.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks for correcting me, Anita. So I'm gonna go ahead and move to adopt. HDLC denied this demolition request, but I personally visited the site during recent neighborhood walk-through, and I conducted, and we determined that the site was unsalvageable. After reviewing the reports submitted to my office and in my in-person assessment of the property, it's clear that denial of this demolition would be burdensome to the neighborhood. I have one card, Michael Burnside. Michael Burnside is not here. He opposes the demolition of this property. Any online comments? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and move to approve. Seconded. I need, it's passed, five votes. Thank you.
We have, on top of page 16, we have legislative grouping. HDLC appeal of Michael Cassi, Cassi Commercial Construction. Requesting to appeal the historic district landlords' commission decision to levy a fine of $10,000 for the unpermitted removal of the roof of the structure for property located at 940 Frenchman Street. Motion M24227 by Councilmember King. Motion granting the applicant's request and reducing the fine to $5,000 for the property located at 940 Frenchman Street.
All right, do we have anyone from HDLC here for this? No? Okay. We have one comment card, Mr. Murray? Oh, okay, yeah, Mr. Murray, go ahead.
All right.
I just wanna say this is not germane to the topic at hand. I won't be able to let you speak out of respect. You wanna get your hands up.
I just wanna say that we should follow the historic districts, and we should, anytime there'll be a fine, you know, we should, we should follow that in historic districts. There's lots of historic districts in Gaza, and I understand that I don't wanna take up his time, but we are, we're happy to leave if you guys can confirm that you will work with us on a ceasefire resolution for the next agenda. We'll be happy to get out of your hair, and respect everyone's, these individuals who have these fines, as well as the space and the time. I know that you guys can give me a feedback, and you're able to talk to me, so. I would love to meet and talk to you in person as well, Mr. King, so. Happy to do that as well. So, would you guys like to take that opportunity? We have a resolution, we've emailed it to all of you. Would love to get it on the agenda, starting next meeting. Would anyone like to take that opportunity? Would anyone like to take the opportunity to tell me why? Why, why don't they think it's a good idea?
I'm gonna, gonna have to request that we move on and have HDLC make their presentation containing this topic. Thank you.
Jay on you!
Appreciate it.
We do have HDLC here.
Sorry, you guys went very quickly. 940 Frenchman is a contributing rated structure located in the Foberg Marini Bull Control Local Historic District. This application was, for renovation, was reviewed by the ARC and approved by the commission in August of 2023. Following this approval, final drawings were submitted, and staff was in the process of completing the final HDLC review. The drawings were thorough and complete, and staff was working directly with the architect to resolve only minor details and clarifications. It was anticipated that the C of A would be issued within the following day or two. Unfortunately, on February 27th, staff was near the property for a separate inspection, when it was observed that the exterior work had already started, and the entirety of the hipped roof was already fully demolished. The drawings under review did not indicate this roof to be removed, only for the asphalt shingles to be replaced. While an interior demolition permit had been issued, neither the C of A nor the building permit were issued for the larger renovation or exterior work. HDLC then placed a stop-work order. The construction of a new roof to match the previous can be easily accomplished. However, the removal of the original historic building fabric and its special character and interest likely cannot be reproduced. Based on this, and because of the inappropriate roof demolition work occurred without a C of A or a building permit, staff recommended approval of the request for the retention with a Tier 1 fine range. At their hearing of April 3rd, 2004, commissioners reviewed the circumstances of the case. The maximum allowable fine for this illegal demolition was $103,000. At the time, because the staff recommended a Tier 1-5, the commission voted unanimously to allow the retention of the demolition and levy a minimal fine of $10,000.
Thank you. So if you have a card, you wanna speak? Can, just fill a card out afterwards.
I'm the owner of Casasi.
I know, I know, but we have a card for you. Comment card?
Oh, no, sir.
So, speak, give your name and your address, and then fill a comment card out, please.
Okay. I'm the owner of Casasi Commercial Construction, 1710 Orleans Street. Just here, because of the appeal. Saw the motion to grant $5,000 reduction. And if, if continues, I accept. I appreciate the consideration, understanding.
Okay. All right. We appreciate that, so if you can fill out a yellow comment card and hand it to the clerk's office, that'd be appreciated. Thank you. Any, any online comments? Okay, at this time, make a motion to adopt. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. Six yays, no nays. The motion is properly adopted. Thank you.
At the top of page 17, legislative grouping. HDLC appeal of Alisa Warren, Director of Operations, the Demo Diva LLC Demolition Dumpster. Requesting to appeal historic district landlords' commission decision of denial of the application for full demolition of the property located at 1428 1430 Cluett Street. Motion M24228 by Councilmember King. Motion granting and approving the applicant's request for the property located at 1428 1430 Cluett Street. And the decision of the commission is reversed.
All right, let's start.
Although 1428 Cluett Street is a reserved modest double shotgun building, it was constructed within the period of significance of the Bywater Local Historic District and contributes to the surrounding historic residential context. Based on inspection findings, the original front portion of the building, which is three rooms deep, is in salvageable condition and should be maintained and rehabilitated. However, the structurally failing rear addition from the left side elevation entry back should be removed. Staff recommended denial of full demolition, but has no objection to the demolition of the rear portion as denoted. At their meeting of April 3rd, 2024, the commission noted that the property owners, the New Light Baptist Church, had stated in their request that the building was in disrepair and required demolition. The commission noted that the church had owned the property since 1988 and was thus fully responsible for the building's current condition. The commission agreed that the deteriorated rear section of the building could be removed, and the front portion of the structure should be rehabilitated. Commission then voted unanimously to deny the application for full demolition.
Thank you. We do have two comment cards, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. George Amadeed.
Good afternoon. I'm George Amadee, Board Chairman of New Light Baptist Church. I'm a fourth-generation New Lycean, and an urban and regional planner. The church was founded in 1881. We were denied approval to tear down 1428 14 Cluett Street, and was told that only the back part of the building needed to be torn down, while the front part was not as bad. Our plan is to build a church and educational ministry structure on the site that cannot be accommodated within the present church. We have met with at least two contractors, and we have university partners who inspected both the inside and the outside of the structure, and concluded that the damages were considerably more extensive, and the cost to repair prohibited, and would place an undue burden on the church. We have partnered with Prairie View University Center of Historic Preservation, who both have a architecture, a planning, and a construction department to seek a win-win scenario. The plan is to tear down the existing structure and utilize Prairie View to incorporate design elements in a new structure consistent with the neoclassical style currently prevalent in the surrounding neighborhood to maintain the historicness of the new structure, as has been done in other places around the city. Prairie View will collect selected materials from the current structure to study the size and the style to be used in future historic preservation projects. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a call from this Mary Nowe Nolan Wheatley.
Good afternoon. Mary Nowe Nolan Wheatley with the Preservation Resource Center, 923 Chapatula Street. The PRC is opposed to unnecessary demolitions of historic buildings, and we support the HDLC's decision to only allow the removal of the rear portion of the early 20th-century double shotgun at 1428 Cluett Street that has craftsman-style details located in the Bywater Local and National Registered Districts. The building's state of disrepair has occurred under the watch of the current owners, who acquired the building in the 1980s. Fortunately, HDLC's inspectors found that the original front portion of the building is salvageable, likely a testament to quality historic materials. According to the applicant at the HDLC meeting in April, the church hopes to expand its sanctuary seating, classrooms for their youth program, and parking. These are reasonable needs, but all possible alternatives should be explored before demolition. According to the National Register report for the Bywater, 61% of the buildings within the district are shotguns, which the author argues is one of the most concentrated collections of the house type in the entire region. Demolition here and there adds up and threatens the viability of these nationally significant districts, which qualify thousands of buildings throughout the city for the federal and state historic tax credit programs. Maintaining their integrity is a smart economic decision. We ask that the council consider the larger implications that result from continuing to grant appeals for demolition on the environment, on neighborhoods, and on the city's future.
Thank you. I don't believe this property is in the Bywater. Is that correct? It's not. You've mentioned Bywater a few times. This isn't in Bywater. It's not. It's not. It's in St. Rock. I just want to make that clarification. Gotcha. Okay, okay, okay.
It's in the Bywater Local Historic District.
Gotcha. Okay. Just wanted to make that distinction. Thank you, thank you. Any other comments from the days? No. All right, the New Light Baptist Church is a pillar of the Upper Nightwater community. They own this property, which abuts their church, and they need to make use of this land to accommodate additional parking for their growing congregation. I don't believe historical preservation can be considered in a vacuum, and now more than ever, our community institutions need our support. With this, I move to grant this appeal. Second. Second by Councilmember Morrell. We have four yays, one more, five yays and no nays. And just before we move, I want to clarify the previous appeal with the fine. So we're not, we're reducing the fine, but still upholding HDLC's recommendation for retention. Just wanted to make that clear. All right, thank you.
At the top of page 18, Legislative Grouping, HDLC Appeal of Zachary Smith, Only Zach Smith Consulting and Design. Requesting to appeal the Historic District Landowners' Commission Decision of Denial of an Appeal of the Architectural Review Committee. Recommendation regarding an application for alterations to the primary facade and demolition by raising and building, raising the building for the property located at 2203 South Carrollton Avenue. Motion line over, M24205 by Councilmember Jeruso. Motion granting the applicant's request for the property located at 2203 South Carrollton Avenue, and the decision of the commission is reversed.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. Ms. Burke.
2203 South Carrollton Avenue is a contributing rated structure located in the Carrollton Avenue Full Control Local Historic District. An application was filed as part of a FEMA flood mitigation program to elevate this structure. The ground floor basement unit currently has a floor-to-ceiling height of seven foot. The initial proposal reviewed by the ARC in January included an increase in the floor-to-ceiling height of the ground floor, the addition of a new first-floor entry, and the removal of the monolithic staircase indicative of the raised basement architectural typology. The ARC was not opposed to the raising of the building and gave suggestions that would have been sympathetic to a raised basement craftsman-style building. The application was deferred to the February meeting. A revised drawing set was submitted that addressed a few of the ARC comments, but still maintained a first-floor entry door. The proposal also removed the masonry component, furthering it from its raised basement typology. The ARC again recommended keeping the raised basement typology and even suggesting burming up the yard as a path forward in order to get the building to the desired height. The ARC again deferred the application and made recommendations. A third drawing set was reviewed at their March ARC meeting. The design further deviated from the ARC comments and recommendations and drastically changed the overall style of the house to a loosely inspired craftsman Victorian hybrid. The applicant also supplied an image of the original elevation, further showing the deviation in the design language of the proposed change. The ARC again gave suggestions about design elements and suggested terraces, and the application was deferred again. Ultimately, the proposed design is a de facto demolition as no architecturally defining features of the original building save the arch of the front porch would remain. Staff believes that our path forward and that incorporating the ARC's comments would greatly improve this project, which is in a full control historic district. The HDLC demolition definition adopted by the City Council in March of 2021 considers raising an existing building to create habitable space that complies with the ceiling height requirement set forth by the Building Code to be demolition. Further, the HDLC design guidelines do not approve the elevation of buildings that were constructed with raised basements or later modified to include raised basements. Raising the building to create additional habitable space at the ground floor is a drastic action that negatively impacts the architectural significance of the structure and its relationship to the historic Carrollton Avenue corridor. While the HDLC understands that the owner desires additional square footage, this could easily be achieved via an addition in the rear of the structure or reduced ground floor design in the raised basement language. In addition, while the building is currently environmentally responsive to flooding due to the main finished floor being raised seven feet high, the building would be rendered less resilient by this proposal and placing inhabited square footage only four feet above grade. This seems irresponsible in light of the increasing flood risk in New Orleans and what we're all experiencing due to climate change. Due to the extent of the proposed demolition and alteration indicated, this application was considered demolition and new construction. For these reasons, the HDLC recommended denial of the application. At their meeting of April 3rd, 2024, the commission reviewed the proposal. They agree that there were reasonable alternatives to this proposal that could achieve the owner's programmatic desires while also maintaining the character of a raised basement craftsman-style bungalow. The commission then voted unanimously to deny the application and requested that the property owner return to the ARC with a revisal that followed the recommendations of the Architectural Review Committee.
Thank you. All right, two comment cards, Mr. Lazle and then Ms. Johnson.
Ron Lazle, 1,000, South Norman C. Francis with Zach Smith Consulting and Design. Again, just reiterating what was kind of said was this is a FEMA grant in order to mitigate the potential of flooding or continued flooding at this property. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Jeruso because when there were concerns and questions brought up over the past few weeks, you made sure that we continued to reach out to the neighbors and discuss with them, and we did. And even after we had reached out, we had followed up again twice and we had not heard back from the neighbors on that point. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Susan Johnson, 2822 LePage Street, Town of Carrollton Watch. I am not paid to be here. I fully support the position. As a preservation advocate, I fully support the position of the ARC and the HDLC on this application. I'd like to quote, make a couple of quotes from the April 3rd HDLC meeting, first by architect Brian Block, the Director of HDLC staff. About this iteration of the design, yes, the flood issues and climate change ground floors are being taken into account, but the architect chose to go further than what has been presented. This design, their last design completely disregards any attempt at maintaining the massing style of this building, and this opinion was confirmed by the HDLC Commissioner, Ross Carson, architect representing the Bywater, who made the motion for denial. Design makes no attempt to retain the craftsman style. In fact, it's almost exaggerated.
Thirty seconds.
I would like to point out that the architect appears, my interpretation, to be willfully opposing the designs of the ARC. This kind of disruptive behavior is characteristic of the architect. 2021, 3667, 3667 Chappatulas, designing 11-unit apartment building for a 4,400-square-foot lot.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
2021, 905 Ross.
Ms. Johnson, that's your time.
And also, failure to.
Ms. Johnson, that is your time. I'm gonna keep on talking all over you. If you keep on talking at the microphone, we can do this as long as you want to. I'm here as long as you want to be here. It is time for you to step away from the microphone. Your time is over. Thank you.
I oppose this.
Oh, Lord. Ms. Johnson, thank you. Your time is over. I'm asking you to step away, please. I gave you a fair warning and I'm asking you to step away. Thank you. All right. I am getting more of, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I know, Ms. Kern, you have something to add?
Yes, I just wanted to note for this item and the previous item, there were no germane online comments.
Thank you. I know we're all being confronted with an issue that we're trying to work through with HDLC, which is people are requesting FEMA grants in order to raise their house, which is then in technical noncompliance with HDLC guidelines. So we are stuck with two issues. Number one is if people are looking potentially to avoid flooding and are getting federal money to do that, we're telling them no because of HDLC guidelines. And we also are in a housing crunch and we're telling people no to additional housing as well. So I want to try and work through that issue. I will also remind HDLC that I was one of the co-authors on demolition, and I'm tired of hearing this is what it says when I'm the one who passed it. And the reason I passed it is because I was concerned about doubles to dorms and a different monstrosity that happened on Maugh Street. Raising something a couple of feet, I think, is a different kettle of fish, particularly when it's coupled with a federally applied for and received and approved loan from the federal government or grant from the federal government. This is also a homestead exempt property. Owners have agreed to a deed restriction against short-term rentals, and I am concerned about flooding that is happening in neighborhoods and have frequently overruled HDLC when I believe flooding is a concern. So with that, I move for approval. Second by Councilmember Harris. Five yays, no nays. Thank you.
At the top of page 19, Legislative Grouping, VCC Appeal of Deline M. Jacobs, Law Office of Deline M. Jacobs and Associates. Requesting to appeal the Vucare Commission Decision of Denial for the property located at 728 Du Main Street. Motion M24229 by Councilmember King. Motion granting the applicant's request for the property located at 728 Du Main Street, and the decision of the commission is reversed.
Thank you, Mr. Block. You have the floor.
This is an appeal of the Vucare Commission's denial of the retention, excuse me, of an unpermitted and inappropriate roof replacement on a Blue Rated building. Satellite imagery indicates that the current roof in question, located on the rear portion of this building in service cell, was installed between January 2022 and January 2023. The current roof is a roll-down type material, very light in color, something not permitted on a Blue Rated building. Prior to 2018, it appears that this roof had a shingle roof matching the main building. In October 2021, an application was submitted which included a request to retain roof as is until we have time to fix it. Then a separate application was filed to install a new slate roof on the main building. Staff issued the permit to replace the slate roof with a new slate roof that same month. Staff exchanged several emails with the contractor through 2021 and 2022. The contractor stated that the slope of this roof was shallower than previously noted. Staff repeatedly requested that a measurement of the slope be submitted, as well as any other information regarding the proposal to retain the roof on the service cell. No additional information was provided, and the property was eventually sent to adjudication. On September 5th, 2023, a report was submitted to staff and noted as prepared by roofer using a software program which purports to provide accurate aerial roof measurement reports. The report said that the total low pitch area of the roof was zero square feet. Generally, a slope of at least four and a half, excuse me, four over 12 is the minimum recommended for the installation of natural slate. The applicant then submitted an affidavit from the contractor stating that 90% of the roof slope was completely flat. The contract submitted with the affidavit mentions removing existing tile and underlayment, installation of new slate with associated flashing. There is no mention of the installation of new roll-down roofing. Despite the affidavits submitted by the applicant, all other information, including photographs taken from the neighboring property, a report submitted by the applicant in satellite imagery clearly shows this roof has a fair degree of slope typical of a service building. There's a note. The appellant repeatedly states that the VCC used a drone to photograph this portion of the roof. VCC does not and will not use drones for any purpose, including photography of building roofs or courtyards. All photographs are taken from the street, neighboring buildings, or from commercially-available satellite imaging programs. Staff was invited to visit the property on November 22nd, 2023 by the appellant. Upon entering the courtyard and inquiring about access to the roof, staff was informed that a ladder from the courtyard to the roof would be the only way to access the roof. As staff is not equipped with a three-story ladder and would not find this to be safe, staff was not able to inspect the roof. Staff also notes that 728 is one of a row of two townhouses along with the neighboring 730 Du Main. Staff has recent roof plans of the service cell of 730 Du Main, which notes that the roof slope is 20%. This slope would be well within the range of some of the approvable contemporary slate systems, some of which advertise being able to be installed on slopes as shallow as 5%. If the roof was determined to be too shallow for a traditional or contemporary slate roof system, roofing guidelines recommend the use of metal roofing before the installation of flat roof systems. As this is a Blue Rated building, which appears to have had a shingle roof on it as recently as 2017 and has since its construction in 1832, staff recommended denial of the proposed retention of the roll-down roofing with the applicant to install a roofing material consistent with the guidelines. As such, VCC staff respectfully requests that you deny this appeal and require the roof to be replaced with an appropriate material.
Thank you, Mr. Block. J.P., Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you. I think you began answering my question. So it's your position that the VCC has not and will never use drones?
That is correct.
Okay. And that you observed this property from a neighboring property?
Actually, the images that are on this slide, these are all taken from Google Maps and from another program called Pictometry that we use. So these are all satellite images.
Well, I guess my question is, because the reality is, and we all know this, Google Maps has a tremendous amount of lag of real time. Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, typically, when you use Google Maps, there is kind of a use-it-your-own-res aspect of it in that a Google Map image could be current, it could be a week old, it could be months old, depending on how often.
That is correct.
That particular section is used. So what, you're basing part of your denial on Google Maps. What assurance do we have that the images that you have taken are actually verified current images of the roof?
Well, these are the current images, and so this is going back.
From Google Maps?
From Google Maps.
But that's my point is, is that what verification do you have from Google that these are actually the current images?
Well, the applicant themselves has stated that this is the roof. They have never denied that this is the current condition.
Right. And I hear what you're saying, but you're making a lot of assumptions regarding the slope of the roof, the angle of the roof, and you said VCC staff does not go on this roof. So there's no VCC staff who's been on this roof to actually eyeball this roof whatsoever.
That is correct.
So your observations are based off Google Map photos?
Yes, sir, but you can see from this image that this roof has a slope. They are saying that the roof is flat, and it is plain from this image that this roof is not flat.
I hear what you're saying, and I think that when you're talking about whether a roof has slope and what is the degree of that slope, it's hard for me, as someone who's looking at that image, to say if the applicant says the slope is 10, 15% or it's 5% and staff is saying, no, we think it's more 30, 45%. If no one has presented me with a roofer who's walked on that roof to say what the actual slope is, you're all basing your argument off of Google Maps.
And from the affidavit that was provided, a contractor that used. So, yes, sir, I understand that. I did not see it with my own eyes.
And your staff didn't see it with your own eyes.
The staff did not see it with their own eyes, although we tried to, we were invited to, and we were not told until we got there that the only way to get there would be with a three-foot, three-story ladder. So I understand what you're saying. You are correct.
Well, I guess this is a general question for VCC with older buildings. I mean, I have some experience, having grown up in the French Quarter, having been around the French Quarter. Most of these roofs don't. Most of these roofs don't have access without a ladder.
That's fair.
So, I think to kind of estimate you were kind of ambushed with a ladder being necessary, more often than not, you need a ladder. So if someone invites you to see a roof, I would think an assumption would be you show up with the ladder to go on the roof.
Actually, I'm looking at this photograph and there are windows overlooking the roof. And the applicant invited us to come and witness to see the roof, but then she did not invite us into her home, which is fine. I'm not arguing with that. But this roof is visible from within the home.
Okay. Well, the applicant's here and I'm sure she has something she'd like to comment on, Mr. King, at the appropriate time?
Yes. Any other comments from the DAs?
No.
All right. Ms. Darlene Jacobs?
I'm Darlene Jacobs Levy and I own 728 Du Main Street. Excuse me. Whatever he's saying is not true. The Vucaire Commission constantly picks on owners of the building in the French Quarter. Now, I own 15 buildings in the French Quarter. I don't operate with any federal funds and I have constantly been harassed by the Vucaire Commission. For him to stand up here and say he doesn't use drones to spy on people is totally not true. And you know, if he does use a drone without the owner's permission, that's stalking and it violates the statute in Louisiana. Now he's going to say, "Oh, we rely on a Google Map." Well, a Google Map is not as good as my commercial contractor, who gave an affidavit, which each of you all have, that that is a flat roof and it cannot take slates, is what he wants. Now, this particular building that he's talking about, it has a slate roof on all but a small part of the building, which cannot be seen from the public and from the sidewalk, nor can it be seen from the inside of the courtyard. It's a very small area. It can't be seen. So the only way he could see it is to get up there with a drone. He didn't get on my neighbor's property to take a look at it. Rather, he used a drone or he's using Google to say what he wants to say. I don't know, but that is my roof. But even if it is, that roof looks like it's flat. And I would not believe anything that the Vucaire Commission says, anything at all. And I would ask you all to protect the people that own property in the French Quarter. The French Quarter is a gem of the city. I spend millions of dollars on my property in the French Quarter. I own 15 buildings in the French Quarter. And this man and his company constantly harasses me. And frankly, I'm sick of it. And he does use drones flying all around the French Quarter. No question about that.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. That's your time. Ms. Jacobs?
And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
I don't think we have any questions. Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. That's it, Ms. Jacobs. Thank you, Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilman King, for at least trying to protect the rights of the people who own property in the French Quarter and who live there. Thank you very much. And also, Councilman Morell.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. This roofing material, while unpermitted in the VCC, was installed after the aftermath of Hurricane Ida. This was a time-sensitive repair due to active tenants residing at the property. The owner has provided an affidavit signed by the roofing contractor indicating that the roof slope is insufficient to accommodate a slate roof. With this, I move to grant the appeal. Second by Councilmember Morell. Six yays, no nays. The motion is adopted. Thank you.
At the top of page 20, Legislative Grouping, VCC Appeal of Erica Gates Preservation LLC, Requesting to Appeal the Vucaire's Commission Decision of Denial of an Appeal of an Architectural Review Committee Proposal to Retain Various Violations, Including Proposed Retentions of Above-Ground Pool Per Application and Materials Received 11/27/2023 for the Property Located at 1022 Royal Street. Motion M. 24-230 by Councilmember King. Motion Denying the Applicant's Request for Property Located at 1022 Royal Street.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Block.
Thank you. This is an appeal of the Vucaire Commission denial of a proposal to retain an unpermitted and inappropriate above-ground swimming pool. This installation was completed without benefit of any review or permits from the Building Department or Zoning Administration. An above-ground swimming pool was installed without any permits between the main and rear building. This pool was built in 2019. And the applicant states that the reason for the above-ground installation is because the owners do not want to disrupt the soil under the courtyard. The applicant also states that this installation does not utilize any permanent filtering equipment. Without mechanical filtering, it is possible that such an open water feature such as this could create a public health nuisance. It is unclear what type of draining is provided, as this has never been reviewed by the Plumbing Division. Draining of this pool at grade could create serious localized flooding issues that could negatively affect adjacent buildings and the street. The VCC guidelines for pools state that, quote, "The VCC requires a pool or hot tub to be an in-ground installation with the curb flushed with the adjacent ground level," end quote. And, quote, "The VCC does not allow installing an above-ground pool or hot tub with the exception of a readily movable plastic kiddie pool," end quote. This pool is clearly not in compliance with the VCC guidelines and potentially is in deviation of provisions of the Building Code and Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. VCC staff confirmed with safety and permits that this type of pool installation would also require review and permitting from that department, but no application was ever filed for the installation of this pool. As this installation does not comply with VCC design guidelines and has never been reviewed or approved by any other department, VCC respectfully requests denial of this appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Block. Mr. Will Griffin?
Yes, Will Griffin, on behalf of the Reverend Claudia Williams, the owner of the property. First, I'd like to thank the council for their time in hearing this appeal. One of the issues I would like to ask that all council members keep in mind for the pool, or there was two items. One is Reverend Williams has strong and deep religious convictions that affect her ability to disturb the soil by installing an in-ground pool. The second is the pool provides health benefits for physical therapy for certain ailments that she has. We'd like that you consider this in these matters in determining whether you will allow this exception for the above-ground pool. Another issue I'd like to point out is Reverend Williams is willing to work with the VCC on recommendations to come in compliance, to keep the pool as well. And in the event the council denies the appeal, I would just like to point out that Reverend Williams has owned this property for 30 years. To remove this pool is a financial hardship. We would ask that there would be time granted for her, in that situation, to obtain a loan and address this financial hardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Next, Ms. Angie Bolan?
Good afternoon. My name is Angie Bolan. I live at 528 Governor Nichols, which is in the French Quarter. I am here representing the Vucaire property owners, residents, and associates, also known as the VCPOR, on which I serve as a board member. VCPOR requests that you uphold the Vucaire Commission in the matter of 1022 Royal Street and deny the application for appeal. As Mr. Block has pointed out, the VCC guidelines are very clear with regard to pools and that they must be in-ground installation. And the only ones that can be anything other than in-ground installation, such as an above-ground pool, must be readily removable. VCPOR also supports the Vucaire Commission and its concerns about other inappropriate and unapproved and disallowed alterations to this property, including architecturally inappropriate doors such as K and K-style gutters. Again, please deny the appeal. The world-famous French Quarter is of immeasurable importance to New Orleans. When your predecessors on the City Council and my predecessors at VCPOR agreed long ago that empowering the Vucaire Commission to protect the architecture of the Quarter was important for the future of the city, detailed regulations like this were very much at the forefront of what it meant to protect the French Quarter's architectural significance. It is the details that matter and it is the details that result in authenticity. And it is that authenticity that differentiates the French Quarter from a Disney-like imitation, making our beloved Quarter a unique, highly desirable place to live, work, and visit. And yes, these important details include doors, gutters, and even courtyards with swimming pools. We respectfully request that you uphold the Vucaire Commission and deny the appeal for 1022 Royal Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Erica Gates?
Good afternoon, Erica Gates, Gates Preservation. Though this pool does not meet VCC guidelines, it is designed to have a very light touch to the historic courtyard and be easily reversible in the future. Unlike other pools being approved in the French Quarter, which do meet the guidelines and require significant disruption of the historic fabric in order to do so, appear unintrusive. Rather, it was designed to respect what lies beneath it. This pool occupies a private courtyard. It is not visible to the public right of way or neighboring properties. It also offers critically needed therapeutic relief to the aging homeowners. This mentally invasive approach is an appropriate interpretation of the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and the preferred approach by many historic preservation institutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gates? Ms. Claudia Williams? Claudia Williams present? Mr. Bruce Riley? Is this Claudia Williams?
Yeah.
One second, Mr. Riley. I'm going to let Ms. Williams go first.
Good afternoon and thank you for giving me this opportunity. I would just like to make a few comments about the pool. For one thing, of course, it has a working, permanent mechanical filter. To say otherwise would be ridiculous. We don't want to be sitting in a swamp. It is very clean water. It is beautiful. We have tourists that come through our home. The tourists stop and look at the pool. It's usually a nighttime tour. They usually stop and look and say, "This is exactly the kind of experience I was hoping to have in New Orleans because this is the French Quarter. Real people live here and this pool is beautiful, without taking too much space, without being oppressive or invasive. In further addition, it drains just fine. It goes right through the gutters. Nobody is bothered when it's drained. We've had no problems from anyone since we've had it and it works beautifully. It also is very important to the community. We have a number of people who stop by on a regular basis to use it. I am a reverend and spiritual leader in the area and I try to help the community in any way I can. I know Councilman King has been deluged with emails about this, starting yesterday. I suspect he'll get more. But I'd just like you to take into consideration, it is definitely filtered, is definitely drainable with no one being bothered by it. They don't even know. It drains slowly. And that is what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riley?
Councilman King, members of the committee, my name is Bruce Riley. I am a proud homeowner in the French Quarter myself and have not yet put in an application to build my pool, which is actually on my personal agenda. I've had to weigh out the restrictions and think that through. And, you know, I knew what I was getting into when I moved into the French Quarter. I knew it's a special place that predates me and it's going to postdate me. So I have a curator obligation to this neighborhood as well. And I really appreciate you all taking the time on this seemingly trivial, yet important subject for something so important. And I would really appreciate it if you would take similar amount of time and care for something that's even more important and less trivial, which would be the situation in Gaza and the occupation and talking about how we cheat our students, talking about protest and how we deploy police and how we deploy security and what we think is reasonable in our community when people are peaceful protesting. So I encourage you to listen to the people of the community and have a very open, powerful hearing on what it is we want to do about this issue. Thank you.
I do have a quick question, Mr. Block. If the owner is saying that this isn't viewable from the street, how was VCC aware that the pool was there?
I'm not exactly sure how we became aware of this one, but I do want to reiterate that the VCC jurisdiction extends to courtyards. And so sometimes we are notified of situations by neighbors. But I'm not sure exactly how we knew about this one.
Fair enough. Mr. Riley?
Just on that topic, I forgot to mention, you know, in my courtyard, I see drones all the time. There's a lot of drones. And I really always thought that they were the Vucaire's drones. So I know that people have said there's drones or there's no drones. There's drones in the French Quarter and they hover and they look for a while. And I don't think they're just checking me out because I'm handsome. I think they're going on and checking out what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. I will move to uphold VCC's denial. However, I do ask that you give the applicant time to get her finances together so she's able to make the appropriate removal of the pool.
Would you be willing to specify a particular time? I want to make sure that we're in compliance with the council's wishes.
The attorney wants to come back up? Mr. Griffin?
Thank you. Thank you for that opportunity. One thing I would like to say, there are a number of issues that are involved with this. So we would like to ask for three years for all of them?
I don't know, three... That's a long time. Can we... I'll tell you what. I don't want to have this open conversation, this open debate here. I don't think three years is enough. I mean, it's reasonable. That's a bit long. How about you send an email with some other numbers and give CC Mr. Block on it? We can go from there? All right? All right, thank you.
I appreciate that.
No problem. So I'm making a motion to adopt. Second by Councilmember Harris. Five yays, no nays. The motion is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the top of page 36, we have ordinance calendar 34,669 by councilmembers Jeruso and Thomas by request and ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into an amendment number one to a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the Sewer and Water Board of New Orleans to extend the term through January 1st, 2026, and to increase funding by $21 million of the city bond funds for the public purpose of improving and maintaining resiliency and reliability of power generated at the Carrollton Power Plant for the benefit of the water sewer and drainage infrastructure for the City of New Orleans and in turn, the health, welfare, and safety of citizens in the City of New Orleans as more fully detailed in amendment number one to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement as Exhibit 8 and otherwise in proprietary respects thereto.
Members, this is simply the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement to allocate $21 million to Sewer and Water Board needs for the power substation. We've had all of these discussions. This simply memorializes Cooperative Endeavor Agreement. I want to thank Councilmember Thomas for working on this as well. Any questions? Councilmember Green?
Before we vote, I just want to have the public to recognize the commitment of the City Council relative to this structure. I use the word "increase." This is increased funding for something which is very, very important to all of the citizens of the city. Despite the fact the Sewer and Water Board is governed by state law and despite the fact that there are tremendous limitations relative to what this council can do in terms of certain governance issues, this council is stepping forward with a significant financial investment in something that is so important to all of our citizens. We weren't able to be participants in the task force... We weren't able to be participants in the task force, for whatever reason was the case at the time, but we have committed to show our commitment to tasking the creation and the construction of this, which is long overdue, but is being done by this council with monies that certainly could be used for other purposes. It shows our commitment to building the Sewer and Water Board's infrastructure relative to keeping our citizens safer. And I want to emphasize the word "increase." We have a significant investment in this because we are doing the right thing. And I hope that we'll be able to work with the governor and the legislature more closely in the future when there's a need to analyze what's needed at the Sewer and Water Board. Thank you.
Thank you. I've moved. Second by Councilmember Green. Seven years, no names. Thank you.
At the top of page 21, legislative group in zoning docket 1524, Timothy Norton, this has been withdrawn along with motion M24, 234, per applicant's request. At the top of page 22, we have zoning docket 1924, Najah INC., this has been deferred to 66. This zoning docket is being deferred past deadline and will not appear on any subsequent agendas.
Madam Clerk, we have some online comments for this. Okay. Sorry, hold on one second. This is... First comment is from Henry King.
Yeah, I'm gonna read the online comments.
The first one is from Henry King. "Before you decide to vote on the proposal, Google the vacancy rate in the city of New Orleans..." Sorry. "You would be shocked at the amount of surplus housing in the city. People are not moving to New Orleans. What we have is apartment complexes competing for a small base of people. Just look around. To give you an example of forces at play, Xavier and the other universities are building dormitories, which is increasing the vacancy rate in the city of New Orleans. When you build an apartment complex farther away from the city and know that 100% of the residents are black and brown, this is another form of redlining, displacing individuals at a greater distance from the city. We have been neglected by the very individuals that are supposed to represent what is best for the community. Spot zoning hurts everyone. Apartment complexes built with federal grant provide wealth for whoever wrote the grant, the bank that owns the property, clear investment off the books. Don't destroy comprehensive plans. So some fat cat with a proxy bamboozle this council with smoke and mirrors for personal gains. And please give the residents that area the quality of life that other residents of the city enjoy." Next comment is from Alva Cino. "I oppose the rezoning of Deer Park area." Ronald Roseman comments, "I've lived on West Hardy Street for the past 24 years. I'm a senior citizen. I, as well as my neighbors, enjoy our morning walks in the trail from Wright Road to Lake Forest to the library on Reed Boulevard. With rezoning of this area would definitely impact our way of life. I humbly request that the city council deny rezoning of the area of land on Lake Forest and Deer Park for a low-income, multi-tier residential housing project. My home is on the canal with my backyard directly facing this land. Rezoning of this area from commercial to residential so that a developer with no ties to this community in New Orleans East could build low-income, multi-tier, one-to-four stories housing projects is unacceptable to my community and me. Rezoning of this area for a housing project would devalue the real estate in the area, bring more people in an area with limited transportation, grocery stores, and schools, as well as renters less likely able to maintain the property and surroundings. There would be increased foot traffic into the connecting neighborhoods to go to the nearest store, Walmart, or Brothers, possibly more abandoned vehicles on our streets for lack of resources, and potential increase in crime in an area already plagued with limited police resources, making it unsafe for our morning walks. I implore the council to keep this area for commercial use and bring true economic development back to New Orleans East. We do not need another housing project that's not fully protected by all the HUD guidelines. New Orleans East is not a city dump. Just vote "no" to rezoning the tract of land at Lake Forest and Deer Park." The next comment, the last comment for this item is from Kimberly Burke, opposing docket 1924 and 2024. "I'm a resident of Lake Forest Estates. I'm opposing the rezoning consideration as this project will not bring the economic growth that is desperately needed to revitalize New Orleans East. The past 20 years, New Orleans East has been neglected, leading to the negative perception that the East is nothing more than a crime-infested war zone that is only worthy of Dollar Generals, Family Dollars, Dollar Trees, and investors who want to redevelop the community with low-income housing projects. That does not improve the community, but rather proliferates the demise of a community that is already being neglected by the city of New Orleans, lacking sufficient resources and businesses. New Orleans East needs investors who truly care about the revitalization of our community, bringing into the area commerce and businesses that generate wealth to the community. Low-income houses will not bring in tax-paying citizens to New Orleans East, but rather just add on to the plethora of apartment complexes that already houses an exceedingly large population of low-income residents. Thus, Deer Park should not be rezoned to residential as it is prime location for a business to provide jobs to many low-income citizens who already reside in New Orleans East so that they are no longer in need of low-income homes. Furthermore, as a homeowner who has chosen to invest in New Orleans East and returning to my home after Hurricane Katrina, I'm asking that city council considers the negative impacts that these projects will have on the property values of lifelong citizens of New Orleans East, as well as the safety of the community. This project would greatly impact the quality of life, not only for the homeowners of the Lake Forest Estates, but also the many residents of nearby subdivisions who come to Lake Forest Boulevard, which is perpendicular to Deer Park Street, to walk on the walking trail and ride bikes in the bike lanes without being afraid. As a resident of Lake Forest Estates, it baffles me that with all of the parcels of land already zoned for this type of project, not only in the East but throughout the city, that a person who remains nameless and faceless, who chooses to request for rezoning land that would totally change the lives of homeowners for profit. Again, New Orleans East is more than the negative perception that it has been bestowed upon it, and I'm asking the city council to oppose this request for rezoning the Deer Park for both zoning docket 1924 and 2024. And that's it for this item."
I just received the cards a minute ago. So when we thought there weren't any cards, someone was holding them. So I just got them. Our first speaker is Mr. Brett Gogies. Brett?
Good afternoon. I know a lot of you guys are in the city council hall, but not the time for that. The reason why I'm here is because of the development that they're trying to put in Deer Park subdivision. We've been going through this for months now, feel like a year. Every time they have a meeting, it's called off. The very first meeting I went to was over the river. They say that they were gonna make this a single-family neighborhood. That was the first thing. Came back later, "We're gonna change it, we're gonna make it multifamily." The people who live back there don't even want the multifamily. It's so compact back there, it's like sticking sardines, more sardines in the same can, they can't fit anymore. We just don't want it in a neighborhood. Nothing has changed. The lot sizes are the same size. You're talking about a 200-foot front lot, all the depth are 106 feet deep. I don't know how many units they're gonna try to squeeze in there. But they don't have any plans for any parking. An average family today has two cars. You do the math and see what that's gonna look like back there. Plus, the added traffic. We don't have enough police protection back there, as it is, for New Orleans East. At one time, when you told people you lived in New Orleans East, man, you were talking about high cotton. You live somewhere. Now you tell somebody who live in New Orleans East, the response is, "Where you live?" Right now, you go to the gas station, your head is on a swivel, getting gas. And I'm not making that up, because my head is on a swivel. I get gas, and my head's on a swivel. And with more people coming in the neighborhood with less protection, it's gonna get worse before it get better. We need development, but not that kind of development. We need businesses. All you have out there is Walmart. That's it. Or mail shops, or hair salon. We need businesses, we don't want it... The people here, we still haven't changed. We don't want it.
Thank you, Mr. Gogies, that's your time. But before I get to the next speaker, I know all of us saw the last couple of press conferences that the police chief did, as well as the one that the interim police chief, Michelle Woodford, had when the Metropolitan Crime Commission supported New Orleans East having some of the lowest violent crime statistics in the city right now. That trend has continued. And before the other speakers, I don't know, and I'm compelled to say this because of some of the politics of this stuff. 7,000 acres of developable business park, 27 subdivisions of the highest African-American earners, nine and a half miles of waterway, five of those nine and a half miles beachfront, second-largest wildlife refuge in North America, 340 different bird species, railway and interstate from Jacksonville to Santa Monica. So all I know is about the assets of the beauty of where I come from and where my family owns property. Also, the issuance of several new permits. Actually, on average, as many new permits for new businesses being issued, three of the most successful new restaurants actually, if you look at the Ian McNulty and the coverage, are actually in New Orleans East. So I understand some of the history of the misgivings, but some of the good things, you can't build on a negative. We also have a lot of good things that are happening in the East. Next speaker is Sylvia Rushing. If Ms. Rushing isn't here, Michael Duce. Oh, okay, Ms. Rushing.
Good afternoon. I would like to speak on the behalf of a resident of New Orleans East who's been living out there since 1978 and in the Lake Forest Estates subdivision for over 30 years. As a homeowner in that subdivision, my husband and I have raised our family there. We want to retain our property values. We also own property at Deer Park condominiums, office condominiums, and we would like to retain the character of that as for commercial use. There are some multifamily townhouses on Deer Park, and there's one way in and one way out. There's no land for adequate parking. And I also want to reiterate, as the previous speakers have said, about lack of grocery stores and shopping opportunities for additional residents. I also would like to say, if the people want to build, there's already zoned, in vacant land, that is zoned for multifamily housing in the East that they can build on that as opposed to changing the current zone.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rushing. Mr. Michael Duce? Okay, thank you, Mr. Duce. Ms. Lorraine Denvo?
Lorraine Denvo, Lake Forest Estates subdivision. I would like to say all the same things that you have already expressed. We appreciate that we don't have as much crime as maybe the rest of the city, and we would like to keep it that way. And putting this project in New Orleans East, in Deer Park, would not help to keep it that way. In fact, it would turn around to be more crime. I'm here to oppose this project because we need more businesses in New Orleans East. We have only one grocery store, we have amenities, no amenities for people out there to do other things, shopping. When I first moved out there, we had plenty shopping, we had the Plaza. And now we have to go to Slidell, we have to go to Mattery, we have to go to Shell Matt, and they're getting our dollars. So let's put something in Deer Park that can bring money into the city commercially. And we don't need any more residents. Of course, you've heard all of the reasons about Deer Park why we shouldn't have that as residence, and I stand behind those firmly. I want to also say that, again, we do have the walkways that there would bring more trash. As we turn off of Reed onto Lake Forest, we see people throwing trash out of the windows of their cars. And we have people in our subdivision who actually walks on the walkway and pick up trash that people just drop, okay? If you pack all of these low-income and multifamily income people out there, they're gonna be dropping more trash. We have nobody to pick them up, and we're not picking up the trash. So it's gonna become a dumping ground. We ask that you not allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Denvo. EC Coffee?
Good afternoon, I'm EC Coffee, and I'm opposed to the zoning from business to multifresidential. I think that the base premise of this project is faulty in that it was stated in the first meeting that low-income people need an opportunity to live in nicer places. With this project considering both properties, it's not enough to provide adequate housing to make a difference in income, people living in a better place. There are properties in New Orleans East that have been vacant since Katrina that would be ideal for building multifamily housing. Homeownership is the development and the basis of moving up the economic ladder. So to build places where people rent is not gonna build the economic status in New Orleans East. Build places that people can own and trade in and sell that equity at a later time will help develop business opportunities in New Orleans East. It'll also build a basis for banks to participate in making deals with people who own property, who have equity in property, that they can use that to start a business. So therefore, the premise of thinking that building multifamily housing in this area is gonna be an economic boom to New Orleans East is unfounded. The beneficiary of this project would be this landowner who owns a lot back there, who cannot build any more lot, build any more housings because the rest of the lot that he has and the other adjacent lot are zoned for business. Therefore, the only person that could benefit from that would be if that landowner can now take that property that is owned business and build these four plex to match the ones he's already got.
Thank you, Mr. Coffee.
This is not a good deal for New Orleans East for economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Coffee. Ronald Wright? Ronald Wright? I'm gonna call the names of the people who've turned in cards. There are two different sections for this. There's eight, and then there's nine. If you've turned in a card, I'll read the card as one of the items. Some have asked to speak on both. Mr. Ronald Wright?
Good afternoon. My name is Ronald Wright. My address is 1102 South Hardy Street, New Orleans East. It's bordered by Lake Forest Boulevard, Wright Road I-10, and the I-10 service road. I built my home after moving from Jefferson in 1984 because New Orleans East was the place to live. After Katrina, I bought and renovated homes there in my community in effort to rebuild the community. My children and most of their friends grew up in East. Today, most of them were professionals, doctors, lawyers, engineers, and relatives no longer live in New Orleans East. Recent articles and studies show flight from New Orleans in general, and specifically from New Orleans East, moving east and west to St. Tammany and Jefferson Parishes. Ms. Burbank lives in Kendall Estates. She's a proud homeowner. She's a proud citizen. She recently came to my home to borrow a hedge trimmer to trim the hedges along Bullitt Avenue because she felt they had been neglected. She did this at the cost to herself. Excuse me. I believe that the rezoning proposal for Deer Park and architectural designs would attract the type of people new neighbors needed for our community. New Orleans East needs new professional income to help build its economy. I request your vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Carlos Sahara? Carlos Tejada.
Good evening. My name is Carlos Tejada, and I am a designer working for Thomas Smith Engineering, and we are working to try to develop the project for Palais development. The, I am in favor, and I just want to explain that all the concerns that all the people has, we have to take that in consideration for the development of the project. We understand your needs, and we understand your worries, and I believe this project will be able to provide an opportunity for developing the community. As they expressed before, the, most people don't have a good will or concept of living in New Orleans East, and our purpose is to change that. We want to make a difference, and I believe we can do it with this project. So, I am in favor.
The next speaker is Mr. Henry King.
My name is Henry King. I'm a resident of New Orleans East. I'd like to tell all the council members, on your way out of the city, driving east, let's slow down a little bit, and take a look. Look to your left and look to your right, and see the number of apartment complexes. Let's exit off the interstate and see all the vacancy signs that are out there. There are a lot of affordable housing. Also, take a look at the, soon you cross the high-rise, they have lots, not three or four lots, vacant lots, already zoned for residential construction or that type of construction. If they want to enhance the area, build there. Don't spotzone New Orleans East by changing the zoning to accommodate these guys.
Next, Kimberly Burbank.
Good afternoon, I'm Kimberly Burbank. Thank you for your time. I am the principal of Palais development. I live in McKendall Estates and have since 2010. I have lived in New Orleans East two blocks from Deer Park Boulevard since I was 10 years old. My first job was at the Audemars D'Urbel Cross, which we have the Audemars Nature Center across from there. My fitness center is on Lake Forest Boulevard. As a developer, not just a housing developer, I'm a community developer. I have served in the United States Peace Corps. I have won an honorable Economic Development, an International Economic Development Council award for data research and policy analysis for the Bloomington Normal Economic Development Council. I have worked for a previous bank. We had a Needs to Improve Community Reinvestment Act score of the lowest, Needs to Improve. In three years, I raised the state of Louisiana score to outstanding. Community Reinvestment Act is based on lending investments as services. As a community developer, I own a residential building company. I have continually partnered for, since 2008, with several different contractors, and as you begin to work in the field of development, they begin to ask you for more work. And as you begin to work, you begin to realize that you can take on more challenges. I see my community in New Orleans East as a place for growth. I recognize and appreciate the work of Councilmember Leslie Harris, and what she has done around housing affordability. I recognize and also appreciate what the City Council has done around creating Housing Affordability Fund. I also appreciate the City Council approving after done thorough research and working on the future land use map amendments that have addressed several different parcels across the city, which are vacant and underutilized. It's interesting, I have had the ability and been blessed to be able to see parcels that are prime areas for redevelopment. Because of this open forum, I have now basically publicly shared and shown to other developers how great of a site this is. And so, I would like the ability to be able to develop it, and I need your support to change that zoning to mixed use. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Charles Nicholson.
Good afternoon. Charles Nicholson, speaking on behalf of the Greater New Orleans Housing Alliance and Housing NOLA. We ask that the council reverses to the planning commission's denial and allow for Deer Park Development to move forward. Mixed use allows private sector to consider new ideas within the city's zoning ordinance. The location sits in an area with an abundance of amenities, putting people close to where they work and live. Along with economic development, New Orleans East can and should plan and build to expand on residential development because in order to put people first, we must put housing first. People should be encouraged to consider residing in New Orleans East by way of a higher standard of living, and the Deer Park Development will do just that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Yolanda White.
Hi. I'm here, proud owner, resident of New Orleans East. I live in Lake Forest Estate, and I'm just going to say to the councilmen, councilpersons, y'all have eyes to see, y'all know exactly what's going on. Y'all know there's no more room for multi-units in New Orleans East. We don't have to get up, we shouldn't have to come here and beg. If y'all doing y'all job, y'all can see that. How is that going to help New Orleans East to bring a multi-unit to Deer Park or anywhere in that area? With all the lots that is already zoned for multi-units, why Deer Park? It's very compact in Deer Park already. Now, I want to say this. As passionate as y'all are about y'all community and the neighborhoods that y'all live in, I want to stay that passion because I'm very proud, and I can stand here proud. I'm a Tulane graduate, a Southern graduate. I am very proud to say I had an opportunity to live anywhere in the United States that I want to live. I have traveled around the world three times. So, let me say this, it's not like I'm forced to stay in New Orleans East. It's by choice. I love that community. I am proud of my community, and I'm very passionate about my community. So, this, putting another unit, we don't need another multi anything other than some business. Now, y'all want to do some business, bring some business there, that's fine, but this multi, every time you turn around, y'all dumping in New Orleans East. It is very unfair.
Thank you, Ms. White. Councilmember Morrell for comment.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond, I appreciate your passion on this issue, but if this matter being scheduled is part of the process, and I feel like something that's kind of being missed in the conversation is, because it got to this point, doesn't mean the council brought it to this point. When an item goes in front of the respective agencies, they appeal to the council, and then we schedule it, and then we hear it. And we hear your passion, but when your passion is directed like, we did this to you that it's here today, we, that's not the way the process works. We're here to hear what you're saying, and we have been in contact, I've been in contact with my friends and relatives in Deer Park, your council member has been on top of this issue, but the fact that it's scheduled here today is the process. It's not because council members pushed it up to this point. The developer who's gone through the process came to this last part, which is this final appeal. So, we are taking in what you're saying, we have heard it both today and well before today, but I just want to be very clear that the process is neutral. The only time the council acts is on this vote. So, by far, judge us on our vote, but don't judge us the fact that a developer made an appeal to the council, because we don't control that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to deal with all of that in my closing comments, because there are a lot of things, there's a lot of subterfuge here, there's a lot of stuff who stirred up some things, there's been some misrepresentation even, and I understand that game. I ain't never been afraid to play at any level you want, but there's been a whole lot of things here that have been real disingenuous on a lot of different sides, where people have tried to allude to something or say something that really isn't the case. So, we'll deal with that in closing comments. Kevin Barnes. Who lives on top of Tulis Street.
Hi. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity. I am Kevin Barnes. I'm an architect at Trap &amp; Pure Architects. Trap &amp; Pure Architects is at 850 Shop Tulis. I am not. I would like to say that I am in support of the project. I have recently begun working with Palais Development to work on site planning for the project. When Ms. Burbank came to us and told us about the project, we were excited. Her vision was to create a welcoming and village-like, walkable neighborhood that takes advantage of the neighboring amenities. Let's see, we think that her feelings on the scale and the, the scale of the buildings should be mixed, maximize the outdoor space as a shared amenity. She also has what she likes to call a hub house, that I think is not necessarily commercial, but would be, would be pulled towards Deer Park. It would help provide a in-between from the residential to the commercial. Based on the feedback from the neighboring property owners and the planning, I feel like she has come to a different, she has been willing to adjust her approach to the The site is currently underdeveloped, in my opinion. It's unlikely to be developed as, into a commercial property. The property's too far and too remote from highly-traffic commercial corridors. It deadens into a non-residential or a non-commercial use, and it has limited visibility from the commercial avenues. This is actually somewhat, is actually supported inside of the city planning staff report as well.
Thank you. Thomas Smith, 3157 Gentilly.
Hello, my name is Thomas Smith. I'm a engineer, and I chose to follow the structural path of engineering because I loved it and saw so much potential. And I allied myself with Carlos Tejeda, an architect and designer, and we worked together on projects. Now, our goal is quality. We do the best quality work at a reasonable price. Now, I've heard comments by others that say, oh, we don't need living space. We got too much. But that's where business comes from, living space. If you have people, business will come. And New Orleans East has a lack of people. If there were people there, you'd have plenty of business.
Thank you.
I don't want to make a lot of controversy with our quality work and our knowledge. We can do wonders. And business will come where people are. I always find that true. I'm from many big cities. I lived in Miami, New York, I was born in Chicago. I've seen a lot. Also, I'm older, so I acquired a lot of knowledge.
Thank you.
And we stress quality.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. That's your time. Thank you very much.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
For having me speak before this eloquent group.
Thank you very much, young man.
I am impressed with the council.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Those are the speakers for eight. We have the same people who want to speak on number nine. If you guys want to speak on nine, or you want your comments to apply to nine. You filled out one card, Ms. Burbank. You want to, you want to... Ms. Burbank, you want to speak on number nine? Pardon me? Yeah, 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 you'd like to put another nail in it, absolutely, come on.
Councilmember, let me read it into record.
Yes.
Zoning Docket 2024, Bank Plus. This zoning docket is being deferred past deadline, therefore it will not appear on any subsequent agendas in the matter dies.
Ms. Burbank.
Thank you. There's a conversation around, do 5700 and 5775 Deer Park have community support? I hope you can hear me. Yes, the zoning from commercial to mixed-use development was supported by the City Planning Commission unanimously. It did pass. It passed under PD... It did. Maybe I may form you or something.
Finish your comments.
So, it has passed under PD 909, which is under the Future Land Use Map Amendment Request for the City of New Orleans. And what I would like to share...
You do know that's kind of intellectually dishonest, because there's what they recommend in terms of land use, and then there's the actual hearing that goes before the city council, that's before the city planning, that's a different thing.
What I meant is that it has received support from the City Planning Commission. We're saying the same thing.
But the difference is, hold on a second, hold on a second. What the difference is, and what the planners may want to recommend in terms of overall city land use in the CZO, but when it went before the City Planning Commission, the City Planning Commission voted denial.
Sir, I'm sorry, Councilmember Thomas, I'm now...
Am I wrong in my statement?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm now referencing this, I'm referencing something that's coming along in the future. I'm talking about the future land...
But hold on a second, guys. So, you're referencing something that isn't even here yet.
What I'm saying to you, thank you, you're right. What I'm saying is this, let me speak to the support, so let me speak to where we are today. Where we are today is that there is support from organizations. What I have done is, I have sought, and I'll share this, thank you, you wanted to talk about what is here today, so let me say this. My father and I are very close, we get along very well, but I am not able to change my father's mind once his mind is made up. There has been several different communications that have occurred and presentations that have been made to the Eastern New Orleans Neighborhood Action Commission and other organizations. To gain support, we did reach out to the Ache Cultural Arts Center, as well as the Music and Cultural Coalition of New Orleans. And the reason for this was to look at this from a citywide perspective and to begin...
But we're not dealing with the city, we dealing with this neighborhood.
Well, sir, what I'm speaking to, thank you, and what I'm speaking to is a resident retention and a resident attraction strategy, and I would like to be a part of that resident retention and attraction strategy for where I do live, which is at, which is in McKendall Estates.
Thank you, Ms. Burbank.
And also for New Orleans East.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this issue? Again, Mr. King. Two minutes, please.
Yes, two minutes. As the council know, and you can take it for what it's worth, since 2017, over 5% of the population of New Orleans has decreased, decreased. People are leaving the city. People are leaving the state of Louisiana. Now, look at the census.
Fair.
It's right there in black and white. As far as the zoning issue, it... As far as the zoning issue, once you spot zone, change the zone and spot zone in an area, you might as well say, you just open up Pandora's butt. Box, you can spot zone anywhere. We need to stop this right now. Go by what was, what it is, is zone that's commercial, let it stay commercial.
Thank you.
Ecology, we got a bird sanctuary back there. Let's keep it like that. We don't need this.
Thank you, Mr. King. Unless there are any more comments, let's put this to rest. Yeah, let's put this to rest. Yes. Yeah. You'd only filled out one card there with two. Come on, come on. Yeah, no, 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 no. Come on, jump back in the water.
Thank you. Over the last few months, actually a few weeks, I've traveled the entire Panhandle and down to the Key West Floridas, stopping in every major city. The one thing I noticed was that in those major cities where you had millionaires, middle income, and low-class people, they all live together in close-knit communities. They found a way to, they found a way to live together. Ms. Burbank had done developments in Orleans Parish, Jefferson Parish, including English Turn. Those were some of her names.
Sir, you can talk towards the mic, because we can't hear you up here.
Including English Turn.
Thank you.
Okay, so those people in those areas found a way to live together at every economic level.
Thank you.
And I think one of the reasons why we're losing our young people, especially professionals like my son and his cousins, is because we don't accept these people into our communities.
Thank you. That's your two minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate, first of all, I appreciate, I appreciate all of the comments around this issue. I appreciate the work that city planning has done. I appreciate the advocates for housing. I want to thank my colleagues who have dealt with this particular issue. Let me say this about, you know, everyone knows, some people always kid me about, I'm always talking about the Ninth Ward, even though I lived and represented other places. That's where I come from. Born and raised in the Lower Ninth Ward. Everything my family owns is in New Orleans East. As someone who lived in probably a room, growing up, and a kid, as part of a triplex, right? And that room belonged to my parents. I understand the need for housing. As someone who lived in a shelter after Hurricane Betsy, because we didn't have a place to live until we moved in with my aunt, who had 11 kids, right? I understand the need for housing. But let me say this to folk who want to make this housing, this is for a lot of the advocates. And as someone who chaired housing years ago, no one's a greater advocate for affordable housing. In 1960s, this city had a population of 600,000 people. They lived in the center of the city. They lived in Central City. They lived in Gentilly. They lived in the Quarter. They lived in those surrounding communities, 600-plus thousand of them. New Orleans East was wasteland, swamp, not developed. But listen to this real close. For everyone who is a housing advocate to feel like if we're not for subsidized housing or affordable housing, those people who are family members who grew up in the inner city, they got pushed out, gentrified. Why can't they go back to that part of the community? You know why they can't go back to that part of the community? Because they can't afford to live there anymore. So anyone who believes that the solution is subsidized housing, or pushing everybody that the city doesn't want to the east, that ain't the solution. So you can shine your halo if you want, but if there was really justice, our family members ought to be able to live in Central City like they used to. They ought to be able to live off Coranda Lech Street like they used to. They ought to be able to live in the lower parts of Lakeview like they used to. And don't have me mention what happened in the '30s, when politicians took money from Gentilly and Seven Ward Black Neighborhoods. And I'm not even going to use the language that they used publicly when they took that money to create the most expensive neighborhoods in this community. They said those such-and-such don't need no drainage and flood protection. That's on the record in the Amistad Research Center. So everyone who want to shine their halo about who for what, if you ain't lived it, you can't tell us about it, right? And you can play your political games like some folk would do with this. This ain't about that for me. Because if there was justice in housing, there'd be affordable housing in Lakeview. If there was justice in affordable housing, it would be on St. Charles Avenue. If there was justice in affordable housing, it would be in Carrollton. If there was justice in affordable housing, it would be in Algiers and the Quarter. It wouldn't just be pushing it in our community that has the highest concentration of African-American, African-American homeowners who pay more in the ad valorem taxes than many of those other communities combined. But this also showed me something else. As much as people know that about me, and as much as I've said I would allow this to go through the process, Ms. Denvoe, it shows how much people distrust our politicians. People were actually afraid that, and then politicians say one thing and do something else? Oh, my goodness, right? And it showed just how far away in the trust level we are from people, even after you tell them how they feel. If we're going to fix this community, that's got to be repaired. If we're going to heal this community, it's only going to be done with trust. And right now, we don't have trust. And the last thing I'm going to say, and I didn't want to say this, the best developers are the ones who gain the community trust and the community's support, so that if they lose one time, they got a chance to win 10 other times. But when you walk into something and you create subterfuge, right? And you try to create an environment that's misrepresented of what the realities are or disparages to people just because they may not be against something, that doesn't endear you to the system, and it doesn't give you an opportunity to be what you want to be, which is successful in your business. Let's stop playing these games in this town, right? Let's be upfront and honest with each other, and let's at least develop some relationships so the children in this community could have more trust than we have with each other. And with that, this deferred past the deadline, which means this item is D E A D, dead. Madam Clerk, next item. We have some online comments?
We have three that were in opposition.
And then next item on the agenda.
First one, yeah, they're all in opposition.
Pardon me? All three support the outcome, so we don't need to read them. This item's dead. Next item on the agenda.
Councilmembers, we need to go back to page 20. Item number six, motion 24230 to reconsider the vote. Councilmember, please. Sure, go back to it.
Same about no politics, man.
All right. We need to reconsider motion M24-230, Agenda Item Six. That motion says that the full removal shall be completed within 120 days to allow for additional conversation about economic hardship and the time necessary to achieve removal. I want to make a motion to amend motion M230 to add the following language at the end of the first paragraph. The 120-day deadline may be extended by the Vucore Commission to the extent reasonably necessary to provide the proper, the property owner an opportunity to complete removal. So at this time, I want to vote on the amendment.
We have to vote to reconsider first.
Okay, all right. Let's vote to reconsider. Second by Councilmember Green. One more, five yays, no nays. All right, now we're going to vote.
To amend.
To amend. Second by Councilmember Harris. All right, five yays, no nays.
And then as amended?
Vote as amended. Second by Councilmember Harris. Five yays, no nays. Thank you.
Councilmembers, at the top of page 23, we have a legislative grouping, zoning docket number 2324, Engine 22 LLC, requesting a conditional use to permit a reception facility in an HUMU historic urban neighborhood mixed-use district located on Square 44, Lot 4, in the 4 Municipal District bounded by Jackson Avenue, Phillips Street, Russo Street, and St. Thomas Street. Municipal address, 514 Jackson Avenue. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval, subject to two provisos. Motion M24-232 by Councilmember Harris, motion approving the applicant's request for zoning docket number 2324.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, Stephen?
Thank you, Councilmember. This is a proposal to reuse an old firehouse on Jackson near the river as a reception facility. It is within a mixed-use zoning district that spans several blocks running towards the river. Given that mixed-use zoning and its orientation indeed towards a mix of commercial and residential uses, and also the physical characteristics of this firehouse itself, the planning commission staff found this to be in appropriate use and recommended approval. The planning commission agreed with that rationale and recommends approval as well. I will note that there were several speakers in opposition at the planning commission's public hearing noting objections based on noise, as well as previous events that had occurred at the site.
Thank you, Stephen. I have two comment cards. First is Michael Burnside, second is the owner, John Orgon.
Hi, Michael Burnside, 2215 Felicity. It was interesting listening to Councilperson Thomas and his desire for housing justice to include Central City. I'm a small person. I usually think small things. Occasionally, I think medium-sized things, but usually I think small things. And this is a small thing, you know? It's a little building, two stories. It's not that big. But once upon a time, it was a firehouse. And as a firehouse, people lived in it, short-term, you know? Their families weren't there, wives and kids weren't there, but they spent the night and slept there. The second floor is designed for people to live in, you know? It's got bathrooms, it's got bedrooms, it's got a pole to take you down to the first floor, or it used to. We need, as a society, to start inserting little groups of people in little places and not trying to move 1,000 people in one whack. So it would be really nice if two or three small apartments about the size of my house were on the top floor of this building, and people could live there. Because I agree with some of the people who spoke at this podium recently. It's where people are that businesses go to. Recently, we have set up a model where businesses are somewhere people come to, and this is mostly because of our interstate system. Our interstate system encourages us to live somewhere and go play somewhere else, which is why, unlike Germany, we have high rates of death due to alcohol while driving a car. In Germany, you just take a stairway down, three sets of stairs, and you're at your bar. And then when you're drunk, you climb them to get back up. Here, we drive a few miles and kill somebody. So we need to figure out ways to get people into Central City in small, little bits. And one way is to encourage developers to put in housing as part of what they're offering the city. We worry about noise and many things, but we need to start thinking about housing.
Thank you, Michael Burnside. I would encourage you to look at the firehouse on Jackson Avenue that is going to be turned into just that, John, Louisiana Avenue. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, Council. My name's John Orgon, and I am the owner of the building and am looking to put this historic edifice into use. I appreciate the planning commission's time and effort to take in all of the positives and negatives regarding this development and coming to the conclusion that they support approval of this process. I have reached out to the neighborhood associations and offered a good neighbor agreement to them as well. And regarding his comment, I'm more than open there are complicated life safety and like permitting issues regarding a commercial and residential. So those are challenges in the development process that have to be navigated. But anyways, I thank you for the time you've spent in this so far. We looking forward to putting this into use.
Thank you. So approval of this item would permit conditional use that would allow for a reception facility in an HUMU zone district. I know that the owner has been working with the neighbors on a good neighbor agreement, and that's why this item is at motion stage, and we will finalize our decision at the ordinance stage, dependent on a good neighbor agreement between the owner and the neighbors. So with that, I will, are there any online comments? No? Okay, I'll go ahead and move to adopt the motion. Second to my Council President Moreno. Five yays, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the top of page 24, legislative grouping, zoning docket number 3224, Cudane and VA Louisiana LLC. This matter is deferred to the meeting of 6/6. We have motion line over 24209 by Councilmember Harris. This item is being withdrawn. At the top of page 25, we have a legislative grouping, zoning docket number 3324, GNR Investment Group, requesting a conditional use to permit a wireless telecommunications tower exceeding 125 feet in height in the VIP Business Industrial Park District on Square D, Lot 3, New Orleans East Industrial Center subdivision in the 3rd Municipal District bounded by Mission Boulevard, Sheffman Tour Highway, and Old Gentilly Road. Municipal address, 4201 Mission Boulevard. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval, subject to seven provisos. Motion M24-233 by Councilmember Thomas, motion granting the applicant's request for zoning docket 3324, subject to seven provisos, as stated in the City Planning Commission report.
Tower height raised 195 feet, Verizon will be the anchor tenant. No opposition, no significant visual impact. Move approval, move adoption. Moved by me. Second by Councilmember Morell. All in favor? Five yays, no nays, and the motion is approved. Thank you.
At the top of page 26, legislative grouping, zoning docket 3524, by Alex Henderson III, requesting a zoning change from an HURD2 historic urban two-family residential district to an HUB1 historic urban neighborhood business district, and a conditional use to permit a reception facility on Square 556, Lot 2, in the 7th Municipal District bounded by Edenburn Street, Eagle Street, General Ogden Street, and Palm Street. Municipal address, 8801 Edenburn Street and 3510 Eagle Street. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval, subject to two provisos. Motion M24-224 by Councilmember Jeruso, motion approving and granting the applicant's request for zoning docket 3524, subject to two provisos contained in the City Planning Commission report.
Thank you. Mr. Kroll? Thank you, Councilmember. This application affects a historic corner commercial property at the corner of Edinburgh and Eagle Streets. The applicant has recently renovated the property and seeks to use it as a reception hall. That requires both a zoning change, because the property has the residential zoning that includes the surrounding neighborhood despite its commercial history, and conditional use approval for the reception hall. The planning commission supports this on two counts. Number one, it reconciles the commercial history with its zoning. And then secondly, there was a lot of support from the neighborhood expressed at the public hearing, and expression that the reception hall would be good for the neighborhood. And so based on that, the planning commission does recommend approval.
Thank you very much. I know Earl Williams was here in support. Is Kim Alexander still here? No. Also in support, let me say this before I move, I don't rare, I rarely, if ever, approve upzoning requests. This is a spot zone, plus there is a conditional use on top of this. But this request has the support of city planning, Holly Grove Neighbors, Holly Grove Neighborhood Association, and also State Rep Sean Mina. It is rare on a zoning matter to get this many people supporting one thing. The Henderson Event Hall will be an alcohol- hall will be an alcohol-free event venue to serve not only Holly Grove but also everyone in our city. And we are looking forward to baby showers, community meetings, receptions, and family reunions to take place here. With that, I move for approval. Seconded by Councilmember Harris. I need one more. I think Councilmember Thomas, yay?
Yeah.
Yeah, five yays. Thank you very much.
At the top of page twenty-seven, zoning docket thirty-six, twenty-four, Twelfth House Company LLC. This matter is being deferred to the meeting of June sixth. At the top of page twenty-eight, legislative grouping zoning docket thirty-seven, twenty-four, Jeremy Renew, requesting a conditional use to permit a bed and breakfast accessory in an H U R D two historic urban, two-family residential district on square fifty-four, lot fifteen, in the second municipal district bounded by Domain, North Prayer, North Prayer, Saint Anne, Saint Anne, and North Johnson Streets. Municipal address twenty-twenty-eight Domain Street. The recommendation of City Planning being for denial. Motion M twenty-four, two thirty-six by Councilmember Green is being withdrawn, and we do have a substitute motion. Substitute motion approving the applicant's request for zoning docket number thirty-four, thirty-seven, twenty-four, subject to one waiver and three provisos recommended by the City Planning Commission staff on page thirteen of his preliminary staff report dated April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
Members of the council, um, Mr. Stephen Crowell will give a brief presentation. I am see, I am supporting a motion that would approve a conditional use permit for a bed and breakfast at twenty-twenty-eight Domain Street.
Thank you, Councilmember. This is a proposal to use a single-family residence on Domain Street and trim a, as a bed and breakfast. Uh, as you know, this council adopted last year new S T R and bed and breakfast regulations that allow one S T R, uh, or bed and breakfast per city square. This square, uh, is not currently occupied, and thus this is eligible for application to be the one on the square. The planning commission recommended deny, denial of the application. They were generally concerned about the impact of a bed and breakfast on the residential character of the area and on nearby residents. They were also sensitive to two opposition letters that were sent in. Based on this, the planning commission recommended denial.
We have a comment card from Ron LaSalle of, um, LaSalle of Zach Smith Consulting. Yes, so, Ron?
Ron LaSalle, Zach Smith Consulting, one thousand normacy Francis. Uh, first of all, I, I do want to thank you, Councilmember Green and your staff, for really listening and understanding what the request was, uh, from this applicant. Um, you know, one of the, the wonderful things about council members when they listen to, you know, both sides of it. Uh, what was missed in that CPC meeting was there were actually five comment cards. There were five support letters for the bed and breakfast, and the two that were opposed were from the same household. At which time, when the applicant realized it, what, communicated with the neighbors, and they were like, the only reason we were against it is we weren't notified. I can't help it if, uh, the letter didn't get to them as they were mailed. But we do thank you so much for your time, uh, on this, and we, uh, thank you for your support.
You're welcome. I do want to make it known for the record that the report favored this because of a couple of letters of opposition. As Mr. LaSalle, um, explained, the, um, commission did not vote in favor, but the bottom line is that it comes with a favorable report. There's no potential that this conditional use will significantly impact or oversaturate the neighborhood with short-term guests. Only one accessory bed and breakfast or large residential short-term rental is permitted per city block without the special exception process. So there are no other S T Rs or bed and breakfast permits on this block. If there are no comments online or there comments online, I'll move for approval of the motion as outlined. Is there a second? I'll take Councilman Thomas as the second. Members, if you would vote your machine on motion M twenty-four, two thirty-six regarding this Domain Street property. Five yays, no nays. Thank you, councilmembers, for your support.
Okay, um, councilmembers, we have a matter that needs to be added and deferred to the agenda. Um, so we would need to vote to add it, and then I would defer it until the next meeting. Uh, do you want me to read it in?
It's a little complex, but it's just gonna be introduced, um, and it has to be deferred. But go ahead.
Read it in.
You read it. Yes.
Okay. Andrew Shepherd, Manager, Southern Recycling LLC, requesting a second extension of time for establishment of a conditional use zoning docket ninety-one, eighteen, ordinance number twenty-seven, eight ninety-three. MCS number, calendar number thirty-two, four four, suggesting hearing date six twenty, twenty-four. This item may be received.
Members, it's simply a technicality. It has to be introduced and made a part of this agenda so that we can get an extension, um, so that it can be considered at this later date. I move for approval.
We have to.
Well, first, I, I move to add to the agenda. This item. Second it? Just for the record. Second it? Who seconded it? Okay, Councilmember Morell seconded. Members, six yays, no nays, and now we move. We added it to the agenda. Now we're moving to, I'm sorry.
No, we just need to defer to.
Right.
Defer to six twenty. We just needed that.
That's fine.
Needed to suspend, I need to.
The first one was, um, receiving the communication, correct?
Yeah.
It's okay. So we've, um, received and added that to the consent agenda, correct?
Yes.
Now the next is the motion to, um, for the conditional use.
Second. No, wait, 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 no.
Is that what we're doing next?
Two separate things.
Time out. We are adding it to the agenda simply to get the additional time that is required so that we can have the hearing. So it's gonna be deferred.
We have to receive the communication, and then we're also reading into the record the, um, motion regarding the zoning docket to extend the conditional use. We need to add that to the, we need to add that also to the agenda.
So moved.
Which will be deferred.
Seconded, Council Vice President Morell. Members, please vote your machines. Six yays, no nays. Thank you very much.
We did this to solely commence with the advertisement process. At the top of page twenty-nine, we have ordinance calendar thirty-four thousand, two seventy-seven by Councilmember Thomas Harris and Green by request. This matter is being deferred to the meeting of six-six. At the top of page thirty, legislative grouping calendar, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand, three eighty-five by Councilmembers Morell, Moreno, Harris, and Green. This matter is being deferred to the meeting of six-six. Motion line over M twenty-three, four twenty-six by Councilmembers Morell, Moreno, Harris, and Green. This is being deferred to the meeting of six-six. Motion line over M twenty-three, four twenty-seven by Councilmembers Morell, Moreno, Harris, and Green. This is also being deferred to the meeting of six-six. At the top of page thirty-two, legislative grouping ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand, six fifty-three by Councilmember Harris by request and ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of New Orleans, the River District Neighborhood Investors LLC, and the Nei, the New Orleans Exhibition Hall Authority Economic Growth and Development District, the R D N I sub-district within the, within the district, and the R D N I Municipal Economic Development District collectively referred to as parties for the term greater than one year for the public purpose of creating large-scale, multifaceted mixed-use economic development projects comprised of four hundred and fifty units of affordable and workforce rental housing, including the infrastructure within the R D N I sub-district necessary to support the housing contained in the master development agreement, market rate housing, retail, sports, and entertainment venues, office space, and hotels, public open spaces, and significant projects reflecting the city's rich culture, culture, heritage, and history to encourage inclusive economic growth and economic mobility by creating new jobs, revitalizing neighborhoods, investing in people, and prioritizing industries, and creating systems to thrive and generally promote the economic development of the city of New Orleans as more fully detailed in the C E A exhibit one and otherwise to provide respect there too. There's an amendment to this.
Madam Clerk, you don't need to read the amendment. It's, it's very long. Uh, what the amendment does is just, uh, it coordinates the where-asses clauses, uh, to the language of the C E A. So I'm gonna go ahead and move to amend before we get to discussion. Second of my Councilmember Green. Six yays. All right. So we have Jeff Schwartz here from the mayor's office. And can you introduce who else is with you?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Uh, good afternoon, uh, councilmembers. Um, I am joined here today. Uh, my name is Jeff Schwartz. I run the Office of, uh, Economic Development for the administration. As, uh, Councilmember Harris mentioned, I'm joined here today by Michael Busada, who is representing the River District Neighborhood Investors, uh, as well as Tara Carter Hernandez, uh, who is a, uh, principal and development partner with the River District Neighborhood Investors as well. Um, uh.
And I, I appreciate this. We've already gone through committee, uh, so we, we know what this is. Can you just quickly summarize the changes that have been made to the C E A since it was first introduced in December?
Absolutely, Councilmember. Thank you. Um, at, at bottom, uh, this agreement, uh, an amendment does three things. Uh, one is it adds, uh, the city and the municipal, uh, R D N I E D D as parties to, uh, the, the cooperative endeavor agreement. Um, it creates provisions for, uh, minimum affordable housing, uh, in the project. It, it, uh, ensures that, uh, fifty percent of all the revenues that are created, uh, in the district, uh, go to affordable housing and affordable housing infrastructure. Um, and it also creates accountability structures, so ensures regular reporting requirements, uh, and a few other items. But that's, uh, really the, the, uh, upshot of, um, the amendments that are before us today.
And do any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions before I get to public comment? Hearing none. Let's go through public comment. The first person is Michael Burnside. And let me just remind you, your comments must be germane to this item. And you are limited to two minutes. I will keep that strict time limit.
Okay, all revenues. This is actually not true. The current sales tax revenues are mentioned in the where-asses and nowhere else. The pilots are mentioned only in regards to sales tax, not with regards to vertical improvements. As far as the affordable housing goes, the affordable housing commitment includes the infrastructure to support the affordable housing, which includes such things as sewers, water mains, streets, and sidewalks. So the fifty percent that is going to affordable housing is also going to the infrastructure, which will be used by everybody, housing included, but everybody else as well. So, uh, the newspaper had an interesting, uh, opinion piece a few weeks ago in which they used the number three hundred instead of the number four hundred and fifty. It raised some concerns on my part, so I asked to see a copy of the request made by R D N I to Louisiana Housing Corporation for the low-income tax credits. I put in a public records request with LHC. It was not responded to. I put in a request with Todd James. It was not responded to. And I put in a request with Leslie Harris, and it was not responded to. So I have not read whether the city has supported or not supported R D N I's request for federal, state, and local, uh, monies to help with the affordable housing. There are other issues, notably that the municipal is the taxing district, but it is the R D N I sub-district that gets to change the boundaries, and so it can be changed to zero. And of course, all the taxes could just disappear if somebody buys and sells the properties. Thank you.
Michael Sawaya. Is he still here? He's in support. Corey Ashby. Corey Ashby. Going once, going twice. Uh, Talia Brombe. Talia? Gone. Julia Sagadi. Julia, not here. Kristen Hamilton.
Good afternoon, councilpersons. Um, I'm a graduate student at Tulane University School of Architecture. Uh, therefore, I have an interest in city planning. Um, I'm speaking in opposition of the community endeavor agreement between the city of New Orleans and the River District Neighborhood Investors. This project was originally advertised to be addressed, addressing the current housing crisis in New Orleans, which you all are aware of, yet in reality will not do so. Each of you, uh, know that we need to address this issue immediately. This project did not take into account community input, increases sales tax in the neighborhood, and provides tax exemptions to Shell. I cannot understand why we, as a community, would allow some of the most important property we have, as it is on high ground, to become a meaningless entertainment space by allowing Topgolf to find its home here. Beyond this, we have a duty to uphold the unique character and cultural fabric of our neighborhoods, which this project absolutely does not do. Um, I should not need to stand here and tell you the laundry list of items, uh, that Shell and the fossil fuel industry has done to harm our community in New Orleans and throughout the state. Shell and other fossil fuel corporations are actively working to loot the natural resources off the coast of Gaza. This is a local issue. As Tulane University is the lead university in the U.S.-Israel Energy Exchange. This is a twenty-seven million dollar contract. The entire university is in a conflict of interest with its students, faculty, and staff that are currently facing discipline. Professors at my university are researching exactly how to extract these resources and profiting from it. We know capitalist interests to be the driving force for the ongoing NEFA in Palestine, and we are asking you to add a ceasefire resolution to the agenda.
Jacoby Lamar. Jacoby Lamar, not here. Marco Sa. Marco. Shreya Zavdovian. And I'm sure I mispronounced your name. I'm sorry.
That's fine. That's actually a reasonable mispronunciation because you didn't add letters that aren't in there. But my name is Shreya Zavdovian. Um, and yeah, we're here. Uh, I'm here to oppose, I know these are amendments, but we oppose the entire community endeavor agreement. Um, because, as again, it's falsely advertised as addressing the city's affordable housing crisis, um, but the actual, you know, committed number of affordable housing units keeps decreasing. Um, this project has not been planned with community input. Uh, critics of this project have been facing lawsuits for speaking out against this. Um, and, uh, this would make the River District have the highest sales tax in the city, which is already facing the highest sales tax in the country. Um, while y'all are, uh, while this is happening, y'all are, um, granting companies like Shell, uh, tax exemption. Um, uh, Shell, which is, uh, destroying our coast, destroying, uh, working-class black communities across the state of Louisiana, um, through its operations. And it's doing all of this to create, uh, and sell fuel to the Department of Defense so that it can go and commit a genocide in Gaza. Um, and so we are against this community endeavor agreement, and we're again asking for five demands. We're asking for, uh, New Orleans passing a ceasefire resolution. We're asking that y'all publicly support peaceful protesting, including the student movement. We're asking y'all to condemn Tulane and Loyola administrations for punishing students and attacking them with state police. We're asking you to issue a statement to the U.S. State Department and the government of Israel condemning the death of Thalfeek, Abdeljebah, and for the dropping of charges against Samaher Esmail. We're asking you to add a ceasefire resolution to the next city council meeting agenda, and we're asking y'all to not grant tax exemptions to Shell and not ruin, uh, uh, our communities by putting this, um, uh, River District project through. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Quick. Margaret Quick. Margaret Quick. Islam Ahmed. Ron LaSalle. Ron, Ron doesn't want to speak. Charles Nicholson.
Good afternoon. Uh, Charles Nicholson with Housing NOLA and the Greater New Orleans Housing Alliance. Uh, we, uh, the NOLA's position on the River District remained unchanged since we withdrew our support over a year ago. We still cannot support public investment in such a project where there are still not guardrails and support necessary to produce a single unit of any affordable housing. The state of New Orleans' housing market remains that significant funding is needed to create a single unit of housing, and most of the public funding available is still going to anything but that. Fortunately, there is a simple answer. Put housing first. We urge the mayor's office and the city council to implement a C E A that holds all parties accountable to the needed and necessary goal, creating as many housing opportunities as possible to provide a safe and decent home to average New Orleanians. Despite the missteps, we do believe that the developers and our public officials are capable of crafting such an arrangement, and we urge all parties to do exactly that. New Orleans is in the unenviable position of not being able to invest in anything except housing because other leaders and developers made poor choices before. We urge you to. We urge you to put the people of New Orleans first this time. Stop chasing down, trickle-down economics, as it doesn't work. And put all that energy and will and money into housing this city desperately needs. Thank you.
Shannon Kenny. Followed by Tenley McLaughlin Good. All right. There she is, thank you.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Tenley McLaughlin Good. I am a resident of District B. And I am a member of the New Orleans Community Print Shop, which I hope, Councilman Green, you're familiar with my name, and I'd appreciate it if you please return our phone calls. Councilman, Councilmember Harris, it's very disappointing to watch you roll your eyes at your constituents. I would recommend that you change those kind of actions in such public forums. I am here to oppose the CEA pertaining to the River District project, which is falsely advertised as addressing the city's housing crisis. This project has not been planned with community input, increases sales tax in the neighborhood, making it the highest sales tax rate in the nation, and provides tax exemptions to Shell. In our state, Shell emits toxic pollution in low-income and Black communities and is being sued for coastal subsidence by numerous parishes and profits by fueling the genocide in Gaza through its contracts with the Department of Defense. I am deeply disappointed in the lack of leadership on the city council. After seven months of local ceasefire actions and a peaceful student-led encampment, it cannot be any more clear that a ceasefire is city business and you must act. Your silence is complicity in genocide, and in that, you do not represent our city. The people of New Orleans are deeply connected to the pain of those suffering both locally, such as Taufik and Samaher, and internationally. Allowing the use of excessive force on sleeping college students is embarrassing to our city. Add a ceasefire resolution to the next city council meeting agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Zeev Surzenetz. And then Sarah Minor. Sarah? All right, with that, are there any online comments?
I have one online comment.
Okay.
This is from Sandra Lombana Linquist. She says, Dear councilmembers, on behalf of the New Orleans Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to voice our support for the City of New Orleans entering into a CEA with the River District Neighborhood Investors to move their development of the River District forward in partnership. RDNI's plans for vast stretch of vacant land next to the convention center set the stage for a dynamic new hub for business, amplifying economic activity and job creation. This $1.5 billion project will revitalize over 39 acres of land, currently generating zero taxes on the Mississippi River, and produce $500 million in new sales tax revenues over the next 30 years. Beyond economic benefits, the inclusion of retail and entertainment promises increased tourism, support for local small businesses, and a lively atmosphere that embodies the spirit of New Orleans. Last, but certainly not least, the public benefits proposed by the developers, namely the addition of much-needed affordable housing for our citizens, will deliver a project that is a positive net gain for locals and visitors alike. Our extensive network at the chamber comprising over 1,300-member businesses and community leaders is united in fostering a dynamic business climate that encourages entrepreneurship and success throughout New Orleans. We are encouraged by the collective vision and efforts we see before us with the CEA to fortify the future of this project. That's it for our online comments.
All right, and ma'am, did you fill out a card?
I did, my name is Zoo Jernstad. You just?
I did, yeah, go ahead.
I'm here today to oppose a CEA pertaining to the River District project, the lack of broad community input, increase of sales tax in the neighborhood, and tax exemptions to Shell in our state as a failing to our community. Shell has been emitting toxic pollution, eroding the health of low-income communities. They've already been being, they're already being sued for coastal damage in Louisiana and profiting from fueling the genocide in Gaza through its contacts with the DOD. They are complicit in an act of genocide. That makes what's happening in Palestine a New Orleans issue. Why is there a tax exemption for people profiting off the killing of over 40,000 people? Our city needs real affordable housing, no more entertainment for tourists until New Orleans companies are held accountable for the damage they are inflicting on our community and we have housing. We need to stand in solidarity against the genocide with our tax dollars. Please add a ceasefire resolution to the next city council meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and move to approve as amended. Second to my Councilmember Green. Five VAs, one nay. Motion passes, thank you.
At the top of page 34, legislative grouping, ordinance calendar number 34,0656 by Councilmember Harris, an ordinance to establish a conditional use to permit the expansion of a car wash in a C-2 auto-oriented commercial district. On the entirety where 513 in the first municipal district bounded by Elhard Boulevard, Calio Street, Cleo Street, and South Rinden Street. Municipal address 4417, Elhard Boulevard, and otherwise supervisor respects thereto. Zone and document 2824. There's an amendment to this ordinance calendar, which is being withdrawn, and we have a substitute amendment, an amendment to ordinance calendar 34,0656 to remove proviso 2E in section 1 on page 3, the lead lines 32 through 35, and reletter the existing proviso 2F as proviso 2E.
All right, so I'll move to adopt, amend, thank you, move to amend. Second to my Councilmember Green.
Just a councilman.
All right, and so what this does is permit the expansion of a car wash in a C-2 auto-oriented commercial district for conditional use. Anita, any online comments, any public comments? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move to adopt as amended. Second to my Councilmember Green. Six shays, thank you all.
At the top of page 35, ordinance calendar 34,0660 by Councilmember Harris, by request, an ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into an agreement to grant a servitude to an adjacent property owner for encroachments on or over portions of public right-of-way located at the municipal address 6018 Street to fix the minimum price in terms of said servitude agreement to declare that such use as granted in the servitude agreement will incorporate space that is neither needed for public purpose nor shall use interfere with the use of public right-of-way as to set forth the reasons for said servitude agreement and otherwise supervisor respects thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is a servitude with a yearly payment of around $1,700. It was reviewed by the Planning Advisory Committee on June 7, 2020. It will be, no, was, this is wrong. Technical review determined that there were no objections to the enforcements. I'll move to adopt. Second to my Councilmember Green. Need one more vote, five VAs, thank you. Six shays.
At the bottom of the page, ordinance calendar 34,0667 by Councilmember Green, by request, this is being deferred to the meeting of six states and referred to budget. At the bottom of page 36, we have ordinance calendar 34,0674 by Councilmember Morell, an ordinance to amend and re-advise section 34-4 of the Code of the City of New Orleans to provide relative to the regulation of Mardi Gras parades by removing NICS from the parade permit list and otherwise supervisor respects thereto.
Thank you very much. The, the comments by the clerk are pretty self-explanatory. There are some people that would like to speak. We have two. The first is Mr. Doug Sensary, followed by Sharon Perschall.
I was going to spend most of the time on this.
You have two minutes.
Yes, I know. Most of the time on the ordinance. I will say, I think it's vague. I think the issue regarding social media posts, when the, when the ordinance went into effect, it wasn't social media, and I don't think that was contemplated. Second, on the bans, we sent the council contracts that they had seven bans. Two didn't show up. The statute says about counties being willful. I don't think that's willful. The third issue, the throes, I don't think that particular issue has been uniformly applied. That's been a problem for the last 30 years in various contexts. And usually, if there was a violation, it would be dealt with internally. If it wasn't dealt with internally, internally, I suppose that it would go back to the council. But what I did want to talk about is, I think Ms. Lee is controversial, but I think she has a skill set of building. Maybe one of her gifts isn't maintaining. A lot of CEOs who started businesses end up going out in a golden parachute because it's a different skill set to maintain a business as opposed to build one. And we had, had brokered basically a deal for Ms. Lee to step out of leadership and have two fixtures, one or two fixtures in Mardi Gras to take over the parade. And we were actually going to consummate this deal this week. And this came up today. But what I would like to do is ask the council to table this 30 days. A deal will be done within the next few days. Have the new leadership meet with the council privately or come at the next setting and discuss what type of different vision they have for the parade. I don't think there's 250 members or so who are from diverse backgrounds who would like to have that opportunity. So I don't see the, you know, the big rush. I would say just give the new leadership an opportunity to come before the council and see if this aligns with the objectives of the council. I will tell you that a deal would be done, would have been done probably by the end of today, but for our recent notice of this agenda item. And I will almost guarantee it will be done by the middle of next week. So I would ask that the council defer this for 30 days. Allow the new leadership to come, to talk about his vision for the Crew of NICS and see if that aligns with the council's vision. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
The board's clear, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sharon Perschall? I'm sorry, make sure you say your name, address for the record. This is required.
It's Sharon Perschall.
Okay.
Okay.
And your address?
My home address?
Yes. More address of business and address. We need an address.
I live in, I live in Slidell, Louisiana. Is that what you're asking?
When you usually come up to speak?
Yes, sir.
You're supposed to say your name, address, and whether or not you're a paid actor.
No, I'm not a paid actor.
That's why, that's why I was asking what's required on the card. That's all.
Okay. No, to New Orleans Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before you today. I am here to speak on behalf of hundreds of members for the Crew of NICS. We are a diverse group of women from all walks of life trying to rebuild what we once had several years ago. We support our city. We built a playground for the children, among other philanthropies. Our membership is growing. Julie Lee wants to be here but cannot attend due to legal issues, and she wants her voice to be heard. Mr. Morell, you had mentioned that our captain did not respond to you, and she did send emails requesting to speak with you and the council. And, you know, we're just asking to please reconsider dropping this permit. Why is it just us? There were other crews that shared the same violations. And I beg you, please consider what we are asking as we know we are not the only crew that's in violation. Does this mean any permit can be pulled because someone else wants the spot? Please let us prove to you that we deserve to be here and our greed love for Mardi Gras and the city can continue. All we ask is for fairness in this matter. Once again, I am asking to please consider the hundreds of members who would love to continue to be part of Mardi Gras. Please do not punish us because of prior political issues with our captain. Thank you for the consideration of your time, and please reconsider. Thank you.
Okay, the board is clear. I do.
Councilmember, have some online comments?
How many online comments?
Four.
Four? We can do all four, it's fine. Make sure that each comment is limited to two minutes, please.
First comment is from Roy Ruppfacher. I greatly urge the city council to vote yes on this ordinance amendment. No other organization would be allowed to roll in this abysmal state that NICS has the past few years. It's no longer a full and functional organization, and their ride slot should be given to an organization that can put on a full parade. Next comment is from Trevor McQueen. For all, for too long, the crew of NICS led by Julie Lee has disrespected the spirit of Mardi Gras and therefore disrespected the citizens of New Orleans. By not removing NICS from Mardi Gras, the city council is setting a precedent that you can slap Chris Rock and not get blamed from the Oscars for the next 10 years. If my neighbor lets, if my neighbor left her dog's crap on my lawn, she can expect it returned in her mailbox, just saying. Ms. Lee's harmful actions deserve appropriate punishment. Time to 86 NICS. Next comment is from Kathy Calico. For the last two years, the NICS parade has been a pathetic representation of New Orleans Mardi Gras organizations. Even exclusive of the controversial statements made by its captain, NICS has failed to meet the parameters set forth by the city for ridership and walking units. I saw two floats this year with no visible riders on the upper tier, and I only watched for about 15 minutes. Their riders hardly threw anything, and the crowd was almost nonexistent. I heard reports of the crew recruiting visitors to ride on the day of the parade just to fill the floats. This crew is taking up a coveted spot that could go to any one of several more deserving organizations. I'm a member of the crew of Themis, which would love to have its own parade and has about three times the membership of NICS. Our crew was founded on a platform of promoting social justice and women's empowerment. We have donated clothing to women's shelters and prom dress drives, health school supply drives, and are an active supporter of Son of Saint. Do I want that prime Wednesday night parade? No, but the first weekend crews of Cleopatra and King Arthur far outshine NICS and are deserving of that prime-time Wednesday parade if they want it. Since that fateful Facebook post in the summer of 2020, the crew of NICS has collapsed to the point that it can no longer uphold the standard of a Mardi Gras parading organization as defined by the New Orleans City Ordinance. I therefore ask the city council to revoke its parade permit and grant it a more deserving, grant it to a more deserving crew. The last comment is from Hattie Parsley. She says, I wholeheartedly support the NICS parade should be removed from Mardi Gras due to their leader being a racist. On a similar vein, it pains me that councilmembers elected by the people continue to ignore the racist and inhumane actions of the Israeli governments in Palestine that people continue to bring up. I ask that you listen to the people you represent and add a ceasefire resolution to the next city council meeting agenda. Additionally, please get rid of NICS. No one even goes anymore, and it's an embarrassment to our city. That's it for the comments.
Thank you. I also have a card, late card from Mr. Riley.
You, Councilmember, members of the committee, Bruce Riley from Vote. You know, I just think it's, it's rather telling, and someone just has to mention it, that there's more people here supporting Palestine and Palestinians than there are members of the NICS crew. And the NICS crew is actually sort of like in the dock, as they say, in the criminal justice system. And so didn't even show up to defend themselves. And so I feel like that should be your answer. I don't think you need to go any further than that. If they're not willing to come here and tell you what they're all about in numbers, because as we know, you need to have numbers, then this says everything you need to know. And we all know that crews should stand for something or they're going to fall for everything. And it's really sad that this has come to this, but really, you know, we should be looking at all our crews and what it is that they espouse as their values. And I appreciate you bringing this, Councilman Morell. Thank you.
The board is clear. I want to begin by saying, just for a bit of clarification, regarding the letter and correspondence, a letter was sent to all people, all crews that had violations and that had, we had received complaints regarding on March 28. They were told that there would be a public hearing on April 24 in which any crews that had received a letter could prevent, could present any information that they had to try and mitigate any kind of action that would take place. Everybody else who got a letter showed up. There was leadership from NICS in the audience. leadership from NICS in the audience that did not come to this table. I received a email with some information on April 29th, five days after the hearing. So I just want to make sure the timeline is correct. I wanted to address that, that is regarding the timeline further. After hearing all the comments today, I'd like to share a few thoughts and observations before we vote. First and foremost, this is not a political issue. There has been no reference, whether it be in all the correspondence, whether it be in the April 24th meeting, regarding politics at all, or anyone being punished or any relationship to politics. If anything, the seeming lack of interest in this item until yesterday, despite the fact that I said on April 24th that this was under consideration, and that this was, item was filed and has laid over since May 2nd, illustrates that no one was seeking to score political points with the consideration of this item or its passage. This council since last year has been focused on reforming and improving Mardi Gras. We work with the public before, during, and after Mardi Gras to collect data and recommendations on how to improve Mardi Gras, the Mardi Gras experience, while making this special time of year safe and accessible for everyone to enjoy. We have additionally worked with all crews that roll during the entirety of Mardi Gras season to streamline a variety of different processes as well as set expectations as to how responsive these crews need to be of the city as we seek to preserve this tradition that everyone enjoys. That being said, let me outline a few points for everyone to consider. Mardi Gras is a taxpayer subsidized event. On average, the city spends approximately $1.5 million per day on police, fire, EMS, permitting, and sanitation, among other things. I highlight this cost not to say that it is money misspent, but to highlight that the city has significant skin in the game to ensure that Mardi Gras is successful. These costs combined with the spectacle provided by crews have historically provided a symbiotic relationship where we, the city, and crews collectively provide a benefit to the public in the event that is Mardi Gras. We have a plethora of ordinances and rules on the books that exist to ensure this relationship works. Rules regarding a minimum number of bands, to ensure that crews are providing a minimum entertainment for spectators along the routes, limitations on advertising so that crews are not using their tax subsidized parades to seek to generate membership by throwing out QR codes, asking for money when spectators expect beads. There are a host of other rules and regulations, but these are two examples. Furthermore, there are other considerations this council must consider regarding Mardi Gras. When the city spends 1.5 million, when the city forces its badly depleted police force to work overtime shifts that keep them away from their families and away from the regular patrols, when the city closes streets and opposes hardship and inconvenience on residents who live inside the box, we have the right to ask whether it's worth the cost. Are the crews generating enough interest and turning out enough spectators to justify the resources being spent to subsidize a party? There's a specific cap on the amount of crews that can parade, as well as a waiting list of crews waiting for their turn. Does that create an unfair expectation that other groups are not being timely considered for inclusion when other groups have failed to meet the expectations that have been set? These are a few examples of the many issues the council should consider when determining what should be done when it comes to Mardi Gras and parade crews. However, there is something more that simply must be said. The Mardi Gras ordinance is just that. It's an ordinance. There is no vested property right by any crew when it comes to permitting. There is no ownership. There are no special rights. There is no special process. And to be clear, what we are talking about here is the city code, not a permit. Parade permits for 2025 have not been issued. The city code is a collection of laws that apply generally. No carnival organization, not NICS, not Rex, not Zulu, have a constitutionally protected property interest in our city code. When we pass a law, we are not required to root out every person or group that might have some interest in the outcome. Due process is the legislative process itself. The legislative process for passing an ordinance is spelled out in the Home Rule Charter. An ordinance must be introduced. It must lie over. It must appear on the properly noticed agenda. It must be voted upon and passed. It must be signed by the mayor. Those requirements have been, have been followed and will continue to be followed to the strictest letter of the law. Ample opportunity has been given to various parties to interact with the council before today to provide information and context in a variety of public forums, but that was done as a courtesy. Those meetings have led to a tremendous amount of dialogue that will shape the future of Mardi Gras for years to come. That the Crew of NICS chose not to participate in any of those opportunities was unfortunate. The ordinance before us today was done based upon information and public discussion, but remains an ordinance that has met all the qualifications for consideration and passage. As such, I move for passage of the ordinance. Seconded by Councilmember King, please vote your machines. Seven yeas, no nays. The ordinance is passed.
At the top of page thirty-seven, ordinance counted number thirty-four thousand six seventy-five by Councilmember Harris by request. An ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the Odyssey House of Louisiana Inc. for a term greater than one year with a total compensation exceeding one million for the public purpose of assuming operations at the City Low Barrier Shelter as more fully detailed in the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement that is listed A and otherwise supervised respects thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know we have representatives from Odyssey House who've been sitting here quietly. If you want to come up, and I think Tyra is here from OCD as well. Come on up. And Nate, oh, Nate Fields, come on up. So while they're walking up, I just want to say that this is a CEA with Odyssey House, Louisiana, to take over operations of the Low Barrier Shelter beginning on June 1st. The Office of Community Development released a NOFA seeking an operator for the city's Low Barrier Shelter, and Odyssey House was the only respondent. Odyssey House, Louisiana, was awarded $6.5 million to operate the shelter for one year with the option to renew up to three years based on performance and available financial resources. This CEA means that Odyssey House, Louisiana, will manage the 296-bed shelter every single day, 24 hours a day, providing three meals a day, connecting individuals to supportive services, housing, addiction treatment, et cetera. The Low Barrier Shelter should provide a safe community environment within which homeless individuals can be engaged, connected to essential services, sheltered and supported while they move to appropriate housing. And Odyssey House, Louisiana, has taken up the charge on helping to turn around the current operations of our Low Barrier Shelter to make this so. I do want to give a thanks and a shout out to Nate Fields, who's been running the Low Barrier Shelter on an interim basis since the Operator Start Corporation left about two months ago. And I also want to thank you for your attention to the folks who've lived there, the operations, the actual physical area of the Low Barrier Shelter, and working with property management, specifically Trade Nobles, on getting the shelter up physically working. Tyra, thank you also for your commitment to this. With that, do y'all have anything to add?
No, just moment.
Okay. Councilmember Green?
I just want to take an opportunity to before the vote, thank Odyssey House for the work that Odyssey House does because of their sincerity, because of the fact that they recognize that there are people who are in need of services and provide those services. I want to thank Nathaniel Fields for taking on the challenge. It seems like you've been here a long time, Mr. Fields. You have taken on some challenges within the year and three months that are incredible. I was at the site of, within the last couple of weeks, decommissioning, if you will, or just cleaning up a couple of homeless encampments. And it just reminds me of the fact that I'm so pleased that you're in the position in which you are, and that the staff within the, your office, and also with the administration, working with the council, has done, is making a tremendous difference in our city. It's saving lives. Odyssey House is taking on a challenge. Sometimes when you read in the paper, the real negative, you know that they're going to continue to say negative things. But you are willing to take on this challenge of this Low Barrier Shelter of operation and those things that have to be done to provide services to our citizens, and I appreciate it. I'm going to be a little political. I want to challenge our surrounding parishes to recognize that they have a responsibility also to those who are unhoused. The City of New Orleans has been very gracious and been very cordial and very giving with regards to providing the resources that are necessary for the maintenance of the encampments, also the Low Barrier Shelter, and other entities to which we make monies available, including, for example, the Trauma Recovery Center, which does have an ability to work with those who are unhoused. I just want to say that this is yet another example of the fact that the City of New Orleans and the City Council, the administration is committed, and now Odyssey House, again, is committed to providing support for those who are most, most in need of support. But it is not just an issue just in Arlene's parish. I, again, I'm being redundant, and sometimes it's okay. Our surrounding parishes have a responsibility to do just as the City of New Orleans is doing, to provide resources. It's too easy to just say, go to New Orleans and get the services that you need. They have an obligation to work with us, and I'm looking forward to seeing those parishes provide the same sort of support, the same enthusiasm to support their residents and others who come to their city as we're seeing here with the administration, the council, the Office of Homeless Services and Strategies, Odyssey House, and others. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Green. We have comment cards. Again, some of these are germane, and I'm going to take out the two that are not germane. There's Michael Burnside. Can you come on up? You've got two minutes. And we have one from Lonnie, but Lonnie is up at the table, so we'll just act like that's not there.
So, first of all, all of us at Odyssey House, a thank you, because they were the only respondent. So it's going to seem like I'm attacking them, but I'm not completely blind to reality. A lot of people did not want to take this on. I'd also point out that Start Corporation was kind of screwed over because they weren't offered anywhere near the same amount of money Odyssey House is being offered. Things might have been different if we hadn't been quite so cheap. So moving on, I believe, having read this particular calendar number, which is full of information, and I would advise anybody who likes to deal with low-income housing people to read it because it's full of reality. It's my understanding that the Low Barrier Shelter is going to turn into a Medium Barrier Shelter. There are job descriptions at the back of that particular calendar number that clearly dictate the expectations of the coming set of employees, and they will do various things, including making sure that medication is taken, and somebody who doesn't want to take it isn't going to be allowed to stay there. That's my interpretation of my reading, and the people at the table can dispute with me. The Sobering Center was given as an example, $1.47 million. They have eighty people a month come through there, and I've found that most people don't do math anymore because it basically comes down to $1,500 per person that's being sobered. This is rather expensive. As near as I can tell, it's going to be $60 a day for the Low Barrier Shelter, thirty days. This means it's going to be $1,800 bucks a month, which of course is really high rent. So we're offering a lot more than rent. We're offering wraparound services. But the question becomes what happens when people don't want to accept them, because not everybody is in the game to be saved. So I think I'll let it go at that. I do want to thank the people who give a shit enough to try, whether they succeed or not. If you can keep your heart open enough to love, that itself is not worthless.
Thank you, Michael Burnside. The only other comment card that I have is Juliana Strickland. Juliana? Juliana is gone. Do we have any online comments? Okay. Again, I just want to thank you all for your continued work on the homelessness issue that we face here in New Orleans. Nate, your leadership has been nothing but stellar, and I am thankful to be working with you.
Thank you.
Five yeas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Six yeas.
At the bottom of the page thirty-seven, ordinance counted number thirty-four thousand six seventy-seven by Councilmember Green by request. An ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a subsequent cooperative endeavor agreement with Dillaw University Police to provide mutual law enforcement aid.
I believe it's withdrawn unless it's, well, cards were given to me just now, but it's, it can't be on this issue.
It's being withdrawn?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what this is.
This matter is being withdrawn.
I'm sorry.
At the top of page thirty-eight, ordinance counted number thirty-four thousand six seventy-nine by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request is being deferred to the meeting of six-six and referred to budget. At the top of page thirty-nine, ordinance counted number thirty-four thousand six eighty is being deferred to the meeting of six-six and referred to budget. At the top of page forty, ordinance counted number thirty-four thousand six eighty-one is being deferred to the meeting of six-six and referred to budget. At the top of page forty-one, ordinance counted number thirty-four thousand six eighty-two is being deferred to the meeting of six-six and referred to budget. At the top of page forty-two, ordinance counted number thirty-four thousand six eighty-three is being deferred to the meeting of six-six and referred to budget. At the top of page forty-three, ordinance counted number thirty-four thousand six eighty-four is being deferred to the meeting of six-six and referred to budget. At the bottom of page forty-three, motion line over M-22516 by Councilmember Morrell is being deferred to seven, meeting of seven-eleven.
Seven-eleven.
At the top of page forty-four, resolution line over twenty-four ninety-five by Councilmember Thomas is being deferred to the meeting of six-six. Motion number twenty-four two fifteen by Councilmember Thomas by request is being deferred to the meeting of six-six and referred to the Criminal Justice Committee. At the bottom of page forty-four, motion M-24216 by Councilmember Moreno, selecting the time speaking union of New Orleans Advocate as the official journal for the City of New Orleans for the period beginning June 1st, 2024, and ending May 31st, 2025.
I'll make a motion to adopt. I can get a second. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. Missing some votes here. Six yeas, no nays.
At the top of page forty-five, motion M-24218 by Councilmembers Green and Thomas by request, adding the president of council as a signatory to amendment number three to, to the bid contract between the City of New Orleans and Arlene Security LLC doing business as force one protection, and authorizing the president of the council to sign amendment number three, the bid contract between the City of New Orleans and the Arlene Security LLC, force one protection.
Members of the council, this issue was discussed at Tuesday's Economic Development meeting. The overreaching purpose of the contract is to get security at Lincoln Beach as soon as possible, and the best way to accomplish this goal is to add Lincoln Beach to a previously existing contract with Department of Public Works as Lincoln Beach is a public, Department of Public Works site. So the Law Department has confirmed that this is the legal course of action, and Joe Threat, the deputy CAO for Infrastructure, agreed that this is the best, the best path, path forward at this time. Force one protection is a disadvantaged business enterprise firm. I move for approval of motion M-24216 unless there are questions. I have no comment cards, anything online? Okay.
Just to say that this is good in, in the interim, while they take a look at going out, like I forbid, and hopefully getting more locals and DBEs a chance to participate.
Yes. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Thomas. Members, please vote your machine on twenty-four two eighteen. Seven yeas, no nays. Motion passes.
Motion M-24219 by Councilmember Green by request, adding the president of council as a signatory to a contract agreement between the City of New Orleans and the New Orleans Redevelopment Authority, authorizing the president of the council to sign a contract between the City of New Orleans and the New Orleans Redevelopment Authority.
Members of the council, these funds, this fund's already been made available, but this matter was discussed at the Economic Development Committee meeting. Jeff Swarson, the Director of Economic Development, and Brenda Brohl, the Executive Director of NOR explained that this is simply a technical matter necessary to distribute funds to NOR that were previously set aside for the development of the land at the Old Jazz Land Site in preparation for the Bayou Phoenix development. Once again, for the record, NOR owns the land, and the money goes through them to develop that land, to get it into a position to make it available for Bayou Phoenix development. I move, maybe, may I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Morrell. Members, please vote your machine. Five yeas, no nays.
At the top of page.
No nays. Thank you very much, members.
At the top of page forty-six, we have resolution twenty-four two twenty-three by Councilmembers Moreno, Morrell, Jeruso, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas by request, confirming the appointments and award of scholarships selected by Merrilla Toya Contral to receive four-year scholarships to Tulane University are deemed to be well-qualified and worthy of such selection under the criteria established in City Code Section 233(c)(1). Accordingly pursuant to the City Code Section 233(c)(9) as follows: Lola Silas Cameron, Council District A; Kaila Vaughn Kirby, Council District A; Timothy Jarro Jr., Council District B; Maxwell Gruver Mormon, Council District B; Lauren Olivia Vance, Council District C; Adam Quackbench. C; Adam Quackbenchew, Council District D; Ty Siddique Rose, Council District D; Katie Nguyen, Council District E; Rodrigo Garcia, Council District D; DeJohn Banks, Council District E.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do have a lot of comment cards. Reminder to keep the comments germane to the Tulane scholarships that are being awarded by the mayor. The first one is Maya Sanchez. Going to come up? No Maya? Okay. This looks like Tony Jones. There's a hyphenated name. Okay. Anna Malik. Talia Bromberg. Mr. Morell, you're still here? There you are.
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon.
We wish to congratulate these outstanding students for their accomplishments and wish them luck in their future endeavors. I am a Tulane alum. And as a new diverse batch of incoming students from across the various districts in our city, they are preparing for their first year at Tulane. We hope that they are protected against the racism, discrimination and retaliation that students at Tulane have consistently faced. I went there for about 10 years and so I'm well aware of what that looks like. In the wake of Tulane's violence against student protesters and the ongoing suppression and retaliation of student and faculty voices, we urge the city council to hold this institution accountable if we are recommending our students from our districts to go there. Students should not face violence of exercising their constitutional rights. Students should not enter into an environment where racism, xenophobia, Islamophobia are ignored by the administration. Again, I want to make sure that we emphasize that we congratulate these students and we hope that they have a future that is bright and they continue to promote issues of social justice and eventually will take positions in this city such as the positions that you guys have and continue to try to make this city better. And I think one way we can make it better is by representing our values. And we will, as we stayed and will continue to stay till the end of this meeting, we hope that you appreciate and will acknowledge their steadfastness. These are people who took out opportunities to work and to provide for their families so that they can have an opportunity to speak to you and we hope you recognize that and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Natalie Antonelli. Good afternoon.
I want to reiterate that we wish to congratulate these outstanding students on their accomplishments and wish them luck in their future endeavors. We hope they are protected against the racism, discrimination and retaliation that students at Tulane have consistently faced. In the wake of Tulane's violence against student protesters and ongoing suppression and retaliation of city and faculty voices, we urge the city council to hold this institution accountable. Students should not face violence for exercising constitutional rights. Students should not enter into an environment where racism, xenophobia and Islamophobia are ignored by the administration and students should not enter into an environment where student protesters are faced with police violence. And speaking on police violence, I would like to also mention, because I did not have the opportunity to, that I oppose the ordinance...
You need to stay germane on this topic.
Okay. I am a Tulane senior standing in front of you today to demand the city council addresses Tulane administration's blatant alliance with Israel and Zionism. I urge you to support student demands that Tulane University discloses all its endowments and invested annually, cut all ties with Israeli universities, divest fully from corporations who supply arms, fuel or technology to Israel, provide institutional protection for Arab and Palestinian students and drop the charges and unjust sanctions against students and faculty members who feel morally compelled to speak out and take action against the ongoing settler colonial expansion of Western imperialism through the puppet state of Israel by means of explicit ethnic cleansing and genocide. Protesting is not a crime and we demand ceasefire be added to the next city council agenda. And thank you.
Thank you. Rory McDonald. Rory McDonald.
My name is Rory McDonald and I'm a member of Tulane Students for Democratic Society. And as a Tulane student, I'm happy to support this measure because our university desperately needs to better represent New Orleans, its residents and its values. Tulane University has repeatedly lied about our movement and our actions, labeling us as outside agitators. However, we, the students and those who support us in the community, understand that it is Tulane University that is the outside agitator in New Orleans. It's Tulane University, which was founded by a supporter of the Confederacy, a wealthy merchant from New Jersey that was run and administered by slave owners and confederates and segregationists throughout most of its history, that resisted desegregation for a decade after Brown v. Board of Education, that is the outside agitator in New Orleans, just like it is the genocidal settler state of Israel that is the outside agitator in Gaza and all of occupied Palestine. As representatives of the city of New Orleans, it falls to you, to this council, to combat Tulane University's lies, lies like the lies in the IPM report that was discussed today, lies like we heard in the congressional hearings by the House Education Committee, lies like the lies that are coming from the White House about the student protests and lies like the lies that are coming from Israel every day about their genocidal operations in Palestine. Here in your city, you have the power to correct the record. Hold a public hearing. Hold Tulane accountable. Allow us to speak and set the record straight on the violence against students, violence that I experienced firsthand and that other people in this room experienced firsthand. Introduce a ceasefire resolution to the next city council agenda. We need to take steps, not just to give these students the opportunity to get an education, but to protect them and make sure that they are safe because as things stand, I cannot and I would not ever recommend attending Tulane University to a resident of New Orleans.
Thank you. Juliana Strickland. Juliana Strickland. Joshua Tannenbaum.
Good afternoon. My name is Joshua Tittlebaum. I'm not a paid actor. I live on Du Main Street. I am here to support the scholarships for Tulane students. I think it's important for Tulane to diversify its undergraduate and have more students there who are free to study as they please. I'm concerned because there are students who now currently face their scholarships being invalidated because they spoke their mind and participated in peaceful protest. This is the response that Tulane decided was appropriate for students, right? They had... These are people with assault rifles trained at students. Oh, Tulane, there you go. Right? Okay. Since you want to issue a statement, I'll read a letter that I signed along with 250 members of the Jewish community in New Orleans. We understand our members of the Jewish community in New Orleans are deeply disturbed that this was Tulane, your institution's treatment of peaceful protesters. The decision to send a militarized SWAT to arrest peaceful protesters was reckless and endangered student safety, both mental and physical. The police were armed and riot here, carrying guns. They were mocking students, threatening and injuring them by pushing and shoving with brute force. These were peaceful students who are not agitating the police or anyone else. We are disgusted as Jews at your institution's scapegoating of Jewish safety to defend these actions. We are deeply offended at your completely false and dangerous claims of antisemitism present at the protests. In fact, on the night of Tuesday, April 30th, the entire camp joined in Jewish prayer to mark the end of Passover. Some students were organized. The protests were themselves Jewish. The decision to send a militarized police force was what put students at risk, both Jewish and non-Jewish. Furthermore, we believe that safety is something that all students deserve, including Palestinian, Muslim and Arab students. Counter protesters harassed and taunted the students, including Jewish students, constantly during the encampment. We value social justice.
Thank you, Mr. Tannenbaum.
Thank you. Please issue a statement.
Elizabeth Holder. Is Elizabeth Holder still here? Okay. Sarah Miller. Lex Karen. I'm going to get it right.
It's Shreya Vasudev.
Wait, no? Shreya?
Shreya.
Shreya.
Thank you, appreciate that. After you get this right, maybe we can move on to the ceasefire resolution. But we are, we are obviously in support and wish to congratulate these students. We're in support of the awarding of scholarships to local students and really appreciate the, you know, the actions that the city council and the mayor's office is taking to provide these students with an education. However, with inaction in terms of the atrocities, the injustices that Tulane has committed, the injustices that Tulane is allowing, not only are you giving these students an opportunity for an education, but you're giving them an opportunity to be trampled by horses, to have assault rifles trained at them, to be facing vile, vile harassment from fellow students without action by the administration. Some of these students are clearly minority students and they deserve to be protected. So in the wake of what happened two weeks ago, by paying for more local students to be going at Tulane without taking a stance on what happened at Tulane, how brutal the student encampment was, you are allowing these future students to be put at the same risk. It was NOPD that came and worked with Tulane Police Department to respond to the encampment initially and NOPD, who was the first line of response, followed by Louisiana State Police, because NOPD has a consent decree, so they can't respond in the ways that Louisiana State Police responded. So they used the state police to evade their own consent decree and brutalize the students. If we don't take a stand on this, then we're just putting the next generation of students at risk of this level of retaliation. Don't let this happen again. Make a statement condemning the actions of Tulane. Make a statement to... And don't let the DA's office pursue charges in the municipal court against people who were arrested at the encampment and put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. That's all we're asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last card is Bruce Riley.
Councilmember Moreno, members of the committee, my name is Bruce Riley. I'm with vote. And as I think many of you know, I'm a proud graduate of Tulane Law School where, you know, I took the First Amendment class, the Fourteenth Amendment class, and a lot of other things. We talked a lot about civil rights and whatnot. And, you know, I've been to the legislature about 30 times over the last month or two. And they're up there talking about the outside agitators, right? They're talking about the riots and things. They're characterizing things in a whole different light than what we know to be true. And so, you know, I want to compliment Jason Hughes, Representative Hughes, for standing up and talking about the way they talk about New Orleans up there in Baton Rouge. And I encourage you all to do more, to stand up and let them know what goes on here. That was peaceful protest. Everything that I've seen that's gone on in this town about Gaza has been peaceful protest. And we need to stand up and put our arms around people and say, look, even if you disagree with what somebody's saying, you should agree with their right to say it, right? And if someone pulls out a gun and says, no, get over here, get over there, whoa, whoa, we don't need all that. Put the guns away, right? But up in Baton Rouge, they want more guns. They want more tanks. They want to plow through protesters. They're passing laws to drive people over. They want everybody to have guns. Helena knows full well how much guns they want on the streets down here. So I encourage you all to take all this stuff seriously. What everyone's saying about these protests and about holding Tulane accountable for their actions and how they fueled the fires where the police to come in and be the way they've been, you know, we need to come together and say, look, we can have some serious disagreements. We can protest. We can talk about policy. We can talk about foreign policy even. We can talk about private universities that are probably the biggest landowners in the city. I'm not an expert on this subject, but you all know this, right? We need to... If we're going to give people money, and I would say...
It's your turn, Mr. Riley.
Props to the people getting scholarships. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. All right. I'll make a motion to adopt.
Councilperson Moreno. Councilperson Moreno, I believe I filled out a card on this topic.
I did not have a card from you. I read all the cards I had. Give me your name one more time.
Kristen Hamilton. I have a photograph of it before I submitted it.
That's fine. Why don't you go ahead and give your comments? And if we don't have a card, we'll have you fill one out, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I am a graduate student at Tulane University in the School of Architecture, as I've said many times today. I want to congratulate these students. I know that they receive these scholarships as a result of their hard work, as did I. I am on scholarship at Tulane University, but I'm currently unjustly facing an interim suspension for trying to exercise my right to free speech. To give you a timeline, I, as early as October 20th, asked to hold a community meeting within the School of Architecture to have a discussion regarding this issue. I was told by the Director of Equity, Diversity and Inclusion at our university that it was not possible to hold an event where we had a conversation safely. So if an entire university cannot have a forum, a place for even just a small school to have a conversation, obviously there is a culture of lack of safety for specific students. This is an issue because one student within the School of Architecture, I have documentation on social media called "local Palestinians, Terrorists and Animals." And when reported to the university, I was told that they could do nothing about it. Meanwhile, when I try to exercise my free speech, I am suspended. All we're asking is for a genocide to end. That is not an unreasonable request. Our university is complicit in this genocide, as is the city council. And so we are once again asking you to add a ceasefire resolution to the agenda.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'll make a motion to adopt, if I can get a second. You have to do it again because she cleared it because we weren't done with public comment. All right, it's not happening. There we go.
At the top of page 47, we have motion 24225 by councilmembers Moreno, Morell, Jeruso, Harris, King, Green and Thomas. This is being deferred to the meeting of 6/6. At the bottom of page 48, we have motion M24235 by councilmembers Morell, Harris, King, Green and Thomas, appointing Justin Hawkins to serve as the Chief of Staff for the city council capacity at a base salary grade of 105, step 50.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This is, as we said earlier today, we had a great sendoff and a great honoring of our soon-to-be-past Chief of Staff, Paul Rang. This is the process of appointing his replacement, Mr. Justin Hawkins. Justin has worked with all of us for an extended period of time and I know this is an important step, an important historical moment for the council. This would be the first time the New Orleans City Council has had a black Chief of Staff. So with that, I will move.
Real quick, let's add all council members to it as well.
Okay. I apologize. Add all council members to it as well. Thank you. Seven yays, no nays. Motion is passed.
Eugene, you ready to suspend the rules?
No, not yet.
Not yet?
We have to clear up a matter from earlier with Councilmember Green.
Oh, way to go, Eugene.
We accepted the situation as a communication and we voted on the communication, so we need to clear it up for advertisement purposes and they suspend the rules to bring in motion 24237.
I thought we had taken that second vote, but members, I'll ask for your support. I move for approval of motion 24237.
We're reading for adding it to the agenda.
Yeah. Let me read it into record. Motion M24237 by Councilmember Green, granting a one-year extension of the conditional use authorized in ordinance number 27893 MCS zoning document number 9118 for the property located at 4201 France Road until June 6, 2025 in accordance with Article 4.3.8.2 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. We need to suspend the rules to receive this motion?
So moved. Seconded by Councilmember Harris. Members, please vote your machines to suspend the rules for the addition of this ordinance. Aye? I'm sorry, yays?
Aww.
Morell? Okay.
We need to suspend the rules to add it to the... To add it?
All right. So moved. Second. Second. I've moved. Councilmember King is seconded. Members, please vote your machines.
And this matter is being deferred to the meeting of six-twenty.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, councilmembers, now drum roll.
Now, I can move.
All right. To make a motion to...
Move to go to ordinance as on first reading.
Yes.
It's been moved by Councilmember Green. All second, all in favor? Aye.
All right.
Unanimous.
Ordinance is on first reading. Calendar ordinance, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six hundred eighty-five by Councilmember Moreno, and ordinance to amend, ordinance number twenty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-six MCS as amended, entitled, and ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty twenty-four to transfer appropriation from the New Orleans Health Department to the New Orleans Recreation Development Commission for the Summer Youth Feeding Program, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six hundred eighty-six by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Morell, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas, and ordinance to amend and reordain ordinance number twenty-nine thousand five sixty-five MCS requiring contact information to be included on the rootworknola.gov website to further require that such information be hyperlinked and searchable and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six hundred eighty-seven by Councilmember King by request, and ordinance to provide for the designation of public property within designated areas of the City of New Orleans as a temporary clean zone during the time period beginning at six a.m. Monday, July first, twenty twenty-four, and continuing through and until eleven fifty-nine p.m. on Monday, July eighth, twenty twenty-four, relative to the use of these areas in conjunction with the twenty twenty-four Essence Festival and related activities to provide for the temporary prohibition of certain permits in the clean zone area, to provide for the temporary prohibition of the transaction of certain business and/or commercial activity within the clean zone area, to provide for the imposition of fines and penalties for violations of this ordinance, to establish the clean zone as the area bounded by the Pantratran Expressway, Chapitula Street, Orange Street, proceeding across the Mississippi River, the West Bank Levy, Esplanade Avenue, Burgundy Street, Louis Street, St. Claude Avenue, Montague Street, North Rampart Street, St. Rock Avenue, St. Claude Avenue, Spain Street, North Rampart Street, Esplanade Avenue, North Clayborne Avenue, Tulane Avenue, and South Broad Street, excluding the Louisiana Superdome property, the New Orleans Smoothie King area property, and the Ernest and Moriah Convention Center property, to provide a sunset period by applicable and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six hundred eighty-eight by Councilmember Harris, and ordinance to amend and reordain Articles twenty, twenty-one, twenty-five, and twenty-six of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, ordinance number four D two sixty-four MCS as amended by ordinance number twenty-six four fourteen MCS and subsequent amendments, to modify Section twenty-point-three-point-SSS dwelling, small multifamily affordable, to allow small multifamily affordable developments to be either, one, a single structure of no more than four dwelling units, or two, two detached structures totaling no more than four dwelling units, to amend Section twenty-point-three-point-SSS to modify bulk and yard requirements accordingly, and to amend Article twenty-six to ensure the definition of dwelling, small multifamily affordable, is consistent with the foregoing, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto zoning docket number twenty-seven twenty-four. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six hundred eighty-nine by Councilmember Harris, and ordinance to establish a conditional use permit of reception facility in an HUB-one historic urban neighborhood business district on square two thirty-three lot eighteen A and the Sixth Municipal District bounded by Magazine Street, Cady Street, Jenna Street, and Camp Street. The municipal addresses are forty-five twenty-one through forty-five twenty-three Magazine Street, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto zoning docket number twenty-nine twenty-four. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six hundred ninety by Councilmember Harris, and ordinance to establish a conditional use permit of wireless telecommunications tower exceeding sixty-five feet in height in an MU-two high-intensity mixed-use district on square five fifty-eight, lot A or part lot eight, and lot B or part lot eight in the first municipal district bounded by Perdido Street, Gravier Street, South Rushblade Street, and South Tonti Street. The municipal address is twenty-four twenty-nine Perdido Street, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto zoning docket number thirty-one twenty-four. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six hundred ninety-one by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, and ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-five MCS as amended, entitled, and ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty twenty-four to appropriate unspent funds and fund eleven fifty-five to mosquito, termite, and road and control to cover expenses from fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six hundred ninety-two by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, and ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-six MCS as amended, entitled, and ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty twenty-four to appropriate unspent funds and fund eleven fifty-five to mosquito, termite, and road and control to cover expenses from fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. This concludes the ordinances on first reading.
Councilmembers, can we get a vote to adjourn?
One, two, three, four, five, six. And then, one, two, three, four, five. We've got Thomas. Thomas, a yea. So that's fine. Yep. We've got five yeas to adjourn. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Vice President.